Good morning. We are going to call the Board of County Commissioners' morning workshop session to order at 10:00 a.m. First up, we have a department update for the Public Works Department by Jeff Hunter.
Okay, thank you. We only have one thing on your consent agenda today, and it's a contract with Covinch, I can't say it, anyway, Technologies. It's for our keypad system at the courthouse. We've done this in years past. They provide us support. It's a three-year contract. And that's one thing we have on your consent agenda this time. As far as construction program, the work will start next week on the guidepost. We heard, from putting the signs in on Canyon Road, we heard from the contractor they're ready to go back to work starting next week. Roosevelt Paver, we're still waiting for the contractor to come back and finish up his punch list items. Courtney Road, the contractors scrubbing, installing silk fence, and burning slash piles. We got a call last week that we had the hillside on fire. Wasn't the case. Contractors, local contractor understands, calls DNR every day. He has a permit. So we're filling you guys in in case you get calls. It is a permitted practice with DNR. And if we couldn't burn them, that's a lot of money to haul that stuff somewhere, probably to the landfill. So it's saving grace on, for us, too. The other thing that's happening up there is, is we're getting a lot of people that are going in through through the site, which we kind of expected. It's a concern when the contractor is there because they don't expect people. So I'm going to talk with the sheriff about enforcing the closure. Bigger issue is, is last weekend, somebody went in, drove through around the barricades, went in and broke into the contractor's trailer and stole a bunch of his equipment, his chainsaws and a bunch of other stuff. So the contractors asked if we could put gates on it. Now, we're looking at that. We're gonna... Gates on the road, where the closures are. We're not a big, I'm not a big advocate of that. We're going to work with the emergency services and get their feedback, and also the people that live there within the closure. They would get keys to the gate. But the contractors beside themselves, because it was a locked-up utility trailer, they just busted into it and took what they wanted. And they're afraid that the next thing that's going to happen is, is they're going to start vandalizing their equipment. And it gets driven through all the time. People just move the barricades and they drive up there. The whole place was packed with mountain bikers. And I'm not saying all of them are stealing stuff, not all, very...
Unlikely.
Unlikely, they're good, yeah, because they're not going to carry off a chainsaw on their mountain bike. Yeah, well, there's that, too. So I don't think, you know, again, it's two different people, but it's kind of hard to... So we're going to evaluate, and we'll bring something back next week, a week after, see what we're going to do. Contractor would really like to gate it. They've asked us that. We said, "Well, we gotta, we gotta talk with the emergency services." Well, we're actually going to put that on them to talk to the fire chief.
How many homes would be behind the gate?
There's quite a few parcels, but there's actually two homes.
Are you putting a gate at the bottom or gate at the top, or both?
Both. They want them both because they're coming up from both ways. Right now, we have type-three barricades that say, you know, "Road closed." But you can drive around them for the locals that live there. But come the weekend, they just literally pick them up, move them, because they're movable, and they just drive in and park all along the road. Again, I don't know that that's a, it wouldn't be a huge issue if, and I don't think the contractor would be that irritated until the point, like right now, because the road's not, the area's not unsafe when they're not working in there.
Yet.
Yet, yet, that's the question. That's the thing. We'd be okay with that, except for now, the contractor stuff is unsafe there. That's the problem we're running into. Yeah, right now, the road is not unsafe when, and we, we're going to work with them not to ever leave the road unsafe, because there's still, there's times when you'll have to get through. So they have to leave it passable and safe within reason.
For those two residents.
For those residents, yeah. And other people that actually, absentee owners that come up and visit their property. Because, you know, you have different, you have ranchers that have property in there that run cattle and that kind of thing, and they need to get in and out of.
Well, that's kind of my question. I mean, there are parcels up there that are just timber parcels that are privately held. How do we get them a key to the gate? Or, you know, do you, or, I mean, are they ever coming by for a weekend camping trip or something?
Well, we would work with the contractor to get keys, because we can't lock them out of their own property. So we, that would be one of the, one of the hurdles.
Offer of keys.
Yes, that's one of the hurdles we'll have to look into.
Do some come down from the top, or do they all come from the bottom to get to there? Okay.
I would guess the chainsaw people came from the top.
Yeah, probably. There's one other thing, and Dave's probably more familiar, because we sat in the people's houses a few years ago. They don't like the project. We're starting to hear from them. But again, we've told them the project's approved, you know, because the closure's up at the top. They're like, "Well, they're turning around, you know, we're against it. You're going to ruin this hillside and everything." I'm just giving you the heads up.
Is the property owner up above?
It's the same people. We went to their house.
Were they opposed to it from day one, like way back in the day, or is this a new development for them to be opposed?
They, they haven't really said too much because... Yeah, they were opposed, but they really, they got their part, and they don't want the other part. They really pushed for the first phase of this project up above, where they live. But frankly, they don't want it. I mean, they didn't really say a lot until now that the work is actually starting, and they're starting to see the trucks, they're starting to see, you know, they're hearing the saws.
Interesting, there was a lot of noise, dust, you know, when we were constructing Tunnel Road that they were all in favor of, that impacted their neighbors, and they seemed fine with that.
They were fine when we did it in front of their place on Courtney Road, too. If you remember, they really wanted it done.
They really wanted that done, because it got held over, there was something where we delayed, over the winter or something, and I know we had to go up again and have the...
I remember. I was there with them.
Yes, you were.
So, two things. Number one, a lot of, as I understand it, a lot of people are driving through because we don't have a good enough signage at the bottom, and so that the road is closed through traffic. And this is just what I've been heard, and maybe we can do a better job of signage. And then, once they drive all the way up there, they're like, "Well, I'm just going to move the barrier and drive through."
I'm almost there now.
You're right. They were right, but we have since updated our signage.
Their signage at the very bottom and at the very top?
We're updating our signage, and we updated it again, because there, we've also heard other things that, well, you know, we, we know it's close to vehicular traffic, but what about me mountain biking through there? And it doesn't say that. So we've changed our sign, we're updating our signage to say absolutely no entry, construction zone. So we don't get people confused, and we're adding some more signs further down. So we've added, we're adding, we're in the process of adding more signs, so people aren't confused.
So if we have good signage, top and bottom, and the contractor wants to gate it, and the, the two people who live there permanently are okay with opening the gate when they leave, fine by me.
Again, that's not our preference, but we'll work with the contractor, because again, our bigger fear, I mean, it's bad the contractor got the stuff stolen, but our bigger fear is, is they don't know, they expect people not to be there when they're working. When they start driving those big off-road trucks up and down that thing, they don't expect somebody to be mountain biking right down the middle of the road.
No, no, we need, it needs to be a very closed, very closed area. You've got paragliders coming up and hiding, the mountain bikers, just, I mean, it's a busy road.
I'm going to work with the Forest Service, get the word out again. They have gotten the word out. But I don't know, again, people drive up here, because this is where they come.
Well, and now that people have been doing it, they're going to continue doing it unless you put a very big gate in the way.
We're going to put that, and then, well, we'll talk, we're going to work through that, and then we're also, I'll talk to the sheriff.
At least right behind Jeff. There he is. How many people are parking up the road in the project now? I mean, it's hard to believe there is any humans left that aren't parking on 14 on the weekend, but apparently...
I don't know. I haven't physically seen it myself, but I've heard.
But they do park up the Courtney and stuff.
Oh, yeah. I thought I might have got a picture of how many there were, but I might have missed that one.
They, they park up.
Because I thought that was part of what was driving up, maybe it was because the road's closed, and so there's, it pushed more traffic down on the road, and they're mountain biking up through the, no. Okay. No, those really are those folks.
That's all coyote wall.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's like a steady stream going up that thing. The ruts are getting deep.
Yeah, Forest Service expects it to go a little longer this year because of the snowpack on St. Helens and that area. Because typically, you know, they, they, the people from Vancouver, Portland area go to a couple different places. This is one, the gorge, and they always start here, and then, once St. Helens opens, then they'll shift, and they go over there, because they can mountain bike and do all that. But if that's under snow, the longer that's under snow, the longer the pressure stays here.
And as long as there's wildflowers, they're going to be here.
Yeah, which are later this year because of the rain.
Okay. Click-It-Tat Path, we're still on for the 17th. We've sent notices out to the people of the town of Click-It-Tat. We send notices to the people that are basic, in this area, since it considers the town of Click-It-Tat, we sent it to all residents of Click-It-Tat, but typically not outside of that area. Parking lot, we're preparing to advertise for that. Small Works Guard Rail Contract is, got one review, and then it goes to add hopefully by the end of the week, and we submitted for the bridge, the call for bridge projects. We'll see how that comes out. Maintenance side, crews are brooming sand. They're doing guard rail maintenance in preparation of chip sealing on Horseshoe Bend on the east side, hauling rock on Garrison, and that's actually, we ditched on Lidle, and we're putting the ditching on Garrison. Spot graveling on Old Highway Eight, grading roads. On the west side, we're, should finish crack sealing this week, and, and we're grading roads in the Appleton area. This building, our building contractors restarted. We're doing the stormwater crossing in this, right now, and concrete work is scheduled to start next week. Flooring, we have just a couple spots left. They came back, they got everything, but there's just a few spots that we still need, one more trip back, and we'll be done with the flooring. Furniture, it's still trickling in. Windows, they still need to come back and do some work on those. The blinds, we're waiting for, they're, they're waiting for materials to come back and finish the blinds. We still have the five locations. It's in engineering that we have the HVAC issues. We'll, we'll find out when we come out of that soon. And the HR, the doors need to be painted, and the glass will be installed. Annex one, the abatement is currently being done, and the fence is being placed around the building with demo to start next week.
Are we still planning on trying to save brick or make a pile of brick?
We'll make a pile of brick, yes, somewhere.
Somewhere safe, temporarily.
What we'll probably do is put it in, it'll be within the confinements of the gate, and we'll set it aside, and either we can, we can do it a couple different ways. We haven't really figured out how the best way. We don't want people in there when we're, when we're working. So we may just set it aside and leave it there, and then, when we're done, and everything's cleaned up, except for that pile, then people can come and pick up bricks. I think that's the safest way. Then we're not worrying about somebody stepping on a nail or glass or anything else.
How long's the demo expected to take?
We're thinking probably a week to two weeks. It just depends on what we can get for turnaround to and from the landfill. This way, they can, they're going to get the containers on, we're getting the big roll-offs that they have with the trailers. So we'll get those on Monday morning, and we'll start the demo Monday, next week. HVAC unit replacement, we're kind of in the same place we were last time. We're just, we got a few more tweaks to do, and these units are up and running in the courthouse, and it's the same place we were before. Radio sites, we're going to do the walkthrough today. I was, we were going to do it last week, but it was a mess up there, and it'd probably be, we'll see what it is. I'm going to, I might have to push it off another week. Just, I just don't want to do a bunch of damage up there. Let's see, Home and Garden is this weekend, and I have one other thing that is not on the list, and that is, I brought the non-capital project list, because I wanted to discuss this with you for a couple reasons. One, I've been trying to schedule the work at Dispatch, and I need to get it on this list, so I need to update this list before we can do the work. And the window we're having is, is we actually, we could start the work next week. If we update, if we brought the new list before you next week, then we could start to work after that. I want to talk about the list, because a lot of this has to do with the budget request we made, but there's been some changes, because I heard from the granting agency yesterday that we did not get the grants, and I called them up. I'm like, "Wait a second, Teresa, what, how it's happened? I can't believe it." She said, "Now, Jeff, come on. You've gotten, you've gotten your lion's share of..." They had 31 applications, which is unusual, because that's three times what they had for the original amount of money that they had when they had the millions, or had a million dollars. They had $250,000 left, and they got, they got 31 applications. And she said, "Look, you guys got, you get the lion's share. You get it every time." I said, "Well, you know, there's no sense in asking for more."
Really? That's the, what's your point? I don't, I'm not getting it.
I said, she said, "Well, you can get it next." It doesn't help me this time. But I, I guess I understand. They wanted to spread the wealth evidently, and I, I said, "Well, I don't, it doesn't make sense." They didn't apply. She said, "Well, I think the match was an issue before, but evidently, they came up with match."
People got COVID money now.
I don't know. See, I didn't ask, but yeah, that might be the case. So with that said, and the agreement we made, those projects would be pushed out, and that's the $40,000 that's under fairgrounds for the south side and the barn doors. So that makes the list from 396 go to 359. I didn't correct this on here, because...
Wait a minute, you're taking off what now?
356. We would take off...
The fairgrounds.
The fairground stuff, because, because we are looking for the grant money.
Which fairgrounds? The Grandstand, South Side, or the...
Yes, the Grandstand, South Side, and the doors. I applied for both of those. With the agreement, if we didn't get them...
We don't do them.
We don't do it.
They get, we will do them.
We'll do it. We'll just push it off till we can, you know, come up. Because, I mean, it's not like they don't need to be done. They have to be done, but they could wait another year or, you know, whenever. She told me they're, they'll put out another probably call for next year. She says, "You'll probably get it again." I said, "Well, you know, we would like to count on that, but we'll see."
So the other, so the courtroom upgrade preliminary design is the 40 grand for the court?
Yes.
What we're talking about.
Yes, exactly.
The other one I see on here that wasn't on the last one is jail area and rock reland, or sorry, jail roof repair, which is what got done.
Correct, correct. You are correct. Yes, those are the two.
And then what is West End Building Floor Covering Replacement Rotation? It was 10, and you have it down at 6 now.
Because we needed to cut someplace there, and I dropped it back to 6, but actually, that money's already been spent. That's what we, that's what it came in at.
And that was for the bathrooms.
So it's not 6, it's 10?
No, it's 6.
Oh, okay.
Because that's what it actually came in at. We did that project this year already, first thing.
Was that the bathrooms upstairs?
Yes, that is correct. It came in at 6. We thought it would be 10. We got lucky. Well, we actually scoped the project back from what we thought, because we couldn't find anybody to put in a full piece of vinyl like we wanted. And, you know, the big thing was, is how it's wrapped up.
Nobody knows how to do that anymore.
Right, exactly, and that was the problem. That's...
The last person that knew how to do that died a couple years ago, so...
So your new number is 356,000?
That's correct.
And the last one we had at budget time was 329,000?
Yes.
Is there any interest from my seatmates in considering pushing another project off until next year to try to stay closer to the 329,000 that was budgeted?
So if you take the 356 and you subtract out the 329, that comes to 27,000, which is the same price as that Dispatch.
Right.
Which...
That's why it's that.
Which is why it's there, which is what we'd agreed that we would pay for.
And I guess that money's coming out, well, that money's coming out of its own fund, so it's not...
Yes, that money is...
...more dollars out of our budget for the most part.
That was where I was going with that.
Yeah, Jeff brought that money with him.
I'm fine. Thank you. Good math, sir.
Commissioner Satter, it is $2,000, though. You good with that?
I'm not good with any of it.
It's close.
I'm good enough.
Yeah, because anything you delay, it will cost $2,000, at least more next year, so...
Yeah, there's not a ton to delay, I'll be honest, because a lot of this stuff has been done and it's carryover, like the $35,000 for the retro, it's too late, we've already done the project, you know, that kind of thing. But I mean, we don't have to have the, I just have to have it on the list, so what we would do is bring the list forward next week. We don't have to do, you know, we don't have to have the budget approved. I just need to have it on the list, because I could borrow against one of the other projects until we get the more budget.
No, I'm fine with this. It is.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I think that's about it. That's all I have.
Any questions for Public Works?
One quick backing up, East End crews hauling rock on Garrison. What kind of rock? Just road gravel? What are we doing? What section of the road?
It's the very back end. It's the primitive section, so we don't rock primitive roads, even though people, well, hey, okay, I gotta be careful.
Don't never say never. Yeah, I can think of one example.
Yes, I, yeah.
You probably know where I'm going with this question, so...
But typically, we do not rock primitive roads. We spot in gravel, and we use, either we'll use reject from crushing or we'll use ballast if it's for, to take care of drainage, so our road stays in check. In Garrison, we've actually, since we clean Lidle ditch, we got to have something to do with that material. It's pretty rocky, because, you know, you're familiar with it, you know, so it's, it's pretty rocky material. So we'll haul that, we're hauling, we got to haul it somewhere. We would haul it to the quarry and just put it in the quarry. But it doesn't make sense to haul it to the quarry, put it in the quarry. We just haul it to Garrison and put it on the road.
So is this north or south of Bowman Creek?
North of Bowman Creek.
So you're way out there.
We're way out there, yeah, towards the end. Matter of fact, I can't remember if you did it last, somebody asked to vacate the road. If you remember, we had the bridge at the end, and we can't vacate the bridge because it's an asset. And so we're kind of working with them. We said, you know, his thing was, is nobody takes care of the road. You know, it is primitive, but we did say...
Nobody, that's actually not accurate.
No, exactly. You get maintenance, what the maintenance level is on a primitive road, which is grading once a year. And we do fill in, if it gets really potholed real bad, where we're going to start really destroying the road, we will go in and put gravel on it, and that's what we're doing in this case, to keep the road from just literally going away. It doesn't help us when that happens, but...
And the only thing back there past that is logging operations, right?
Yes.
Currently.
Yes, currently, currently. Logging and tattle? Yes.
Do you have some time today? I have some new spreadsheets from the conversation with the PUD. I don't know.
I do. I'll have to, so when were you thinking? Can we do it after you're done?
Yeah.
Okay, because I, I got to, I scheduled this thing to go up to the site at 11 today, but I'll be...
Okay, no, yeah, no, we can do it. I'm done at the end of the day. It'd probably be, probably be best.
Okay, that sounds good. You're just going to come by or...
Yeah, I'll just come by. I'll find you.
Okay.
They let me in the door.
Oh, they'll let you in, I think.
I learned my key card actually doesn't work in some places, a lot now, yeah. Apparently, it's, my security clearance has been revoked.
We've, we've had some issues, because you're not the only one. So Troy is working on some of those issues. Do you have, is that, that's the access you guys want? I just need to know.
So we can't unlock doors and keep them unlocked?
I think you have that access, but I'll check.
Mine does it, but you have to have a special rhythm to make it happen.
That's always kind of been that way with me, where it's like, I just thought that was, I just wasn't doing it right. Because sometimes, first time, oh, worked.
Sometimes, 12 times, it still doesn't work, so...
Found them locked out of it, I think. Haven't found another one.
For me, the canvassing board meeting upstairs, I couldn't get it to unlock, you know, it's an open public meeting. I can't get into building and planning.
Building and planning, yeah, that one, mine won't work. It goes green, but then it's...
Yeah. Okay, I'll have, I'll have Troy look at your guys' access. Because it doesn't matter to me, so if you, you know, I, I don't know if you get, I, that I'd have to talk over with Rob. I don't know.
I think there's some...
There might be some test you have to take.
We're fine with IT.
We're fine with that. What would I do in there anyway?
But I can get you access to everything else.
Okay.
So I'll make sure you get, that you'll be able to open the doors and everything for the board, for the different boards.
Yeah, I tried my master key. There's no place to put it, so... I might as well just give it back.
You have a Grand Master?
I do.
It'll open the doors.
Where? There generally is no, is there the locks? Well, I have to check that out.
There's locks, because remember, the one was missing down in Public Health.
Okay.
It got punched.
Oh. Because that's how I get in a lot of times. It's just quicker.
Okay.
So if you have a Grand Master, you get in.
And can you keep it unlocked with the Grand Master?
No.
Okay.
All you could do is get yourself in.
Okay.
But you can't, no, you cannot do the electronics. It just gets you in.
Got it.
But you can get in all the, all the doors and everything.
Okay.
Because we had some issues.
I'll blow the dust off.
Hey, we can all show up the IT.
I was going to say, little, little does IT know now.
No, he knows. He's listening, I'm sure.
I don't know, now, I don't know if it'll get you into IT. We may have locked that different doors you could get in.
Well, it used to be, it didn't work in IT, and it did not work in, for whatever reason, the kitchen at the, at the Pioneer Center. The kitchen is the highest security in the county, is the kitchen at the Pioneer Center.
I don't know why. You're right. It never worked there.
No, there's a special, special key for that. I've seen it once. I've never actually touched it.
It also won't get you into WSU room at the fairgrounds.
I've never tried.
What we've done is, is if we don't control the access, being that we don't lease out the space, we get somebody else, we won't key people's carts or give, put that on the, like, the kitchen, that's under Sharon's privy, so we're not going to give everybody access to that unless Sharon says. And same with WSU, that falls, that, that's a long story and bugs me, but anyway.
So anything else for the good of the order?
No, that's it. I carried on too far. Sorry, thank you.
Yeah, you had the extra two minutes.
I don't want to be, you know, running into the next guy.
Thank, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Sheriff Bob Songer for his elected official update.
Good morning, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
To start out, on the number-one item, there were a total of 3,861 calls for service from January 1st. Uh, to start out, on the number one item, there were a total of three thousand eight hundred and sixty-one calls for service from January first, twenty twenty-two, to May first, twenty twenty-two. In addition to the calls for service, deputies served a total of one hundred and ninety-four civil papers during the same time period. As, uh, on May twelfth, this year, at two PM, we'll, we will be holding an officer memorial on the south side of the courthouse, where we did last year, honoring those law enforcement officers that lost their lives in the line of duty during the years of twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. I think in the resolution or the, that was passed up there, uh, we went with the twelfth, not that we're superstitious, but the thirteenth, Friday, the thirteenth, uh, we went with the twelfth. And I, I do like the way, uh, Commissioner Christopher did the, uh, ordnance about the candlelight vigil. That's new, we have not done that before, and I think that's outstanding. Chief Jail Administrator Carmen Knobs will also be addressing the Corrections Officer Memorial. We have, we will have a sheriff's booth at the Home and Garden Show. The sheriff's posse members will be assisting with security and parking at the event. The Home and Garden Show will be held May sixth through the eighth, twenty twenty-two, at the Clickatack County Fairgrounds, and I know you're all aware of that. Under Sheriff Neil, Neer will be giving an update to the board on his area of responsibility within the sheriff's office. Chief Jail Administrator Carmen Knobs will also be giving an update to the board on her area of responsibility managing the jail operations. Chief Civil Deputy England will be giving an update to the board on her area of responsibility managing the sheriff's office budget and her other administrative duties. I would like to state, I am proud of all of our employees at the sheriff's office. I'm also proud of all the volunteer members of the sheriff's reserve program, posse program, the air wing program, and the search and rescue program. All of the sheriff's office employees and volunteers are true professionals and a credit and asset to the sheriff's office and the citizens of Clickatack County. At this point, if it's okay with the board, I'll turn it over to Under Sheriff Neer.
I just have a couple of, uh, updates here. Uh, we did hire two new employees as road deputies. We've been trying to fill these spots for quite a while. Uh, so Tyrell Howard and Cody Melton were both hired as, uh, uh, full-time, uh, road deputies.
Do you, do you still have any openings, or does that fill you up?
We still have openings.
One, two, more?
Uh, one at the moment, and, uh, let me move on, and I'll tell you, we're having another one.
No, you're not allowed to tell me you're having another one.
Uh, so we do have, we do have one other position that we were trying to fill, and our person did not pass, uh, the, the final step for that. I think I sent an email out to everybody letting them know that I was gonna be stepping back down to, uh, uh, detective position before the end of the year, so that, that would fill that position there. Uh, Mitch Kayley is gonna retire from the sheriff's office after twenty-five years. Uh, his retirement will be official at the end of June. Uh, he's working his last shift, uh, in about a week and a half, and then he'll be on vacation, um, till the end of June. Uh, Kaylee Toll, who is our, uh, records, uh, specialist, uh, she is transferring over to the clerk's office. So her last day in our office is actually gonna be this Friday, and then she'll be off next week, and then the following week she'll start in the clerk's office. We do have a list, uh, we just need to, uh, call people and interview from the list that we already have, so. Short and simple.
Do you have a list?
Civil.
Of officers, too?
Uh, we have a list for entry level. I requested that from, uh, civil service. Um, and I have not heard back from, it's been a couple weeks since I've requested that, so I'll follow up on that.
So with you stepping down, someone else is gonna still have to step up, so we're still gonna have a hole, right?
Or have, it's an appointed position, so whoever the sheriff wants to do that. I won't be stepping down anytime soon. There will be probably just a little short for a little bit.
Okay.
No shorter than we already are.
Well, I was gonna say, we're gonna be short, because they're going away to the, when do you have a date for them to head to the academy?
We have to register them. I did look, and it looks like the soonest we could probably get them into academy would be the end of June or beginning of July. And then you're looking at about twenty weeks of academy, and then, uh, once they come back, then we're looking at, uh, about three months in their field training, uh, assuming that they don't need any remedial training, uh, in the meantime. So we have Zach McBride at the academy now. Next week is his halfway point. Uh, his graduation is the middle of July. Uh, so you just figure August, September, October, probably mid-October, uh, he'll be on his own, uh, assuming that there's no issues.
And are you thinking about sending them to that extra forty hours of training at the end of the twenty weeks?
Well, I did talk with the academy to find out if we can, if that's an option yet. It's not an option yet. Uh, but once we, um, and it's, it's not really an optional one, it, it is something we have to get. We had to have twenty-five percent of our employees through that by June, by the end of June, or, excuse me, it just, it, it only applies to the commissioned road deputies. So we had to have twenty-five percent by the end of June, twenty twenty-two. And by the end of June, twenty twenty-three, we have to have fifty percent of our employees through that. By the end of June, twenty twenty-four, we have to have seventy-five percent of our employees, and all of our, uh, commissioned employees have to have been through the forty-hour, um, crisis intervention training by the end of June, twenty twenty-five.
Is that even possible with turnover?
We're trying. It's, it's a goal, we're trying to do it. Um, we had, uh, twenty-five percent of our employees, uh, through it by November, I think, November of last year, and then one of our employees retired and went to work for the Dallas Police Department. So that bumped our numbers down. And then, uh, Mitch, who retires at the end of June, he's another one that was, that has been through that training. Um, and so we're falling a little further behind, so.
Can he delay his retirement to July first?
No, there, there's actually a reason why it has to be by the end of June. There's, there's a long-term financial, uh, benefit to him to do it then. Um, so, um, we did get Robert Bianchi through that training last month, I believe, and then, uh, next week, I believe it is, uh, Eric Beasley's gonna go through that training. So we're gonna be within the twenty-five percent. Um, and the nice part about that is the training is free, the Criminal Justice Training Commission, they are reimbursing us for any overtime that that results. They pay for any meals, any hotel stays. So it's, it's good training. Um, there was a lot of people that didn't want to do the training when it first came out, so I was, uh, Mitch and I were actually the very first, too. We said, we'll go, let's see what it's like. We'd come back, report it to everybody. Um, and it really wasn't a bad training at all. So it wasn't what everybody thought it was gonna be.
Questions on training, not on that training.
Sure.
Um, training's like de-escalation, negotiations, and tactical training. If, I'm just thinking outside the box and outside of your department, into code compliance and whoever we hire.
Sure.
Might be good and valid trainings for those. Do you ever host those trainings here? Or are those usually outside county-type stuff?
Yeah, we, we have, for the most part, we have gone through whatever the Criminal Justice Training Commission, uh, has come up with. But that doesn't mean that we can't host a training. A lot of times we have, you know, we have trainings that we do host. We've done a num, a number for, like, corrections and things like that, where it's not a free training, it's something you have to pay for, but because we host, we get so many people in that for free. Um, so there are different de-escalation types of trainings, different.
Potential for future discussion, anyway.
Yeah, absolutely, and those are things that we could do. Uh, we have a training coming up next week. It's a, um, uh, public information officer training that's being hosted by the city of Goldendale. And, um, the chief of police, Jay Hunzaker, reached out and said, hey, um, we get two, you know, we get to send two people for free to this. Um, and they wanted their supervisors and Jay to go through it, so Jay went through with Mike Smith, uh, who's one of their sergeants. And so they just needed to put Leo through, so they reached out and asked me if I would be their second. Because I volunteer on the fire department, it can apply, um, over as well. So that's, that's a, a perfect example of some training that we can host here. The city is doing that, and then they kind of open it up for other law enforcement, and that type of, uh, um, training is not specific for law enforcement, so.
I think it'd be great for a code compliance officer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, yeah, good, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Correction staff, this week is, uh, May first through May seventh is the National Corrections Officer Week. Our correction staff is to be commended for their service and dedication to a profession that is often overlooked in the law enforcement. It is an honor for me to serve as the chief of the Clickatack County Jail. I have a team of men and women who have proven themselves to be professional in settings that are oftentimes physically and emotionally challenging. The environment of a correctional facility changes rapidly, and corrections deputies must be prepared for a variety of challenges. From screaming, violent, and out-of-control individuals to medical emergencies, they tackle each instance with the utmost professional behavior. Most days are not wild and crazy in the jail, but we do have moments when we have so many people that need to be in a crisis cell. Um, and these guys really do an outstanding job taking care of that. Because after the event's over, then they have to do a cleanup and they have to write reports, and it, it's a busy day for, on top of all their other regular duties. Uh, training, we just hosted a three-day training called Correctional Emergency Response Tactics through a company called Arcta, uh, ArcTac. The focus included the use of forest crowd control, basic cell extraction, and cell room clearing. This training was attended by correction deputies from Cowlets, Thurston, and Skagit Counties, as well as our own sergeant and three of our corporals. Five corrections deputies completed an eight-hour CIT training through the Criminal Justice Training Center. This is all online and is mandated through the state, much, just like the roadside, and it is also eligible for the overtime reimbursement. Uh, we still have two corrections deputies who are waiting to be hired or to attend the academy. They've been registered, we just haven't got a start date for them. I do have, um, one spot open. I am tentatively filling it. We're doing a background and check on one individual. I wrote courts and then I forgot to write anything. It was a little chaotic yesterday. I will say that the posse for April volunteered fifty-two point eight hours in the courtroom. Those hours are down. Uh, we did not have a couple of trials that were scheduled to go. This month, that'll change, because we're scheduled for trials already this week. And those trials can last from two to three days, and you never know how long they're gonna be. They could go ten hours a day, twelve, fourteen, it depends on juries and, and everything.
Do you have any posse hours for the jail itself, or just the courtroom?
Uh, just the courtroom at this point. It was a busy transport month that included, uh, we had a fugitive from New York, and New York actually worked, we worked really close with them and got them, we transported their fugitive to the Tri-Cities Airport for a transfer, so that they could not be in a big airport where there was much easier security at the smaller airport. So he was extradited back to New York State. Uh, Under Sheriff Neer and Sergeant Rogers flew to San Francisco to pick up an inmate for us. He was a wanted fugitive out of Superior Court. And they luckily flew down, they took the quick TSA course and, uh, were able to fly down and pick up that, uh, individual. They worked closely with San Francisco, uh, Police Department and San Mateo County, uh, Sheriff's Department worked close with us on getting all the arrangements made and it all connected and went really smoothly. We also transported, transported to and from Yakima four separate times, and we had one trip to Norcore, and then we had three mental health and medical transports for the month. On April nineteenth, I met with the Clickatack County Crisis Stakeholders. Attending this meeting were the representatives from Beacon, Skyline Hospital, Clickatack Valley Hospital, Comprehensive Mental Health, Old Dell Police Department, and the Binge and White Salmon Police Department, and myself. This meeting was focused on the crisis response that is currently being contracted with Comprehensive Mental Health. Currently, they do not have enough designated crisis responders, DCRs, to staff a twenty-four-hour, seven-day-a-week response in Clickatack County. They are relying on DCRs that are located in Walla Walla and are only available by telehealth. It is very clear that they are not serving the citizens of Clickatack County. I've spoken with Chief Hunzaker and Chief Happner, as well as our deputies who are frustrated with the company and the service, or lack thereof, that is being provided. I also spoke with Leah Becknell, Beacon Health, who oversees the contracts and funding for Comprehensive, and she is investigating the services provided as well. I'm compiling information and will be requesting to speak in front of the board along with Beacon Health. It concerns me that Comprehensive is not being held accountable for the service they are under contract to provide for our citizens. This is a situation that if not addressed will only continue to jeopardize the mental health of the citizens of Clickatack County. And so I have put a request out to both the police chiefs and to our deputies. Um, I know a week and a half ago, there was two calls into the crisis line through dispatch, uh, from the Goldendale requesting a DCR. They were told both times that there was no DCRs available. Um, I was, I had made arrangements with a, um, to get an inmate up to KBH. At a, we had agreed with Comprehensive to take the inmate up at nine AM in the morning to KBH for an evaluation. My guys were up there at nine AM. By noon, there was no contact from Comprehensive at all. I started making phone calls. I was not able to get through on any phone line to Comprehensive. I finally called a Yakima office, and I got through to them, and she said, well, I'm sorry, we're, we're having phone issues. Well, there was no backup plan, there was no email sent, there was nothing, there was no communication. So I pulled the inmate back into, um, the jail, and he didn't get his evaluation. Luckily, it wasn't a crisis evaluation, it was for, um, to put him into a dual diagnosis treatment facility. But there was no communication. So I immediately got ahold of Leah, because she holds purse strings to Comprehensive. And so she got a list of all the DCRs. The DCR list that was provided to her through the crisis line is different than the one that Comprehensive provided to her. So there's a lot of things going on with Comprehensive that seem to be a little bit on the shady side. I was made aware that they were receiving sixteen hundred dollars a month for jail services that we were not getting last year. It's pretty concerning to me. Um, that's a lot of money that could be spent. I really could use that sixteen hundred dollars in services if they were really providing it. Um, I know the deputies are frustrated when they're calling in and they're looking for a crisis evaluation, there's nobody there. If they're out in the field, they can't have a doctor on a stick in the field for a crisis evaluation. They need that DCR to be able to respond. Walla Walla is three hours away. By law, they have to be here for a crisis evaluation within two hours. That's not possible. Um, during our meeting.
Can I have a follow-up on that? Why, why Walla Walla?
Uh, that's where they have another co, uh, Comprehensive group at.
And they seem to be well-staffed in Walla Walla?
Evidently.
They function there, they just don't function here.
Uh, they closed their hospital that they just opened in Seela. Um, it's similar to what Bridges is.
Right.
They closed it because they can't staff it. Um, and during this meeting, I found out that they further signed a contract with Benton and Franklin Counties for crisis services when they can't even fill the contract for Clickatack County. So we were all more than frustrated when we walked out. They also received a million dollars from the legislators to begin in planning phases of, uh, uh, mental health. Not necessarily a hospital, but a new facility here in Goldendale. The land is purchased, they, I was told by the vice president of the company that they were giving back that money, because they don't have the staffing of, necessary to, to build a building, and it would just be an empty building. So there's some great concerns that we should all have, I mean.
Yeah, because it doesn't just, it isn't just law enforcement and jail.
No, it is not, it is.
The standard people on the street.
Correct. It is.
Use the same service.
It's your neighbor, it's, it, it's whoever it is that needs mental health help, it's not gonna be there.
So how many DCRs do we actually have in the county?
We have two. We have Allison and we have on the west end. Uh, Lacy, sorry.
That's good. That actually makes me feel better.
And Lacy only works weekends. So, and part of her weekends are tied up because she's co- contracted with Binge and White Salmon to do ride-alongs with, uh, their program there that they're doing. So, um.
So were you able to get a reason why we had an agreement that we were going to take the deputies and send somebody up there to KBH and nobody ever showed up? Because that's a lot of.
Phone's not working?
Yeah, but you still knew where you were supposed to be and when.
Right, exactly. No, I did not get any reasons.
As long as we keep signing a check, they're gonna.
I got an apology. I'm gonna continue working on that. My inmate's still in jail, still awaiting an evaluation for.
And so the only person that would be available is Allison or?
Yeah, or, um, a DCR through telehealth. And the telehealth works fine in the jail. As long as the machine's up and running, it works fine. But for, it does not work out in the field. It does not work for everyone. Really, sometimes you have to be seen physically to understand the true mental health state of somebody. Watching it through a T- TV screen does not do anything justice. Thoughts from my seatmates?
Andrew.
Well, I mean, I have that in the frustration, but I also, but it's the, I don't know what the solution is because it's not unique. I mean, it's across everything. I mean, there's, there are staffing issues in hosts of industries, especially mental health. So I don't know what the answer is as far as the, it's like, we can be mad at, at Comprehensive. I mean, they should be, if they can't provide the service, then they should be telling us that.
Or prorating the check.
Or prorating what we're paying. If we're only at, you know, fifty percent of what we're getting, then our contract should be. And then, and then maybe we can use the difference to try, maybe, I mean, but I've heard that, I mean, you can't, it's not like we could go out, if money was no object and we wanted to just go out and hire, you know, private sector folks to do it. There isn't anybody to hire with. It doesn't matter. And so, um, this is a real issue and I don't, I, I don't have a solution because we need bodies. We need people that wanna do this job. I mean, it's no different. You know, you struggle getting corrections officers. We struggle getting road deputies. We have, we struggle in a host of industries that are things that people just don't wanna do.
And maybe there's other companies out there.
Yeah, maybe there, I mean, I would be curious, but I suspect they're in the same, but maybe not. That would be a good, you know, comprehensive's not the only show in town. Maybe we can find somebody else that maybe is better managed and they have a, cause generally it's not that there aren't folks, they just don't wanna work for.
Right.
You know, because maybe it's chaos and it's not well managed, then they're gonna gravitate. And I, I don't wanna throw rocks at companies because I don't know, other than, uh, the only thing, the only data I have is what we're seeing. And that's not very good data as far as that they're doing a good job. And so I think we need to look as far as, what are our other options out there?
Right. And I, you know, Leah Becknell with Beacon might be a really good resource to, to find out what other options. Because she works the Southwest region. She knows what other mental health agencies are out there. Uh, KBH is really building their behavioral health program. Maybe we reach out and, and talk to them. I, I don't know what the solution is.
I mean, that, that might actually be, cause I, I think I met, I, I met with Leslie just on a completely unrelated thing right after your meeting, which she was still. I mean, cause she did say, you know, it's like, it's, it's a crisis situation. And I think we may end up in the situation like what they're trying to do is we're gonna have to build capacity locally with our own and
Yes.
where you got stable folks that live in the community that, you know, buy a house here and they're here. And that there, it's not just a job, you know, that they're in the community and that's, I mean, maybe what we, they, when I say we, it's not gonna be we, it's gonna be them as far as the healthcare folks where they're looking for that. It's kind of a niche market for them because it's not, it's a need that's not getting met. And so there is an opportunity there, uh, a, a business opportunity for the hospitals to expand their service and pick that up and.
I would rather contract with them than contract with Beacon who then we're paying, that manages Comprehensive. Beacon's taking their share before it goes to Comprehensive.
Right.
And we in the end run are getting nothing. So, well, not wouldn't say nothing, but little. So I, I appreciate you looking into it and if you need to schedule a time for the stakeholders to be sitting there. Not only the ones that need to be held accountable, but the ones that might be able to provide us a different option.
Okay.
Uh, whether that's in one round table or two or twelve or whatever I'm here.
Moving on, sorry. The training that I mentioned earlier, uh, was held in two different locations. We use the Potts Lane Building, which I refer to the, as the, our KCSO Training Center. Sounds a little more professional than the Potts Building. The Training Center is an ideal location that is away from the public and deputies can cover training materials that might be offensive if they were in a public meeting room. The jail staff cleared a cell block in order to perform all the hands-on training that was associated with extraction and room clearing. This is a hands-on training that requires mats and other items to demonstrate techniques can be used to reduce injury to inmates and deputies. So I watched through my cameras. I was watching the training when they were in the jail. They were like using tennis balls and they throwing it and they, you know, they had, some of the guys would be the actors and be the inmates and it was a pretty intense, um, training. A day and a half of being taken down and manipulated and cuffed and stuffed and up on bunks and down on bunks and it was pretty impressive. Um, I also took the time and opportunity to speak with the deputies from the other agencies and the instructors. They were interested in the daily operations of our facility and were surprised that we had so few working on a shift. They come from larger jails where deputies are assigned to various stations and don't do everything like our staff. When they were told that everyone works the floors, the courts, transports, serves, meals, attends, and assists with all medical and mental health issues, they were surprised. They come in and they're like, well, where's your booking officer? Me. Well, who serves meals? Me. They were really, really surprised. They also noted that our jail was very clean and it did not have the smell of a jail. My staff takes great pride in the fact that they work in a clean environment. And we certainly have moments where the smells are not roses and the cells are covered in human waste. But we do have the ability to safely clean these rooms. And they asked for our tips on having a clean facility. And the bottom line is it comes down to staff and working with the inmates to keep their cells clean. It has buildings and grounds keeping up the regular maintenance on HVAC systems, ventilation and filter systems being monitored. And I appreciated that they recognize the pride that our staff has taken in our facility. We have a pretty old jail and I've been into quite a few jails. Um, and there's some nasty stinking jails out there and some are in similar age of ours. So it did make me feel pretty good that, um, they recognized, uh, how clean our facilities are. We are always looking for training opportunities and opportunities and hosting them oftentimes reduce our costs for travel and expenses. There will always be costs associated with training, including overtime. But comparing costs of training to lawsuits with settlements that oftentimes reaches into the millions, we are ahead of most agencies. We have recognized that well-trained deputies will provide the community with a level of professionalism that is necessary when operating in the public eye. Please take time this week to thank the corrections deputies. We are having a, um, I've got a cake ordered and I've got, um, a luncheon.
Files in that cake? Just one file?
I'll not, I'm, I'm not gonna tell. On May fifth, between fifteen hundred and nineteen hundred hours, we'll be in the Sallyport area having a luncheon and cake. I'll make sure it's kinda cleaned out and get rid of the cobwebs. I forgot to add that I do have a food handler's card program now started. I met with, um, David Kavanaugh from the Environmental Health and he sent me all the, um, hard copies so I can do all the class and testing myself. And then we submit it. He invoices me, we pay it and then we get reimbursed through our CGTA funds. So it's a, it won't cost us anything.
No, but it's a good thing because then you give, somebody at least has a skill or a license when they get a, can get a job at McDonald's.
Correct.
So it's gonna be required of everybody who serves, not just the deputies?
Yeah, no, this isn't for the deputies. This is strictly for inmates.
Okay.
Call it a training for them.
Yep, it's just inmate training.
Okay.
Uh, the more we can get them involved in programs, the less time they have to have idle hands and think of ways to destroy the jail or do them things like get in fights. We've had, um, two assaults last week within the jail. Uh, KBH classes, uh, this week, in fact, today, we're starting a new female class because our female population is on the rise. We currently have nine females. I took a week off, um, last month and I was in Wenatchee while I took a week off from working in my office. I focused, um, my full week on writing two RFPs. I'm in the final process of the RFPs to get them over to Legal so that they can finalize them. One is for pharmaceuticals and one is for a meal program.
How many total are in the jail now? You said nine?
Twenty, I have nine females and twenty males. We just went to Eastern and picked up one, so we don't have any housed outside of our facility right now. Population's on the rise.
Yep, that was.
So, and I've got three church services, um, going. I started Dr. Ogden's group. In December, I started another group with River Wa- River Watch Church, um, River Walker Watch.
River of Life.
River of Life Church, um, last week and then this next, in two weeks, I'm starting another church service. So there'll be three different church groups started. So everybody.
Only Sunday or they have a Wednesday, Sunday?
Sunday, Monday and Thursdays. So.
And are you getting good participation?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, always good participation. You get between six and nine inmates per session. And then, uh, Karen Austin and Marcy Williams come in on Sundays and they do the women. Any questions?
Thank you. Good stuff.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we are on.
Let's move that a little closer so everybody online can hear you.
I don't know that it does move closer. There we go.
We're on budget for this year and I'll be short and sweet. We have, um, we're ramping up for fair season, so Home and Garden Show. Our booth this year will be focusing on, we are going to be doing CPL renewals at the fairs and festivals. And that way we can spread the love and be available for people who can't make it into the courthouse. We're also wrapping up, um, what I, um, would use as, uh, crime prevention through environmental design. And so establishing locks on your homes, clean landscaping, bushes away from windows, exterior lighting. So we're gonna be showing people, um, when and how they can do this so that they can keep their property safe and reduce crime. So that's gonna be my focus through most of the fairs and festivals, along with a couple of added, marine and that type of thing and posse, uh, sprinkled in throughout the rest of the summer.
Questions?
You made me look at my CPL to see when it expires.
I thought that's what you were doing.
I'm good.
And CPLs can be renewed by the mail and you'll find that on our website.
What was the phrase?
The phrase you used, envirom- what?
Crime prevention through environmental design.
Okay, I'm right, I'm writing, cause that's such a turn of phrase. I like.
It's called SEPTED.
Okay. Oh, so you didn't coin it?
I did not coin it. I, I, I've written hundreds of SEPTED reports.
Okay.
So.
So that's kinda where I wanted to go is, um, with the increase in the burglaries and we just heard about it this morning, even at our own, you know, job sites. Do you guys have something on the website that you can put on the website of best management practices of where to put your cameras, where are yours?
Yeah, I'm gonna be uploading all of that and highlighting it. I'm just finishing the data right now. And then I'll roll it out through each area that we can meet with and I've encouraged the sheriff to even hold community meetings, coffees with, um, areas that we don't normally get to like Trout Lake. And that way he can have these kind of conversations and take flyers with him, handouts, and then we'll have it on our website.
And you came up with a real nice flyer that has all that information.
I've got a number of flyers and I'll have a easel with the talking points. So we'll be available and it's gonna be my big push this summer.
Yeah, I mean, anything we can do to help your guys track these people down because.
Locks, locks, really good locks.
Well, we had locks on that job trailer and.
Shovels, really good shovels.
Cameras are good.
Cameras.
And even if it's a game cam at a job site.
That's.
Night vision, night vision game cam.
Yep.
Night vision game cams.
It's a cheap investment compared to the loss of equipment.
Well, you're still gonna lose it. The question is, is can you get it back? Yeah.
So they make those new Apple ID things. They're pretty cheap on Amazon. As long as you have.
Oh, the little trackers?
Yep.
Yep, the Apple trackers.
The Apple trackers. They're cheap on Amazon. You have to have an Apple phone, which I don't, so I can't have one. But you can put it on, uh, a vehicle and it'll track your vehicle.
Put it on anything and it'll track it.
We've got a couple of them that we had ordered, uh, to deter mail fraud. But you have to be, um, you know, where we set up a package and deter.
Oh, to try to, I mean.
Yeah.
So there was just a thing on the news this morning, uh, U-Haul trucks are, you know, being stolen left and right. And people are losing all their worldly possessions. While they're getting smart, they're figuring out, hey, my U-Haul's getting, we're seeing it. So they're hiding the Apple little ID thingies on their U-Hauls. That way when they go in the hotel, they spend the night on their long journey.
But d- does that just let you know when it's outside your cell phone's range or does that let you know?
Look at your map and see where your vehicle is.
So it, it connects to the cell.
Tape it to the steering wheel, you know, you need to hide it.
Hide it in there.
I would, I would recommend like a dozen of them and hide them within your boxes as well.
Put it in the DeWalt toolbox, it's gonna get stolen and then you know where the DeWalt toolbox is in somebody's garage. You give that information to them and they show up and go knock knock.
On every.
Search warrant and go in?
Right, on, on, on the air filter, on every chainsaw.
Exactly.
If we have suspects, we gotta get a court order to put it, you can't.
Right.
See, if we do it, we have to have a search warrant. But if you guys do it on your personal stuff.
And providing you the information, that's enough.
We can operate with that.
And we did revise our proclamation to yours.
I saw that you shifted the date. I was unaware that you were doing it on a different day than the national thing.
So my question on that is, um, it said that you're gonna do it at two o'clock on the twelfth. Is it still considered a candlelight vigil?
Yes, later that evening.
We're gonna do both events.
Oh, you're gonna do both events on the twelfth? Okay. Would you like me to read it in while you guys are here?
Yes, please.
All right. Hope everybody has some time. "This is a proclamation to designate May eleventh through the seventeenth, twenty twenty-two as National Police Week. Whereas in nineteen sixty-two, President Kennedy proclaimed May fifteenth as National Peace Officer Memorial Day, which was established by a joint resolution of Congress in nineteen sixty-two. And whereas National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty. Many organizations also use this week to recognize the service and sacrifice of our current law enforcement officers for their dedication to the safety and protection of others. And whereas there are more than eight hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Clicktack County Sheriff's Office. And whereas since the first recorded death in seventeen eighty-six, more than twenty-three thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty, including three members of the Clicktack County Sheriff's Office. And whereas the names of Clicktack County's fallens are Sergeant Peter D. Garland, Deputy Michael J. McNabb and Deputy Danny K. Vaughn. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC." And whereas 619 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 472 officers killed in 2021 and 147 officers killed in previous years. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 34th Candle Vigil on the evening of May 12th, 2022. And whereas the candlelight vigil is part of the National Police Week, which will be observed this year, May 11th through the 17th. And whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown at half staff. Now therefore it be resolved that the Clickatuck County Board of Commissioners will observe May 12th, 2022 as Police Officers Memorial Day and May 11th through the 17th, 2022 as National Police Week in Clickatuck County and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in the communities across the nation.
Um, and one other question. Was um, Michael McNabb, I have him as a sheriff and on here it's a deputy.
He is a deputy.
He was a deputy.
Yes.
Okay.
Good correction. And then the other one, are you asking for uh, flags to be flown at half staff on the 12th and the 15th?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to point out that uh, that proclamation lists that about 23,000 officers have died in the line of duty. Uh, the latest statistics show that for every officer that dies in the line of duty, three officers take their own lives because of what they're exposed to as police officers. So that is, that is a side that needs a lot more attention is addressing things like PTSD and helping the officers deal with the garbage and the trash that we deal with every day.
I agree.
Well, I am absolutely happy to sign this and hope that you guys post it on your Facebook page. And if here's anything we can do to help get the word out on the candlelight vigils, please let us know.
Thank you and thank the board for doing this.
Yep, and can you reach out to Public Works and make sure they're aware of the half mast at, on the 12th and the 15th? Yeah.
Would you please make a motion?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the proclamation that was read into the record.
I'll second the motion.
There's been a motion and a second to accept the proclamation that was uh, read into the record. Is there any discussion? Um, I would just like to say thank you to Commissioner Christopher for taking this on and making.
The sheriff.
As well as the sheriff. Um, you guys did a great job with this.
Thank you.
At that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Would have one last comment and thank you folks for doing that. Appreciate it. Uh, I heard that um, in throughout the judicial system that they feel that the drug cases are way down. There's been a lack of drug arrests. That's because we can't arrest them for possession.
Mm-hmm.
So it can kind of be twisted to make it sound like the drug problem being taken care of. It's not.
No, now they're just out stealing and committing more crime.
Yes, they say now they're being arrested for theft.
Yep.
All right, thank you all. Have a great day.
Side note for you guys. Um, brought up the training for code compliance. The other thing we might want to look into is a bulletproof vest for code compliance. And there is a criminal justice grant out there that I forward the information to Karen for them, but we may want to look into it.
I believe Lim takes his along with him.
I know, but his is, right, that's my point. Whoever the new person is, we may be buying one if we don't get a grant for it, so that. I don't know.
I don't know, worth a shot.
I, I made a note.
All right, next up, uh, where's my? We have a solid waste recycling coordinator, Michelle, and landfill compliance officer Joe to give us an update.
Organizing my mess, sorry.
Yeah, hold on, I'm going back.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
Welcome. Don't be nervous. If you're nervous, just.
I'm not nervous.
Bring it on.
Thank you guys for getting us.
I'm actually encouraged to hear this because, I don't know, I, before I read, I knew exactly what Joe did. But reading that is, okay, hell of a list.
So yeah, I've been a compliance inspector for five and a half years. Work a four-day, 10-hour work schedule so that I can inspect randomly and they don't really know what day I'm out there, so. Kind of varies every week. My office is located out at the Roosevelt Landfill. Uh, trainings, I've passed the Swanna Solid Waste Association of North America, Molo, manager of landfill operations. And I've now upgraded that to a certified inspector. Uh, current on my OSHA Hazwafer trainings. Um, my duties are daily inspections of the intermodal and the landfill, monthly inspections of uh, transfer stations and their MRW rooms. Um, upload all the inspections to the Google Team Drive and share them with Republic Services. Communicate with Republic Services when there's an issue found upon inspection, follow-up to confirm they have been addressed. Familiar with the contract, including my role and the county's role. Read that thing numerous times. Assist with the development, updates and implements of solid waste management plan, including being on the SWAC. Participate with the crop contamination reduction and outreach plan, development and implement of the plans. Assist the recycling coordinator with outreach programs, including water jam, education at schools, Bingeon Community Cleanups, Secure Your Load campaigns, fair and community booths. Assist with illegal dump cleanups as needed, monitor the recycling bins at Bickleton and Bingeon and then report to the solid waste Republic Services when they are full. Oversee vehicle maintenance, including taking care of oil changes, tire rotations, winter tire mount removal, repair, scheduling. And I uh, always look around for the best deals and if our vehicle is operational.
I like that part, by the way.
Yeah, that's kind of a big thing, especially when you're driving around 100 miles a day for me. I don't want that thing to get me to and fro, so. Uh, projects, I just continuing my education, continuing education for my Swanna certification, assist the recycling coordinator on upcoming community events and educational opportunities.
One question I had, it said you help with illegal dumps. Is that something that's usually handled by the litter pickup crew?
Right.
And then you help if need be?
Yeah, I've helped that person load up big stuff, but in between when we didn't have somebody and um, like now, I went and got some last week, so.
So it's also something we do on our own without the litter pickup crew if need be?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have a form on our webpage that people can report illegal dumps. Some people will call it in too. And depending on what it is, sometimes it needs to be addressed sooner than later. Um, like last week, was it last week I had you go out? We, there was furniture on 142 and it was right on the highway, like on the side, but it was definitely something that needed to get addressed, so he went out and picked that up.
Does the Bingeon still have the recycling bin?
No, it's just a glass bin.
That's what I thought. We got pulled. Is there any plans to ta- to put one back there?
Not that I'm aware of.
Because it was just being abused too much?
Yeah.
Yeah, the people would love to have it there, so.
Care about it.
That is a possibility if that conversation wants to be had, but as far as it being contaminated, it was a very high contamination area.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, I think we tried and tried to, you know, through education and everything and it's just there, you know, it's, it's always there's a, you know, there's a few bad folks that ruin it for everybody. And I know the community'd love to have it back, but.
So what, they were just putting trash in there and?
Yeah, they were just throwing trash in it. It was.
I mean, it's a free place to throw your trash, right?
Yeah, yeah, free. Just drive down, throw it in the recycle container and I'm good. And it's like, yeah, now there's, now you have nothing.
Everything in there is trash, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, especially now. It's like anything, if it's contaminated, it's, throw the whole, throw the whole bin away now. Uh, questions for Joe?
No, I, I, I mean, I've been out, I've seen you out, seen you out there lots of times and seen you in your office out there.
So your main deal out there is um, keeping them uh, in check, making sure the trash stays inside the compound, making sure you find, if you find holes in containers, you're reporting them and, and just keeping them on the up and up out there for the most part is.
Exactly, yep.
Okay.
So can you explain um, in your five years, how many issues have we had? Because it seems like we're kind of a middleman between ecology and health and republic and we can see the issues and get the issues fixed before it becomes an ecology issue. Have we had to have ecology down to fix issues in the last five years?
Um, not very many. The only one that I really know of was uh, um, I don't even know if it was ecology or it was OSHA that was out there and fined them for asbestos. Some of the ways they were handling their asbestos.
Okay. And do you have much contact with ecology? Are they asking for reports from you about the management of it?
No.
So it's pretty much.
Contact with them at all.
We, we manage that entire all the health and safety out there in essence. Okay.
And at the transfer stations as well. He does do monthly inspections there and that more so falls back on our contract with them and making sure that they're holding up their end of the deal, such as the fences at Dallesport. Not being tall enough and not being secure, if they're not securing any of that trash in there.
So how does that, how does that work? If, if you go out there and you see that there's a problem, do you just try to work with the staff on site or you then have contract with Republic to try to fix that or?
We've talked to them for the last two or three years about getting some better fences out there and, and they've had a lot of issues with the cows and this and that, so. Nothing's became of it, you know? They got their guys out there picking up trash every morning and they're like, well, they think it's blowing out of people's cars and blowing around, which it is, but I don't know exactly how much is leaving that site, so. I don't think a lot, but.
Pick a windy day.
Sixty miles an hour, some is.
I've seen them, people going to throw just even their recycle and then the wind picks up and I mean, it takes it and it's way past the fence and you can't get it at that point. Then it ends up on the highway and then across the highway and. That's a terrible sight, really. The location of it and the design of it, on where they did those bins. Goldendale, at least, you're secured, you know, where you're backing up, the wind is coming from the west generally, so it's not blowing the stuff as often. Dallesport with where they have all of the recycling, um, and even where they have the trash, even though it's blocked, the way that wind is coming off of the river, it just takes it.
Okay. Any other questions for Joe?
No.
All right.
Any idea what MRW stands for?
Moderate Risk Waste.
Okay.
I had a question for you guys. I had the GM send me an email about the city of Port Angeles has 2,000 tons of bio solids that are already profiled and approved. And um, they told him that he needed to take that completed profile to Clickatuck County to request permission for the county's approval. So I was wondering who's going to make those calls or. I kind of, I asked David Kavanaugh about it and he said, oh yeah, we can take that. I don't know if he's going to be the guy. But, all right, for you guys, or, you know, so.
Interesting.
Yeah, that's a good question.
I mean, usually the solid waste director, I think, would be the one.
Would be the one that would sign off on that.
I guess.
Get us the information, uh, because currently it would be us right now. And then if, uh, if it's not during a board meeting, I think the board chair would sign that.
Yeah.
I would agree.
In consultation with the health department.
With talking to environmental health and Joe.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions?
No.
Okay.
Anything you need from us to help you better do your job better or anything like that?
Uh, not really at this point, but.
Okay, if there is, you know where to find us.
Okay, yeah.
And I will send you an email and schedule a time for us to get together. All right, Michelle?
All right, so we've had a lot of different programs going on. Um, I came on right as COVID happened, so two weeks literally before COVID shut down, so it's been kind of a slow start to getting out there and being into the programs. But now COVID is over, right? Gone, I think, coming back around probably. Um, so a lot of the programs are coming up and I'm pretty excited about that. Um, we've been working hard on composting, so the Goldendale Middle School, I've been working with them. They're composting about 15 pounds of food waste every day, which after learning how to compost, I would like to be able to get in with them and try to figure out where's that food waste coming from and how do we reduce it on the front end? It's always great to compost on the back end, but we also have to reduce the food waste in the first place. Um, but they're doing a great job at that. We had the composting master Pete DeBoy. We have a contract with him. He went out there on Friday and spent the whole day with the school, did a bunch of classes and looked at their compost to show them how they could increase and make it better because it's a love-hate relationship, I think, with composting. If you haven't composted, you have to have the perfect moisture and the perfect um, dry material. Uh, KVH has agreed to allow us to use their shredded paper, so that'll help because they were producing so much food waste, they didn't have enough dry material. So then I reached out to KVH Hospital and they are going to help out with shredded paper, so I think that'll help them quite a bit.
And the school doesn't have enough shredded paper?
Oh, you think?
Yeah, so they've been going around to all of the recycle, which, and the kids shred up the paper, but it's not enough. So you need like a two to one. So if you're doing 15 pounds of food waste, you're looking at like, what?
Thirty, thirty pounds?
Yeah, like 30 pounds of dry material. So it's just a lot. They needed more.
Yeah, plus they don't.
About what we, we put in here.
Yeah.
They don't use as much, they don't really use a lot of paper anymore now at the schools.
Yeah, because everybody's, it's all, it's all on Chromebooks. It's not.
Yep, yep, but, and they have four composts going right now and they're kind of circulating through them and then it sounds like they're going to work with the Goldendale um, Community Garden to get some compost over there once it's actually made. And then once they go to summer break, I think they're going to move it so it can at least continue on for the summer. Um, Columbia High School in White Salmon, they checked out one of our recycling audit kits. So it's a new kit I put together um, this spring and they hosted their own contamination recycling audit. They found they had about a 12% contamination rate, which really isn't bad, but they had a high level of paper, which then kind of reduces your contamination really, because if you have a lot of like cans and bottles, you're going to have a higher contamination rate because people don't always rinse them out. So they are going to do a campaign to reduce the contamination. The only contamination they found was in the bottles. A lot of it was just food or liquids. And then in the fall, they're going to check the kit out again and do another um, audit and see if they've been able to reduce it. Lyle had a community cleanup. It's the first time they've had a community cleanup in a few years. The main um, person who was hosting that didn't necessarily want our help, so he was kind of doing it on his own. He ended up getting sick at the very end and nobody knew what was going on. So it was a little bit of a cluster, but they were able to still kind of pull it together. Um, they collected, I know, 6,000 pounds of recycling that was diverted. So that's e-waste, um, commingled, some plastic, baling twine, that kind of stuff. I don't know how much garbage. They were supposed to have yard waste too, but they didn't get containers. Containers weren't reserved like they were supposed to be, so. Um, the gal that reached out to me after the fact, she said that she would try to get us more involved next year because I work with other communities and kind of have experience with how they run it and can help them make sure that they're successful next year, but they were still successful. They still got stuff collected, which was good. Um, Bingeon and White Salmon had their annual cleanup, 27th, I think, this year? It was either the 26th or the 27th year that they've done it. That is a huge overhaul. If you guys have not been out there, I suggest maybe next year, go out there and check it out. It's a huge event, two days. Um, they collect everything.
We were out there at the Senior Center Volunteer Appreciation and there were yellow vests everywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was absolutely impressed. If we can get anywhere near that turnout over here,
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to be tickle pink.
Yeah, and um, some of the statistics are in, but we're still waiting on the other statistics. But some of it, we collected 34 tons of garbage, six tons of brush, one ton of recycle, 181 fluorescent bulbs and 3,683 pounds of paint, which is equivalent to 441 gallons of paint. Um, and then I'll, on the next update. And then I'll, on the next update, I can update you guys on the rest of the stuff that was collected. We did have to close down a couple hours early cause they filled up all the containers and we weren't able to get them, um, emptied this year like we have been in the past. That's just a staffing deal with Republic, but they said that next year they'll work with us a little closer to try to make sure that that happens. Uh, Centerville School, um, Joe went out on Friday and did a litter cleanup with them and they do that every year. They clean up about six and a half road miles. And they got about 200 pounds of litter this year. Not quite as much as years past. It's a little bit cleaner, I think. But the kids love it and the whole school gets out. They do, every grade goes out. They do four directions from the Centerville School District. I would like to see other school districts more involved. I've had a hard time getting other school districts more involved, but like I said, I came in with COVID. So they have struggled to just keep their head above water. So I'm keeping in with them and hopefully eventually they will get on board and we can get other schools more involved with litter cleanup and waste reduction.
I like that at least a once a year kind of thing anyway, if they can get out and help them, yeah.
I mean, you know, and a lot of that trash does come from their community that's around them. And so getting them out and showing them what you may not see just driving fast down the road. There's a lot of litter that's on the side. And if you start seeing that and noticing it, it makes you not wanna litter too. And you tell others not to litter. And so it's just an ongoing, um, positive impact. Um, upcoming programs, we have spring litter counts. So we worked with Department of Ecology last year and did a campaign for unsecured loads. As part of that campaign and pilot program, we were required to do litter counts this year. There's only me and Joe this year. We're, we usually have four and we struggled just four to do those counts last year. So Republic Services agreed to have their guys at Dalsport and Goldendale do the litter unsecured load counts for us. The data will be different because it's different eyes and you're gonna have different opinions on whether it's secured. I gave them the definitions. And, um, we'll see what comes of that. We have a high unsecured load count in our county. When, I think there was three pilot counties that did it last year. And it was a little embarrassing because we had, at Goldendale, it was over 60% unsecured. And so now in all of these different litter meetings that I've been on, they referenced that pilot. They don't say it's Clicktack County, but they said one of our pilot counties had even 60%. You know, and that is embarrassing and that is contributing to a lot of the litter that we're seeing on the roads. When people think, oh, I'm just driving down the road. Well, one bump, one hard press on your brake or wind is creating litter onto the ground. So it is contributing to our litter.
Are you doing that when they drive through the gate?
So we sat on the outside of the gate.
Okay.
Um, and the guys, I just asked him to tell the guys to be vigilant if the, if they're in the line, if they're taking those straps off, because they could be taking it off in the, in the line.
Yeah, I mean, that's how we always do it because we wanna have it completely ready to go. So it's a faster.
Correct. So it's, the counts aren't gonna be the same and, but we did sit on the outside. So we saw them coming in and were able to get that information beforehand. The guys won't be able to do that. So we'll just have to put that in as a side note as to what the.
So you guys are doing out in BZ then?
No.
While they're doing up here?
No, just Dalsport and Goldendale were the only two that were, um, counted last year. So we have to do a count this year to match, to see where we're at, to see if it's reduced based on the campaign.
Okay.
Um, Clicktack County Home and Garden Shows this weekend. So we'll be there. Um, Joe's gonna help me out. Joe always helps me out. So he's kind of a great asset to have. Cause I'm only one person. I can only do so much. So um, we're gonna be selling the composting bins, which we sell for $30. They wholesale for 90 and retail for about 160. We sell them for $30 and offset the cost with the grant. We'll also be selling some food waste bins that go on your counter that you can collect. They're one gallon bins that you can do your, um, fruits and vegetables in before you take it out to your main compost. And those will be reduced cost as well. And then we'll be promoting our upcoming composting classes that are gonna happen in May, June and September. Um, Saturday, we also have a food scraps class, so Cooking with Food Scraps with the chef and author Anne Marie Bono. And we have 33 people signed up for that as of this morning. So I think that's a pretty good turnout.
Can you elaborate on what that is?
I think that was that grant that came through our bill binder.
Yeah. So a lot of times, you know, when we cook and say you're cooking and you're chopping up your vegetables, your onions and your bell peppers, you know, a lot of that is, we cut it off and we throw it away because it's the seeds, it's the stem, it's the top. That stuff isn't necessarily used in our regular cooking, but a lot of that can actually still be used. So one tip that I learned from one of her classes was when you take those scraps off, put them into a jar and you keep the jar in your freezer. And when you go to do like bone broth, so if you have your bones from your chicken that you cooked, you put it all in a pot and then you grab out your jar from the freezer and you top, put in all of your scraps of onions and bell peppers and um, carrots, that kind of stuff. And all of that still has vitamins in it. It can all still be used, but we don't necessarily put it into like our kebabs. Um, so stuff like that. And she does a lot of other, um, like yeast and fermenting. So things that, you know, you can make a lot of things out of the scraps that people just throw away. Legislation in Washington has really been pushing towards organics and reducing food waste by up to 50%. Although our county doesn't technically qualify based on the current, uh, way the law was written and signed off in in March. We are on that brink. We're at like 23,000 people. A lot of times 25,000 seems to be the tipping mark. So at some point we are going to go over that and food waste is going to be something that we have to um, reduce in our county. Our county having the landfill that captures methane gas, we have that in there too. So it's kind of, you have to weigh both sides of it. Like I was saying with the composting, sometimes having that backend with composting is great, but you also have to teach people on the front end. How do you not create that food waste in the first place? So.
Okay. Thank you.
Did that answer your question too? Um, Goldendale Litter Cleanup, we had scheduled it for the end of April, but with every, all the changes, I ended up having to cancel that. That's tentatively scheduled for June 6th. And I will be working on those details this coming week. So next update, I can give you guys more information.
So it was actually scheduled to end of April? I was unaware of that. I always thought it was in June. Interesting.
For the litter cleanup?
Um, yeah, the community cleanup thingy. I've been pushing for a year that hopefully is gonna still happen.
The Goldendale Cleanup is different than litter cleanup. So I don't know what your intentions were. Maybe you'll have to update me on that. But if you're talking about Goldendale Cleanup, like people getting rid of their trash and recycling.
Thing in the White Salmon thing and this is different than that.
That's different than that. And that actually, um, I have in the programs for work. So I'll get to that. Um, this was just litter, cleaning up the litters around, the litter around Goldendale, getting the community involved in that. Um, we had a gal from, her name's Tina Goodnight. She reached out to us and wanted to host it. And so I was helping her to do that. Um, so she'll be the main carrier of it and I'm just helping facilitate.
So this is more public property versus private property?
Yes, pub, oh yeah, public, yep. The local roads and a lot of inside of Goldendale really wasn't bad. When we started driving around, looking at routes, some of the main roads were the highways are terrible. Um, so we were just gonna stick to some of the heavier littered areas. So I guess we'll just skip to the Goldendale Community Cleanup. So Goldendale, I've been pushing to try to have a Goldendale Community Cleanup. The problem is I have to have a host that's like a nonprofit that can be the main host. So in White Salmon, we have the Rotary and they are the main host and then the Chamber helps and a heavy helper in that. And those people facilitate it. And then I just help where need be. I help the communication between Republic Services and then the county. Um, I haven't been able to find anyone in Goldendale that's willing to step up. The Chamber didn't want to do it. I Goldendale's kind of a weird one because we have the transfer station, right? So we don't necessarily need to offer trash. But if we could offer coupons where people could, over a month, get free trash drop off, maybe a yard or two for free. The city did use to do that. Um, when I reached out to, to Republic Services before, they weren't too keen on the coupon idea, but we have a lot of new people in positions now. So I think that we can push for that. And then if we could do like special recycling where it's electronics and, um, batteries, that kind of paint. Collect that outside of Goldendale. Cause a lot of people don't like to go to the transfer station for recycle. Cause you could wait in the line for 45 minutes to go drop off your recycle. Which doesn't sound fun to anyone. I know I've driven by and been like, nope, not today. And I don't go in.
I have some today. I'm gonna.
Yeah.
I'll try here first and then I'll go Dalsport on my way out.
The line gets super long there.
Yeah, it's always long.
Are you going to be around this afternoon for 4:30 or something like that when I'm done? That we can have a chat about that?
Yeah, I can be. I do have an appointment at 3:20, but I should be plenty done by then. So, okay. Well, I'll put that down to talk to you. Um, another program, Senior Services reached out to me. They have a new grant that is covering them for their coordinator and some fuel fees to pay back volunteers to go on to seniors' properties and help clean up trash and yard waste. They reached out asking how we can help because of course, like any grant, the grant doesn't cover everything. So they won't have enough money for like disposal fees. They might have some, but they use too much of it, then they don't have enough money to pay volunteer fuel mileage and stuff. They're not gonna pay their hours just few miles from what it sounds like. So I'm starting to reach out to some different partners. This just came up last week. So I'm reaching out to different partners to find out how we can help them. Because that is something that I think is important. We have a large aging population in our county. And so getting out there to help them when they can't necessarily afford it or be able to physically do it is important. I'm hoping Republic Services will waive the disposal fees for us like they do for the litter. Um, we don't get charged for litter disposal fees. But we, we'll just have to see. And then looking at some other grants as well.
Do you think that's a good spot for the coupons as well?
Definitely could be, yeah. Yeah.
So I'm, I'm sure I will. Um, when I get done meeting with her, I'm, I'm supposed to talk to Steve this week. So I will probably be mentioning coupons.
Okay.
Um, only other one is the Pilot Special Collection Program with Emerald Systems. That one's in the works. Julie from Emerald Systems is working on some drop off sites. So it sounds like either the Feed Store or Harvest Market, Whole Comes. They all kind of sounded interested. So she was gonna be meeting with them. And then on the west side, there was Ace. And there was one other, but I don't remember. She's gonna meet with all of them and kind of go over the program. That's for collecting the plastic film. And the baling twine as well as styrofoam, if there's a market for it.
Okay.
That's all of that. And then I gave you guys some information on the grants, just so you have it in case you were curious.
Yep.
Oh yeah. So with Republic Services, we have a couple things pending. Um, one of them being paint collection. We went to Paint Care last year. Well, Republic Services went with Paint Care because it's a state program now. They were able to put sites at the three transfer stations, but they did not put a site at Roosevelt. We just found out about it. And they haven't given us a clear answer as to why. While paint is still being collected out there. So if they send an MRW pickup out there and they pick up paint, we, as the county, will be charged for that paint disposal based on our contract. Um, Republic pays for the transportation of it and we pay for the disposal. And we can't get reimbursed through the grant anymore. So we already had to fork out, I think it was like $2,500 for paint that was picked up while they were in transition of moving to the program. Um, which we fought hard with ecology and Republic Services and everybody pretty much threw their hands up and we just had to pay out the money. I had let them know that this is an issue and we need to talk about it. I haven't had much luck in getting that conversation going. So um, the Paint Care representative, he sent out an email to everybody saying, hey, I'm available Wednesday, but nobody from Republic has responded yet. So if they're not gonna have a paint collection through Paint Care there, they need to not be collecting paint. Or they need to be paying for it because I mean, it's expensive. So before the Paint Care, we were spending 12,000, a little over $12,000 a year for paint disposal costs. At all the sites. I don't know how much they were getting. I'd have to go back through all of the registers, but.
So your recommendation is if they either need to have a collection site, a Paint Care collection site at Roosevelt or don't collect paint at Roosevelt?
Correct. And I think it's gonna be difficult for them to have a paint collection site because of the regulations with Paint Care. I'm guessing they have to have it manned. Because they have to physically take the paint. The paint can't be left out in the elements. Like there's a lot of things that go into it. Um, I did tell, when I spoke to Nick from Paint Care, I told him that maybe that was kind of what was going on. Cause I didn't know for sure why they didn't go with the program. Um, and I suggested maybe he look around in some other areas. There's not a lot out there, but maybe looking at like Bickleton to see if there was a store there that would host it. Cause they can get reimbursed for paint that they collect.
Now, when you say don't take Paint Care there, or paint there.
Yeah.
If, if paint's arriving in a shipping container from Thurston County or something.
That's totally.
It's just going straight in the landfill.
Well, it shouldn't be going in the landfill.
Couldn't have been in the container.
It shouldn't be, right. But what you're mainly talking about is residents dropping off their paint.
Correct.
Just trying to make sure I'm clarified here.
Yep.
And do, is there much paint that's dropped off there? Do we know?
I don't know how much is dropped off. Yeah. I mean, there's not a lot, but.
No, no, that 1,200 was from all the different.
Yeah, the 12,000's from the whole county as a whole. So the three transfer stations and Roosevelt. I haven't gone through to see how much was coming from there, but even if it's just a thousand, like it's a thousand that we shouldn't necessarily be having to pay when there's other ways of doing it. So just looking at those alternatives. So that is on um, the radar. Republic Services has also asked for their employees at the transfer stations to take half hour lunch breaks. Um, based on the contract, the way it's written, it says that we all have to agree, the county and Republic Services to any changes that happen at the transfer station. Um, no conversation has really happened as far as this goes. It was just a comment made from Zach. I don't know if any of you have spoke with Zach. He's um, over the transfer stations now as well as kind of heading the landfill operation underneath Josh. And the guys don't have any lunch breaks right now. So they work, you know, 10 hour plus days really, and there's no closure. They wanna be able to close for a half an hour, which would then result in a big one. Transfer stations being closed and lines could possibly be longer. So that's a conversation that needs to be had with them to see if there's another way of doing it, or if you guys just approve of that and we need to.
So they can't, they can't stagger their lunches so that they stay open?
Right now, they want two people on duty at all times because of, they have to have somebody taking money, somebody watching, backing them up. And so they're not supposed to just have one person on duty. So technically the second person would still have to be on duty for their lunch.
How does that work with the requirements on breaks, 15 minute breaks every four hours?
Yeah, Joe and I mentioned that too. We're kind of surprised that they've been able to get away with it, but I don't know policy wise if, you know, they just have another policy and they're, they're saying that they're taking the breaks, but I mean, they can't.
I've, I've seen it where there's two people there and the one guy sitting in the back eating his lunch and the other person's backing the truck up and then walking over to the till.
Yeah.
And going and backing it. And that guy's getting a break and he's getting his lunch. It just
Yeah.
Sounds like they wanna do it all at the same time versus doing it that way.
Yeah.
Well, I would say that I, I am the least, um, enamored with the idea of closing. I mean, it's already I mean, it's already kind of frankly pisses me off when they're changing containers and the gates close. Cause it seems to be inevitably when I'm
Next in line?
Next in line.
One, it's a, it's a long closure. You're talking probably 40 minutes.
It is to switch those out, which I mean, I, you know, they have to do it, but uh, but they have to do it. So I know, and that, you know, the traffic will just, even in Dalsport, which is not as busy as up here. It's, you know, it's lined up down Tideman Road.
Correct.
To get in there. And so a half hour on top of that.
Right.
That's, that's, people are not gonna be happy about that. So.
I agree. I mean, I do. I'm not a big fan of the closure, but ultimately they do have people that are wanting to take lunch.
Well, yeah, I mean, they should get their break and they should get lunch. But, but I also have observed the same thing. Where
They do have slow times.
They've been eating for the last 25 years somehow.
They do have slow times.
They do.
Adjusting it makes sense. Yeah.
So this isn't an official request by Republic? This is a rumor you heard?
No, that was them asking, but it wasn't an official request, like it didn't go anywhere. Correct. Yeah. They, they brought it up in a conversation and, um.
Testing the waters.
Yeah, it was in the quarterly update. So it was just something they wanted to address. So I'll let Zach know that we brought it up and that if he wants to make an official request, then he needs to do so. And then you guys can go from there.
Yeah, I would have, if he wants to make an official request, I would sit there and ask.
Okay. Um, yeah, I think that's it.
Questions?
No, um, thank you. Um, I will come up this afternoon when I'm done and all is well.
Okay.
Question?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you both.
Don't hurt yourself anymore.
Thank you both.
When's the next update from us?
Whenever it's on the schedule.
Whenever it's on the schedule. I don't know if we do.
Okay.
The corrupt date was actually next week, so I'll send you the dates.
If you could, that'd be great. Okay, thank you.
All right.
All right, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you busy? You want to stick around, Joe?
Yeah, I can stick around.
All right, thanks. All right. Anything else for the good of your?
No. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to recess for lunch.
I would second the motion.
There's a motion and a second to recess for lunch. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We'll see everybody at one o'clock.
No lunching for you? I'm gonna chat with Joe.
We are going to call the regular business meeting to order of the Clickat County Board of County Commissioners. We will begin with, uh, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, in its liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show, all three commissioners are present.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the business agenda with one add-on under new business. Fiscal Manager Jen Bartley quarterly updated three fifteen PM.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve the business agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Did you guys have a chance to look over the minutes that Abby sent out?
I've sent corrections to all minutes.
Yeah.
Um, but I don't know if anybody else is ready.
Yeah.
I'll print them off and then I'll send them to you today.
Okay.
I got lots of here next to bed.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Next, we will move into citizen comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual. And at one twenty-five, the board will respond to any comments if they so choose. We will begin, as always, in the room, um, and I think we have someone who's interested in speaking. Mr. McNermit?
Thanks, Jake.
Cut, you can come forward in front of the mic, if you would, so that everybody on there can see you and hear you.
If you can make sure they're green, too.
You're green, Dan.
You're perfect, then.
Gentlemen, thanks for, um, allowing me this brief amount of time. I'm going to have to be super quick because I got a couple of things. This is a letter that I've submitted from the, um, Dallasport Murdoch Community Council, uh, asking, uh, uh, for, uh, the commissioners to make a resolution to be signed, uh, to secure the park property at Sixth and D Street. Um, all your help and cooperation and support will be greatly appreciated. Um, I'm, I'll submit the letter, uh, and you guys can look it over and get back to us on that. You, Dan, do you understand what I'm asking for?
Here or now?
Okay. Uh, we'd like a resolution, uh, that the park property will be used as it was intended as a park property.
As needed on the resolution.
Yeah, okay. And, uh, that was suggested to us. Uh, the council acted on it and directed me to write this letter. Okay. Um. So real quick, there's a couple of things that I'd like you guys to help me with. Uh, I would like you to, um, um, who signed the contract for Republic Services, the garbage collection services and the dumpster distribution services in Clickat County? Do you know who did that?
The original?
Uh, this year's contract.
This year's?
They have, they have a exclusive, uh, in, uh, Clickat County and they don't have dumpsters that are available. And they've been holding up construction projects for several months now. I've been on the phone with them for three months about this and they keep promising and not delivering. They're like the dog in the manger, literally, that can eat the hay but won't let anybody else eat it. So we can't bring dumpsters in. There's plenty of dumpsters available from, uh, all over the place. But of course, they have an exclusive in, uh, Clickat County. So I'd like you to look into that for me. Uh, I've done everything I can as a citizen. So now I need my duly elected officials to help me on that. It's very important. Um, the other thing is that I would be very interested. Uh, I've been pulled into something here that I'm not really prepared for, but it involves the, the water department, the sewer and Clickat County and the PUD and some suggestions that have been made, uh, to, uh, make the, um, uh, water department, uh, a part of the PUD, um, in Dallas. Yeah, I only got three minutes, Dave. I can't explain the whole thing to you. But I'm concerned about it. I don't want to go public on it until I know both sides of, of the story. You know, rumors, people said this and people said that, water meeting, things and that kind of things. I, I've got to come to the, I, I don't appear publicly or write letters to the editor of newspapers without knowing both sides of every story. So.
Can you stick around for a little bit?
I will promise to, as long as you like. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, next, online, we have Vern, and I'm guessing it's Mr. Harpoole.
Um, it just wouldn't be a board of commissioners meeting without me, uh, showing up. Hello. Um, first of all, I wanted to just thank you guys. I watched the last meeting and was kind of appalled at how badly you guys were treated. I have great respect for you and all you do. Um, you're doing a great job as far as I am concerned. So, uh, keep up the good work. Uh, and I just wanted to thank Commissioner Soder, um, with my comments Monday. He was able to go right to the, uh, Forest Service on Friday and meet with them about our concern about getting access for EMS folks and the whole controversy of the sandbar. Um, so if there's time at the end, maybe Commissioner Soder could talk about how that meeting went about. And then maybe sometime in the next month or two, I would get on the agenda so we can have a two-way conversation and update you guys on, on all the latest. Um, so anyway, thanks a lot. You're doing a good job. Hang in there.
Thanks, Vern. Thank you, Vern.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next up, anybody else in the audience?
No.
All right, we will go back online. Uh, if you would like to provide public comment, uh, star six to unmute your phone, turn your video on, wave your hand, raise your hand, get our attention. I am not seeing anyone. All right, we will open it up in the room or online. Since we had a new, another member of the public join, if you'd like to provide public comment. It's a good politician. Never let a mic go to waste.
Lord Magar Goldendale, uh, here on Gap, the Conservation District. Just thought I'd come in and see if you guys have any questions, comments, thoughts about the, uh, Conservation District's work on the conservation easement that we're proposing through RCO.
Okay.
And I got a few via email. Um, got back to those, but anything, any other follow-ups?
Just, I, I emailed a couple through there. I, I did have one question that doesn't even pertain to yours and, uh, alone, we talked now because he's probably going to leave and not going to be here in twenty-five minutes. Um, there's another one of these that we received from the Columbia Land Trust that sounds like it's doing pretty much the same thing you're doing, but with a different landowner's property. Is that common for two different sources to be able to shoot these applications off to the state?
Um, it is, yeah, and it's probably a different landowner. I mean, I'm definitely focused in that Clickat River region there. So they've made a lot of acquisitions.
But it's the same.
And that might be acquisition.
The same grant? Oh, it might, oh.
Yeah, and it's, it's probably a different funding source. It's more likely, um, uh, it's not salmon recovery because it have, no, it is salmon recovery, actually.
Yeah, it's easement, conservation easement, yeah, okay.
Yeah, no, I'd have to look at, I guess, the details and be able to answer specifically.
Not, not to worry. No, I was just kind of curious what was going on with that. But anyway, okay, thank you.
And if you guys would like me to come back later and need anything.
I don't need anything further.
No, I was good with it.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay, we will open it up to anyone online or in public who would like to provide public testimony or comment, I should say. Uh, raise your hand, get our attention, um, and if not, we will keep on working for a little bit.
Mr. Chair, since we don't appear to have anybody, can I respond?
Yeah.
I'll respond to Mr. McDermott. I can't really speak to the water district part, the, the wastewater piece. Uh, the bonds on the wastewater plant in Dallasport, which the county owns and has been paying for. Um, we made the final payment, uh, in January. Well, we scheduled to make it in January or we authorized.
We're gonna make it this year.
Uh, we're gonna make it this year. I don't think the cut, the check has been cut yet, but it's done. And so that does, does open up the possibility of, um, the county doesn't have to own it anymore because we were required to own it while we were making the payments on it. But now that the plant is paid off, we have, I've been empowered by the board to start having conversations with the PUD about the eventual disposition or not. I mean, we're, we're just in the discussion phase now. I have met with their board chair and, uh, Jim Smith, the, uh, on a couple of different, once a week, uh, we've been meeting about that because.
Is that still the head of the council?
No, it's, um, uh, Mr. Miller is the board chair this year. And so he and, uh, he and, um, Jim and I have met a couple of times. Uh, we did do a, um, engineering study we actually had done over the last couple of years of looking out, you know, what sort of maintenance, what has to be done to the plant over the next ten plus years, just to kind of plan for what's that look like? And then also doing an update on the rates. We did a rate study and looked at kind of what the rates are and what they would need to be. And so that's where, that's the only thing I know of that's going on as, as far as that's. I don't know what you're hearing, but there is a conversation going on between the county and the PUD as far as on the wastewater plant, yes. I don't know any water district component of any, I'm not involved in any of that.
Okay.
Can you, you can, if the chair will allow you to follow up a question if you, or another.
Well, I can go, which might answer some of your questions, and then he can go. Um, so I, I guess I'd say I'd start with the drop boxes and Republic Services. Uh, this is an ongoing issue. I know they were ordering more boxes. The contract is not a yearly contract. It is just a contract that was signed eons ago. Um, so the non-availability of drop boxes is more of a contract compliance uh, or not in compliance issue, um, which we have been made aware of in the past few months. Um, so working on it, but I don't know that we have an answer for that. Um, the, the water district slash wastewater treatment plan, I, I have heard the same rumor, uh, that they're related.
I don't know what the rumor is. That's what I, that's what I need.
The rumor is the, the PUD wants the Dallasport Water District.
Oh.
Um, and the rumor is that the commissioners are helping them facilitate ownership of the Dallasport Water District.
That's correct.
Um, so, um, that's all I know is the rumor because this board has never spoken on such a matter.
That's an interesting rumor.
Such a matter, but, you know.
I, I, but interestingly, the, I'm not sure how the water district is that. It's a district. We have zero jurisdiction over.
It's a legal district.
It's a legal district with its own elected board. That's like us. That would be us saying, oh, we're going to sell the PUD to.
Right.
You know, white salmon. It's like, we can't do that. The sewer plant is different. That actually is ours, so I'm curious. I think they're getting conflicted.
The previous conversation by this board with the wastewater treatment plant was to put it out for bid, knowing that the PUD might be interested in ownership. Um, the, the wastewater treatment in Dallasport might be interested in coming across the river and bidding on the project or potentially, um, even I've heard rumors of the Dallasport Water District potentially being interested in bidding on that project. So again, that's, that's all I know with that one at this point.
That's the wastewater part.
Yes.
The water district part of it, uh, and the relationship with the airport well and, um, some of that other stuff is part of the rumor. I think that it would be, and Jenny was not to, to just come right out and say what I think. It's all I'm good at.
Okay.
Uh, and, uh, the, I think that, or there's a hope that there's a misunderstanding that, um, uh, Jake Anderson said that the Dallasport, um, uh, to the, you know, in a meeting or someone, I'm not sure the particulars of this. Jake, you can probably help me with this, um, said that, uh, the Dallasport, uh, water system has to, uh, sell to the PUD. That, that's got to be done. And, uh, that might just be your opinion. You may have said it, you may not have said it, but that's what's being said in Dallasport. Uh, and, and the rumor's kind of spreading around to where it's bothering me and they're calling me up at home and stuff. I got to find out about it.
Well, I can respond to that. Um, we have absolutely no control over the Dallasport Water District. Uh, we are not on their board. Um, I would not, uh, say that, uh, another elected board had to sell themselves to the PUD. That makes no sense. We don't have that control. Unlike what some people think, we are not God.
I don't think you are.
Well, thank you.
So.
And I'm sorry that you're having to deal with the rumors. Um, we hear many rumors every week.
Yeah.
And I'm not, and, you know, I'm not exactly sure what's going on with the airport either. There was talk about holding a joint meeting between us, uh, City of the Dals, Airport Board and Water District to sit down and try to figure out a final conclusion to what the heck's going on down there. And, and I'm kind of looking forward to it because then maybe I can be brought into the loop on what's going on.
So one of the ways I'm affected at my job is that I, uh, I hear a lot of things. I check them out. I either do nothing about them or I do something about them. And I was hoping you guys could shed some more light on how that misinterpretation could be going around.
You know everything I know at this point, which is scary, huh?
I, I believe that, Dan, uh, and I appreciate your help on, on this stuff. Uh, I rely on it.
Okay, so for right now, we have a hand raised, so we're going to go to public, back to public comment for a minute. And then we can get back into discussion if there's nothing else available. Uh, Ruby, public comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so just speaking to the, uh, contract for Republic Services and the lack of, um, roll-off containers that are available, I would just say that there was an employee issue going on over there, um, in Kenny's unit. And roll-off drivers are a specific skill, so I would venture to say that he's probably lost a couple of more of his newer drivers. Um, there are roll-off containers that are new ones, um, that can be used. It's just whether or not there's drivers to pick them up.
I've been on a wait list for three months, Ruby.
Yeah, I know. We're waiting on some too. It's, it's a sticky situation. Um, but I would, I would contact Republic Services here in town and talk with Kenny on that business unit. See what's going on.
I've done it like fifteen times. You know, it's, it's, it's like shutting down a hole.
Yeah. Well, I used to have a phone number to get in touch with them, but I don't anymore, so I, I can't help you.
Yeah, you know, your best route is, is to go up to Seattle and hopefully you can get a manager to call you back and promise that, yeah, they're on top of it. We should be able to get your dumpster in two weeks. And after three months, you can't take that anymore. I got piles of garbage out. We're doing a remodel right now of my house.
Don Tibbetts.
Piles of garbage out on my lawn in one of the windiest parts of Clickat County.
All right. Do you have any further comments, Ruby?
Um, just that there was a lot of movement going on. There was a new manager coming on board over Kenny for that business unit. And Don Tibbetts was in charge of that business unit until the guy was on-boarded. So you might want to try and reach out to him to find out what's going on.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Do we have anyone else for public comment? Yes, come on for. Yes, come on forward.
Since I'm here. Kathy Moko-Goldendale. It's more of a question. A week or two ago, we were discussing redistricting. So we have been redistricted, if that's correct, and we went from Congressional District Three to Congressional District Four. Our legislative stayed 14. Question is, are we already in Congressional District Four or are we still in Congressional District Three?
For the fall vote, you mean? Who are you gonna vote for?
No, no, I'm just saying, at what point in the year did this happen?
Right. Who are our people?
And who do we get to, I think we get to vote for Four.
We do.
So does that mean we're in Four now?
Is Jamie still our current person or is Newhouse now our current person?
Yeah, see, this is because Jamie just gave us money for, you know.
Right.
And, but somebody I know emailed Dan Newhouse and the response came back, you're not in our district.
Right. I, if I may, I'm speculating, but I think we are redistrict in the, for the election. The current, because the, the current terms run till December 31st. So for until December 31st, Jamie is ours and then on January 1st, it will be. But from a practical standpoint, you know, we have been, I mean, we're in the fourth congressional district and so there should be some handoff going on.
Okay.
I would, I would take it as you have twice as high of an opportunity to get what you want by going to both.
Double.
Okay.
Yeah, because you can tell Newhouse that we may not be in your district yet, but.
We're coming.
We're coming.
Yeah, right. Okay, that's good.
All right.
Yeah, I understand it the same way as Commissioner Soder. So we're still in Herrera Butler's district till the end of the year.
Okay. Does anyone online have anything else for public comment? Please raise your hand, unmute, star six. I am not seeing anyone. Okay, we can go back to discussion. Don, your question with regards to the airport and where we are with the water district. We have agreements from 2011 and an agreement in 2012 that set what needed to happen in order to transfer the well from the dish, from the airport board to the district and how that was all going to work. We are now 10 years later and that well and the associated water rights have not been transferred. And the biggest hangup we have on transferring those water rights is the FAA and their revenue diversion policy. And so what the City of the Dals just authorized as well as our board and discussed was is that we're, we hired Aspect Consulting to do an assessment and appraisal of the valuation of that well and the water right associated with it so that we can prove to the FAA that we are not gifting airport revenue potential or property to anyone else, that it has to be an equal exchange of value according to the FAA. And the FAA has the ability to say yes or no, because if you give away airport diversion of revenue property, the FAA can pretty much put a big black eye on you and you'll never get another dollar from them. And so we're dotting all our, dotting all our i's and we're crossing our t's. And then the Dallasport Water, or not the Dallasport, the city also authorized outside counsel that is a specialist in this revenue diversion policy to work on the, the issue so that we can get the water transferred to the Dallasport Water District.
That's supposed to work with the FAA.
Specialist who is a high-priced attorney who works with the FAA on this revenue diversion policies.
Who are you working with at Aspect?
Dan Haller. Yeah.
Clarification, sir?
Yes, absolutely.
Did you say this board authorized the, the legal counsel in the well specialist or this board discussed?
I.
Potential.
I believe that Dave McClure came in. We sat here, we talked about it and Dave said he has money in one of his funds and we said, yeah.
Or.
For Aspect.
Or for Aspect.
For Aspect.
For Aspect.
Not for the legal.
No, no, for the legal counsel, we need to take that through the prosecuting attorney. He has to authorize that. We cannot do that.
Right, right, right.
Okay, so F for Aspect.
Right.
Does that work?
Yes.
That's the way I got it. I just wasn't sure how you were.
I didn't say it wrong, did I?
I'm not sure. I got confused, so I wanted to make sure we weren't confused.
Yeah, no. And, and that, the debt city of the Dals is aware that we cannot authorize the payments for the legal counsel.
John Morrow, is it on that, Jake?
John Morrow.
Morrow, isn't he the?
Jonathan Kara? That is the, the attorney, that's the city attorney for the Dals, Jonathan Kara. I don't know Jonathan Morrow that I can remember. Does that, does that help clear things up?
Quite a lot. Quite a lot.
Yeah, no, there's, it's, it's Dallasport. There are a lot of rumors fly down there like the wind.
Well, there's lots of rumors about development and speculation about development down there flying like the wind too.
Oh, yeah.
And the availability of water for the, the district is important without the airport well, the water district won't have water for the potential developments. There's lots that I know for sure, like I'm friends and I know Scott Webster very well and I know that he intends to develop that Williams property, that support your property. I'm not helping him with that or anything, but I'm just aware of it. And then there's rumors about some other group that's connected with a Good River Dentist that is interested in a development project. The rumor, Jake, is that somehow or another things are getting held up when the district needs to be able to have conversations with some of these developers.
We have been working on this airport well and the development for many years. Less than, was it two years, three years ago, the county was going to use landfill gas dollars to work with the, the water district and it was about a $3 million project, was it thereabouts? Okay. Before the prices went ridiculous on moving forward and picking up all those Class B systems, going up towards the trailer park and around there and hooking up the well. And we thought we had everything done and at the last minute, they pulled out of that agreement.
I remember I was doing my best to convince him not to pull out of that.
Yeah, no, we, and that was back when you could put things in the ground a lot cheaper than you can now.
Yeah. What was the name of the, of the engineering firm that did all that?
That did the designs? That's the same person who does their water system improvement plan, right?
Is the, yeah, is in Lisle.
Yeah.
Oh.
John Grimm.
Yeah, John Grimm.
But before that, I think it was for the Kennedy Janks.
Oh, could be. Kennedy Janks did, did our wastewater system.
Did they do anything with the water district?
I didn't think so, but maybe.
This proposed meeting with the City of the Dals and us and the airport and whatnot was tentatively, hopefully going to be scheduled for the fifth and didn't happen. Is there another date or time or something that?
Not yet. Not yet. Right now, what the, what we've got is Dan Haller with Aspect is trying to flip this valuation really quickly because a lot of what we can do hinges on what he comes up with the valuation.
Okay. Mr. Chair, if I, if I may, I, I see a hand raised by Vern and I'm sure it is to ask if I was gonna answer his question.
Oh.
So I wanna, I wanna reserve the time to do that if I can. Yes, I did meet just to update the board. I, I met with Donna Mickley, the area manager, the U.S. Forest Service area manager and Mickey Fujikawa is their lands person, their expert. I did, and we sent over a couple of days early, the work that we had Kim do with the research on the access issues, potential at the Sandbar in Lisle. So what had been uncovered, which, you know, to the Blay person seems like the, there was an active private crossing that was still in force at the time that the Forest Service acquired the property in 1994. That was, seemed to be new information to them as far as, they took it very seriously. They are actually sending it to their, you know, legal counsel for a review and an opinion as to what, what that means as far as, because it appears there's nothing in the record that ever released the railroad from their responsibility. There was some changes with access roads, moving things around, but the actual crossing, that agreement follows the title all the way down through and there's nothing that ever changed that or modified it. So we're waiting, we're, I'm, we're waiting to hear back from that. And then also, you know, I raised the issue, we don't really know what that means as far as if there is a, a private crossing is acquired by a public entity, what does that mean as far as for the public's right to use that crossing? Do they have a right or not? So at least raises the question that the public may in fact have a legal way of, of crossing the tracks. So good, good research on the part of our folks here and it really came, you know, it was a team effort. The, the committee in Lisle did a bunch of digging and found some stuff too, but Kim Gleason is a god as far as I'm concerned. So if you're, I don't know if she's on the, on the call today. She's retired, but she came back in for a couple of special projects, but she is amazing. So, so mostly good news, I think.
In essence, if there's a legal crossing, then the railroad couldn't put up a fence like they did down there at the mouth of the White Salmon or?
Well, there would be a question of, is it, if your, if your basis is that I'm trespassing because I'm crossing the railroad tracks, if I actually have a right to cross, I'm not trespassing. And so can you actually put a barrier up or not? So those are all questions that are gonna have to be answered, but I do see it. One thing that was a little concerning is there, whatever the, I think it's Department of Justice, I'm not sure in, you know, it's like if, if it was a state agency, it would be the AG's office. So whoever it is at the federal level, their person did indicate that before they, they were gonna contact the railroad to get their perspective, which I know what the railroad's perspective is gonna be. And so it's, I, you know, I, I mean, I guess they should talk to them, but it really should have no bearing on is there a legal crossing or not? It doesn't matter what they say. So, but it was very productive, no, you know, no commitments at all. They were very, you know, non-committal because we don't know what it is. But there's, at least now there is a question because it's, it's definitely appears to be in the record. So that was, it was all good news. So that's my report, Vern.
Thanks, thanks, Dave. And Don McDermott and I are friends, so I'm gonna come to the Dallasport Community Council next time and spread a whole bunch more rumors, Don.
Do you guys remember what date that that was, that this board apparently gave verbal permission for McClure, for this water right consultant? Because I don't remember us ever having a vote on that. So I'm hoping to go back and look at the, the video to see if we did or if there was just discussion about the possibility.
I would say it was like three weeks ago, four weeks ago, three or four weeks ago.
We're out of time. I'll go look later, so.
Okay. All right, with that, we have stuff to do. Thank you all for being here for public comment. Thank you for coming in person. Thank you everyone for using your manners and being respectful. This is the way we like it to be done. This is the way we appreciate it being done. With that, I'm going to close public comment and move into a public meeting to consider the final approval for boundary line adjustment, BLA 2021-12. Good afternoon.
I got a green light this morning.
Don't be starting any rumors either.
All right, so boundary line adjustment, BLA 2021-12 is a proposal to adjust the common property line between parcels 02, 13, 21, 52, 00, 01, 3, and 4, 00. The administrative review of this boundary line adjustment, it's in the Dallasport vicinity, by the way. The administrative review of this boundary line adjustment has been completed. Signatures have been obtained by the road health and planning departments, including the treasurer's office. All conditions of preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it's in the public's interest to approve this boundary line adjustment, a motion will be needed to grant final approval of BLA 2021-12. Applicants, Ernest and Ehrland.
All right. Was there any thing anyone noticed from the record?
No.
All right. Any questions of staff? Any comments? Oh, well, if that's the case, I would entertain a motion.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to grant final approval to boundary line adjustment, BLA 2021-12. The applicants are Timothy and Robert, Ernest and Mike and Lisa Ehrland.
I would second the motion.
There's been a motion and a second to approve BLA 2021-12. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay. Where's signatures? All right. We can do this and talk at the same time. Next up, we have a public meeting to consider the planning commission's recommendation for approval of a proposal to rezone approximately 14.9 acres from open space, 20 acre minimum to rural center, 5,000 square feet minimum if on public water and sewer within, in the area approximately 660 feet of the west, west Wishram Heights vicinity that is north of State Route 14 within the urban exempt area of the Columbia River Gorge National Scenic Area. And we have Lori Anderson to give us the staff.
And again, this is rezone request 2022-01 and the applicant is actually Clickcat County as you of the commissioners directed the planning department to do this. Staff has provided you with the information for review considering the planning commission's recommendation for approval. You have their findings of facts and recommendation. You have the planning commission staff review. You have their draft meeting minutes and then you have a draft ordinance and zoning map. The board may summarily accept the planning commission's recommendation or you may hold your own public hearing if you wish to modify the recommendations. And that concludes my presentation, but I'm certainly here to answer any questions you may have.
Seatmates? Any questions on this?
Not really, more of an observation as far as, and I read the record and the, I appreciated there was some discussion at the planning commission meeting about this and especially council member Norma Benson asking questions. I thought those were excellent questions because there are, you know, there's standards around rezones and this, even though, you know, this was a county asked for, and I, you know, to me, the driving force was the change that occurred there was the, the National Scenic Act in 1986 that created the urban growth that was really disconnected from the county's line, map. And so this just trues up those two maps on the north side of the road, so.
Mr. Christopher?
Nothing further to add. He pretty much hit it in a nutshell.
The only thing I would add is, is, I mean, we looked at this only from the north side of the road, but from my perspective, if it's within, outside the urban exempt area or inside our area, I don't know why we didn't just make our lines fill the whole area.
I believe we moved the, the south side of the road.
Well, we actually reached out to the landowners, Nate Kaiser and Jim Seismore, and they had no interest in being in the rezone area. And then there was a small segment along the river and that property that's in the urban exempt area is actually in the water. So there seemed to be no, no real.
There was some, I guess, messy issues on the south side of the road. That doesn't mean, because I, because I think the board's wish was, yeah, that we would just move out to the, whatever the line was. But I think the, the staff recommendation that went to the planning commission was there's more work to be done on the south side because of those, there's some.
Because it, it doesn't follow the.
Where our lot lines are, right?
Right.
And the landowners were not interested.
And had no, no intentions of developing and their primary concern was if their assessments would raise. their primary concern was if their assessments would raise if the zoning was changed. And we did get clarification from the assessor's office that no, there'd be no change in the assessment unless they actually developed the property. Just simply rezoning wouldn't create that.
Yeah. My, my issue is, is that whether it's now or 50 years from now, we're probably still going to have this same discussion when the next generation or two generations comes through.
Yes.
So it would have been nice to do it all, but I think we, we discussed it and this makes a lot of sense. Absolutely. With that, I would entertain a motion. If there's no further discussion.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to accept the planning commission's recommendation to rezone approximately 14.9 acres from open space, 20 acre minimum to rural center. This is on the north, within an area of approximately 660 feet in west Wishram Heights. North of State Route 14, within the urban exempt area of the National Scenic Area.
I would second the motion.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the planning commission's recommendation on the proposal to rezone. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Thank you.
Yep. Would have been nice to do the south side of the road.
Wouldn't it make just?
If it doesn't change the tax that brackets and whatnot, you know, I just.
The only thing I can think that it doesn't change the tax bracket, but it would definitely change valuations or potential valuations when it comes to like probate or something like that.
Maybe. Or legal cattle grazing rights or something. I don't know.
I don't know when people are arguing over things like that. So.
All right. We are ahead of schedule. Let's get these signed real quick and then we'll get back to it. Okay. It's fine. Who? This has Dave Sodder as chairman. You're welcome. I mean, he can be the chairman. I don't mind him one bit.
Just used to him being the chairman.
All right. Why don't we pause the?
Take a break?
Pause and take, we'll take a break. I'm gonna get some water. All right. Next, we are going to move into the Public Health Department update. Director Quinn.
Are you checking your steps?
I wasn't. I was seeing how many minutes I had to do this in. Before hell starts at two. Got to stay on time.
Yeah.
All right. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Uh, so we have our clinical update. I have all the, I put all the graphs in your packet. So I'll just roll through the, just kind of explanation of what I've got in there. On the clinical services, just as a note, because I'm sure someone noticed, it says year to date, communicable disease investigations are zero. We only started tracking that in March. They're going to get me the retroactive data. So next month, that number will actually be reflective of the entire year to date, not just the month of March. Just rolling through some other project updates, we're getting a really good response with the naloxone, the Narcan that we're giving out. Currently, we're supporting the White Salmon Valley School District, helping with them with training for staff so that they have the ability to have that, the naloxone on campus and have staff that are trained to administer it. Our family planning clients are also being screened and asked if that's something that they need to have in their home. And we're getting some decent distribution that way. And we're continuing to work with the fire departments to get that out to them as well when that's appropriate and get the training so their staff know how to use that. Perinatal mental health program, that continues to do really well. They're advertising on Facebook. So they're, they anticipate they're going to get a lot more business that way. We did have some pretty significant challenges supporting a resident that was identified needing mental health care. Getting that individual to a higher level of care and then furthermore, actually getting the services paid for. We had to be pretty creative to ensure that they had continuity of care and to make sure they were taken care of. But it again is just a highlight of what I think we've all had discussions around our communities that mental health care is an issue. Accessing mental care is in, healthcare is an issue, and then payment is an even bigger barrier for a lot of people. So that's something that we're in conversations with a lot of different entities on how we can improve that in our area. Not with any resolutions at this point, just lots of conversations. So. Access to baby and child dentistry program that we run through the state. We've identified some new dentists locally that we think are interested in helping support so that we'll offer more pediatric Medicaid availability for dental clients who are maybe on Apple Health. It's been years since we've had a new dentist on board. So we're really excited that now we won't have to have, ask people to go, I think to Hood River was maybe the closest person that they could get into. And then I know a lot of people went into either Vancouver or Yakima. So I think the dentists that they spoke with were on this end of the county. So that, that will be a really, a really big win for that program. WIC is running strong. They're getting ready to support the farmer's market. So the farmer's market checks come. Those are vouchers for use at the local farmer's market so that they can take those and you purchase fresh fruits and vegetables for their families. So that usually starts, kicks off here in June. The nursing staff are supporting the back to school events in Goldendale. They're going to provide some pediatric wellness information. Potentially they may take vaccines with them. It'll depend on just some handling requirements. They're going to look into that. One of the bigger projects they've worked on recently was with the children with special healthcare needs. They toured the neurodevelopmental centers in Clark County. There's also developmental centers in Yakima and Benton Franklin. They offer assistance with diagnosis for all sorts of developmental delays, disabilities or concerns. They help with referrals for physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy, anger management. And they will provide referrals for care back to the local area. So if it's difficult for people to get to where their centers are, they will provide local referrals for potentially physical therapy or occupational therapy. And in some instances, they will actually provide telehealth for these clients. So I feel like with a lot of, with, one of the positive things to come out of COVID was the availability of a lot of these services to be offered in a telehealth format. We're also in that program working with WAGAP to help with some care coordination and with the pathways program to ensure that these families have in-home services and potentially evaluations that will help with their getting the services that connect them with the services that they need. Washington State has been awarded Title $10 so that we will support our family planning program. We're waiting for the contract amendments to come out so that we know what that will look like in our department. We currently do get state funding for our family planning program. The Title 10 will be federal, so that will look a little different for us. I think it's been five years since we've had Title 10 funding. It's been a while. So that will, that will definitely change the way we offer services. Through this programming, we're also offering a nurse at the White Salmon Valley School District, one hour per week for the rest of the school year is kind of a pilot project. We have a grant pending that would fund that on a regular basis in the fall. But we're just going to do a trial run for the end of the school year to just kind of see what that looks like. The communicable disease programs, they've had a significant increase in communicable diseases. We had 14 different cases in March. Those include STDs, chlamydia, gonorrhea, syphilis, and some hepatitis. So one of the things that we've noticed post-COVID is that there was a little bit of disconnect about how to report those so that we're ensuring that they have the support and treatment that they need. We do do all the investigations for those. So the nurses have worked kind of a system with them to streamline the disease process or the disease reporting to make sure that people aren't falling through the gaps on that one, through the cracks. Outreach, they're still doing vaccine clinics. We'll talk specifically about COVID for the Board of Health, so I'll save that for later. But they are, they've been out, since I spoke with you last, they've been out in Alderdale. They're going to be out in Trail Lake, I think, next week. They'll see, they've been out to our Matt Adams Orchards and they've been engaging with Dicky Farms as well. So supporting the H2A and agricultural workers as they transition through our area for their seasonal work. We are still offering home visits when requested or invited for vaccines, and I think they just set one up yesterday. So people are still calling and asking us to support that. And when we're invited, we, we absolutely do that. So.
So that's. The majority of your vaccines that you're given on, when you're heading out there to Matt Adams Orchards, are they their first vaccine or are they usually boosters?
It's a mix. It depends. For the individuals that came back for maybe a second season, it will be a booster for the individuals that are coming up for the first time. It could potentially be a first. Some folks have had different vaccines in their previous home. Any questions about clinical services? Nothing? Environmental health, so you know, they're onsite sewage permits are definitely down a little bit. Pretty similar to 2020, but a little bit lower than 2021. They thought partly it was because of the weather in the last month. It just aren't, the installers aren't able to get out and do what they need to do. But also hearing just some information, just having difficulty getting supplies to finish installation. So that's been a challenge for our installers. Drinking water, the, in the water lab, they have no, it's just business as usual for those folks. For food safety, Leanne's getting pretty close to being able to run solo inspections. So when summer comes, she'll do all the temporary events. So we're pretty excited that she's just about there. Also working with Carmen at the jail to make sure the, or to work to get the the inmates food worker cards. So it's a program we're working with her on. So they're, I think they're both pretty excited about that project. David is still doing the public health emergency preparedness work. So he's still going to the weekly meetings with the local emergency response coordinators from Yakima, Benton Franklin and Walla Walla. Usually goes to bi-weekly meetings for region eight. Typically updates about kind of where COVID's going, what other things are going on. Arranging training for the new hires. And they have resources to order at-home tests. So we're able to get those through them as well as the state. He has started working with the Smoke and Wildfire Advisory Board. So they'll, they provide us with information and resources once, you know, we have our first wildfire. They have been getting calls about ticks. They did have one dog bite in April. And then as far as administrative for environmental health, the Goldendale office is 100, 100% complete on scanning for their EH files. So they're 100% digital downstairs. White Salmon has started, but they're not, there, there are ways out. They're going to be a little bit further out. So. They negotiated ice cream, but yeah.
Yeah, gold stars aren't that tasty.
I'm actually behind. I think I owed them that a while back. So I'm.
Oh, well, there's, there's 26 people that just heard you.
No, that's fine. I'll take that one. They did complete a process flow for SmartGov. So it was identified that there were some different processes in the different offices. So we have those all streamlined. And they're looking at the possibility of potentially working with some online submittals through the SmartGov portal as well, which will help just maintain the digital footprint that we have and less, and less paper. So. Any questions on environmental health?
No, I just, I was a little concerned on those onsite sewage permits dropping off so much, but it's been a.
They felt like it was mostly weather, but that there was definitely a little bit of supply chain issues as well and anticipate that those will. They're projecting that those will bump back up in the next month.
I think we are starting to see some impacts. Well, or just showing slow, yeah, crazy prices.
Well, yeah. I wasn't a baby of the, the late high inflation rates, you know, the interest rates above 10%. I never saw that. So we'll see what happens here shortly.
Yeah, nothing good.
And then just administratively, we'd spoken last time I had a vehicle I was concerned might need replacement. It actually was under an extended warranty that we were unaware of. So that should be, if we're very lucky.
That should be noted in the file on the fleet management software.
Very lucky, which brings me to my next point, which is we are participating in the fleet management software test. We had it installed on one of our vehicles yesterday. So we're definitely looking at what that, what information that gives. They, IT did tell me I was a very safe driver until they realized they were looking at the wrong car. So, but it does, I mean, it, it's got some pretty interesting information.
That was the one that was just parked.
Oh, that's you. Yeah. We'll take everything back that we said earlier.
That's pretty much what he said, actually. Yeah. So there, there's some functionality.
That's the one that the software flagged.
You can actually excuse speeding on it.
Oh.
There's a little tab that says excuse.
Excuse.
We don't know what that means, but it says that. So I think Jeff clicked it. He said, nothing happened. It still had the.
It probably reports to the supervisor if they see speeding or you're like, yeah, I don't care. I don't care.
Well, that's kind of what I wanted to know is if like I got a text message that said, maybe I had somebody that was.
Road raging?
Yeah.
That's probably what it is.
Functionality. I needed to know how it worked.
Just needed to know what it was.
Is this a shared vehicle?
It, not really, no. It's one of the environmental health vehicles. So.
A one that puts on the most amount of miles?
We picked a middle-aged vehicle for our fleet and one with a higher mileage. So it wasn't the most extreme on either end. We just wanted a middle of the road one to kind of get the best kind of version of what we would get want. So.
Okay.
Anyway, the software is compelling. I think there's a lot of functionality there that could be beneficial. As far as all the bells and whistles, I don't know if that's something, if it was a department decision, then I would be really excited about all of it, but there's definitely value in some of it. As far as staffing goes, we are interviewing for a nurse position, I believe, today. That's for the Goldendale office. If that individual is interested in our staff, feel like they're a good fit, that will fill our last nurse position and will be fully staffed on nurses. We are still advertising for our fiscal division manager. I think I'm going to work with, not I think, I am working with Rob. We're going to look at rewording the position because we feel like the way I wrote it wasn't conducive to attracting the right individuals for the position. So I'm going to make it a little bit more clear what we're looking for, what I'm looking for.
More specific or more broad?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think, yes, to both, actually. I think there are some things that need to be more specific and some things that needed to be a little bit more broad. Just to kind of understand the position. So that can go in a couple of points, both ways. And then I kind of already covered the digitization. Clinical records are over, they've done over 1,800 as of yesterday afternoon. I am fairly certain the Goldendale office will have the clinical records completed by probably the end of June. So then we'll focus on getting the White Salmon office completed. 90% of our previous financial records requiring retention are scanned in. And then we already talked about the environmental health ones. So.
Do you have a, is there a state policy of records retention of paper copy for medical and how long is the years for that or does it vary based on?
It varies. Yeah. So we, we do follow, the workflow does follow all of the records retention rules and laws that the state puts out for public health. So otherwise, pending your questions, I think the rest of this stuff will update during the Board of.
Any questions? None here. All right. With that, I'd entertain a motion to recess so that we can begin the Board of Health meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we make a recess to this meeting and continue after the Board of Health meeting and recess for the purpose of having a Board of Health meeting.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion and a second to recess at 12:03 PM so that the board can join the Board of Health meeting.
2:03 PM.
2:03 PM. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We are recessed. Chairman.
All right. I will call the meeting, I will call the order, the Clickatuck County Board of Health. Let the record show, do you guys want to come up to?
Yeah, Board of Health people.
You have Board of Health people in person, so we have to celebrate that. We can get another chair and that way everybody can see you and hear you all.
Thank you for coming, Don.
Let the record show that all Board of Health members are present. So I would be looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the agenda for the Board of Health meeting.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Was there a discussion?
Was there a discussion? Sorry. Was that a discussion? Did you want to add something? Okay. Actually, I'm going to rescind that vote. You didn't actually vote.
Unilaterally.
Yes, unilaterally.
Before we started, could we ensure the health officer is on? Please. I don't believe she is yet. I haven't seen her.
Do you want us to delay going until she's here or? Is that a requirement of the meeting, that the health officer be present?
But I'm going to excuse myself for you. I'll do that.
Okay.
Do send a reminder.
I think we can do some housekeeping in the interim. So back to the agenda. All those in favor say aye again.
Aye. Aye, again.
None opposed. Motion passes. Minutes, everybody got a chance. Those went out. Very well done. The only comment I had is I don't know, because that was three months ago. But the, and it's very possible I did, but typically as the chair, I would not be the one to make the motion to adjourn the meeting. And that's what the minutes reflect. I might have called on someone to make the meeting minutes. So maybe if we can just check on that and verify.
Well, it's the same thing. There's a motion Anderson Sodder second.
Yeah, that seems unlikely.
For the agenda.
Unless we didn't, when did we do the, when did we do the change of position?
That was after, yeah.
After the end of it?
Oh.
I mean, we, I mean, I guess you'd say, look at the minutes and figure out when we did the appointment of officers.
Yeah, could have been there.
Well, until we appointed the officers, you were still the chair.
Then I was still the chair. So it's unlikely. But again, that is, though, I'm not necessarily suggesting that the minutes are inaccurate. I'm just, I'm just noting that, that let's check that. It's, it's quite possible that procedurally I was, I was a miss.
So are you recommending that we don't?
No, I think we just adopt them. I would, my suggestion would be pending just clarification to be sure as far as that, I mean, the content was.
Or small corrections.
Yes. Yeah, those couple of small corrections. If you're comfortable or if not, we can, we can wait. If, if people are not comfortable with that, just to verify the, that.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes pending the verification on the motions and seconds and adjournment of Commissioner Sodder.
A second, yeah.
Okay. A motion and a second. Any, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. That brings us to. That's possible. We can, we can do that.
So are we ready to adjourn now that she's back?
Yeah. See how quickly we were able to get everything done? Yeah.
I like it.
And Dr. Person's standup comedy routine was excellent. I'm sorry you missed it. No, actually we're, we're ready to move on now. So that brings us, we did adopt the agenda in the minutes. That brings us to the COVID-19 discussion, clinical update, Dr. Person, if, if you are ready.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So thank you again for the opportunity to provide the board with a clinical update on COVID. Our situation in Clickatet County mirrors what's going on in the state and in most places after the significant surge of Omicron. Numbers have dropped significantly more recently, though, in the state and in other parts of the US and other parts of the world. We are seeing some increases in cases. What is becoming more challenging now is that trying to determine the level of disease activity is more challenging because we are seeing fewer and fewer people who are getting tested through reportable testing venues, so laboratories or clinics. We know a number of people may choose to self-test through at-home tests or over the counter tests, and those are not required to be reported to public health. Although there are options for individuals to report those to the state or local public health if they're in need of services, say, to help them isolate or quarantine. So one of the challenges at the state level and somewhat locally has been trying to find other ways to determine what is disease activity. We continue to follow hospitalizations and we know that across the state, those have stayed relatively stable, which is a good sign. There are some counties in the state that monitor SARS-CoV-2 viral activity in wastewater. So wastewater samples, they can do viral detection using some of the same ways that they do viral detection on any lab samples. Clickatet County is not a county that, that does this at present, but there are a few scattered around the state. And with that information, again, we do know that an increase in COVID-19 disease activity is occurring, but fortunately it is not being reflected in a strain on our healthcare services at present. But it's helpful to have other ways to monitor this so that if we do see signs that our healthcare system is being burdened again, we can look at other measures that can take. The other reason that it's important to find ways to be able to give individuals information about COVID-19 disease activity is there may be individuals who are at higher risk because of their underlying disease conditions or they may live with people at higher risk. So for them to be able to make individual choices about, do I need to wear a mask if I go somewhere? Do I need to avoid larger gatherings? It's important for them to have those tools. And that's why we try to maintain adequate surveillance in a meaningful way. The other focus is on the things we can do for prevention or treatment. So there are therapeutics for COVID-19. There are ones to potentially prevent it if you've been exposed. And there are treatments if you've been diagnosed with Omicron, a number of the monoclonal antibody therapies that have been used are no longer being used because of the, they are not as effective against the Omicron. Fortunately, the oral therapy, the brand name is the Paxlovid is still beneficial. There's also the heavy shield, which is a pre-exposure prophylaxis for individuals with immunocompromising conditions. That's available. And then one of the monoclonal antibodies is still available for use. And all of those are available at hospitals or some facilities in Clickatet County. So part of our continuing messaging is making sure that people are aware of what's available so that they can access that if needed. Vaccines still available. And we try to keep everyone updated on the recommendations around boosters. So again, those who are at risk or those who want to maximize their level of protection can have access to those resources. And that's, you know, where we are, you know, again, COVID is moving from something where we're, you know, sort of blanket treating everyone the same way around it. It's becoming more individuals weighing their potential risks and also the need to protect those that are most vulnerable. But again, we want to make sure people have the appropriate tools. There's been some recent data that is now coming out as we've been looking at the mortality data and the impacts of COVID. And so for both 2020 and 2021, COVID-19 was the third leading cause of death in the United States. In 2020, COVID-19 led to increase, I'm sorry, I should say a decrease in life expectancy of 1.5 years. And that may not seem significant, but we'd actually have to go back to World War II to the last time that we saw a decrease in life expectancy. And even at that point, the decrease was only 0.3 years. So again, COVID's had a significant impact for the firefighters nationwide in 2020. COVID was the leading cause of job-related deaths. And for the law enforcement, you know, officer down Memorial Page for both 2020 and 2021, 60 to 65% of the deaths reported by law enforcement as job-related deaths were due to COVID. So it definitely had a significant impact on this country. And so it's important for people to, to recognize that again, even as we move to gladly move to a time where we are allowing individuals to make decisions about the, the risks they do or don't want to take. So that's kind of where we are with COVID. I did just want to mention a couple other communicable diseases that we are keeping an eye on along with COVID. Neither of them have been an issue in Clickatet or in Washington State. But they have been reported nationally. So we, there's been a case of bird flu, avian influenza in an individual in Colorado. And that was associated with, there was a outbreak in the Midwest in their, some of their poultry farms. And so they had to do quite a bit of culling. So a number of people from around the country actually went there to help with that. So an individual in Colorado who was part of that work was diagnosed with avian influenza. We're keeping an eye on that because the bird flu, the avian influenza is one of those highly pathogenic viruses, meaning it has the great potential to jump from bird to human. And so does have the potential to create more, cause more disease because again, humans don't do as well protecting themselves against animal borne viruses. There has also been an outbreak of hepatitis. That's been more associated with children and there have been some fatalities with that. It does look like it is related to an adenovirus. So not to one of the hepatitis viruses, but to an adenovirus. Again, that is not something we've seen yet in Clickatet County, but alerts have gone out to providers from the State Department of Health on both the avian influenza and the unusual hepatitis, just so that our providers will be aware. And that is it for my clinical update. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Dr. Person. Any questions, comments for, for the good doctor? Okay. Thank you. We will move on to the COVID-19 situation update. So the local situation. Aaron.
So I included the COVID update in the commissioner update packet, but I'm going to just go over that, just kind of information now. So since I put this in last Thursday, we've had an additional 23 cases, I think. So 22, 300, 3,674. We did have a pretty big, big bump in cases over the last couple of weeks. We were at 17 active cases right now. We've been seeing really low case rates. So from the week of April 15th to the week of April 23rd, we had an increase in 62% of our cases or a 62% increase in cases. Which is just kind of something we're keeping an eye on. We're not seeing people in the hospitalization or within, we don't have anyone hospitalized right now that, that we're aware of. We haven't had any deaths for a couple of months. So just continuing to kind of keep an eye on what's going on and making sure that we're answering questions and phone calls that we get, making sure that people are able to do what they need to do. Connect them with resources if they're staying home and quarantining. So we're still giving immunizations. We definitely dropped off in March, but I would imagine our April numbers are going to bump back up just based on the clinics I've helped with in the last couple of weeks. So over 31,000 vaccines have been administered countywide. So that's all of the healthcare partners and the health department. We've done 9,000 just in the health department. So we're at 45.2% of our population is vaccinated and we've given over 5,000 boosters to date. So the vaccine business is still keeping us very busy. They did a clinic yesterday downstairs and they were busy all day. So we're just definitely still getting so.
Are you still doing a lot of new, new shots, first time shot takers? Or are these mainly boosters?
They've been trending about 0.1% per week. And I think we're trending about 0.1% every two to three at this point. So.
So for the most part, we're doing boosters.
Yeah. Anyway, so that's just. I do not know. I feel like we're higher than Skamania, but that might be just in shade.
I will say another gold star looking at the website that white salmon has more cases than Goldendale. So another gold star.
It's true. Today.
Careful. Yeah. Take what you can get. That's right.
Yeah. I was gonna say, don't look at the yearly numbers.
Yeah. It's sort of like the weather. You could look at an individual day or the whole spectrum. That's right. A sunny day is still a sunny day. Are there still, are there still, you know, testing supplies readily available for folks?
We still have tests in the office. We're still giving them out. So if people call and they need a test kit, if they haven't gotten them at home, they're still able to come get them through us.
Okay.
So if people are not going to the hospital and we have, you know, this many cases, it seemed like our numbers dropped off significantly. So it's easy to do a home test and you don't like the stigma, so you don't turn it in. So then where are we seeing all these positives from?
People are still accessing healthcare for testing. So, so from here on out, we're just going to look at trends, understanding that the numbers are not accurate, given the fact that most people are doing them in the home and most people are not going to self-report. So.
So it's primarily people who are, who need a surgery or something that they still require you to do?
Not necessarily. I think people still just don't feel good. And sometimes the symptoms don't match. They'll still go into a provider and then just get tested there. Some people still don't have access to home tests. They've used all their home tests. Some people feel better about the testing in a provider office versus something you got in the mail.
Aaron, are people self-reporting?
Yep.
And how does that work?
We tell them that we really appreciate that they shared that information with us, but they were not tracking it at this time.
Okay. And so then.
But on the packaging, they can, there's a QR code and they can report it to the state. Like they'll take that information for tracking, but locally we're not tracking.
Okay. So you don't do anything with that information?
But you do recommend that they call the state if they're interested.
Yes. Yeah. If they want to be part of the metrics.
Do you think we will? I know this is probably a hard question unless you definitely know the answer. Do you, do you have any thoughts that we will eventually know the data that we haven't been able to know for the last couple of years as far as age of deaths and percentage of comorbidities on those deaths? And has there been any talk in any of the bigger circles that they're eventually going to release some of the data that we haven't been able to get so far?
I think you'll get more aggregate data as far as comorbidities. That's not ever local data that I'll have for you.
Unless they're willing to release it at the state level and so far they haven't been able to.
So it's going to come from, so when you look at deaths, like they'll do, they'll look at death certificates and they'll look at those comorbidities and then they'll do research on that. But it will be very desegregated data. So it won't ever say like Clickatet County, we had three people that also had, I don't know, whatever.
Diabetes or something. So if, if the, the information might be out there, we're going to have to dig for it if we wanted it. This is essentially the answer. So, okay. Good enough.
Okay. Any other questions for Aaron on this topic? And I will again, express my gratitude that we have other topics to talk about besides Board of Health for two years was just the COVID-19 show. So it's nice.
We were waiting for Board of Health to be boring again.
Yeah. We're almost there. And our ratings show that. So.
Ratings show that.
Yeah, it does. So, okay. Well, I'm going to move us on then to the food code. Aaron?
Yes. So there's a resolution in your packet for the adoption of the food code. The last major food revision, food code revision was in 2013. It has been the practice of this health department that we adopt the WAC as written without other changes. So So this resolution just says that we are adopting food code as written in the WAC. State had it effective March first. We're making it effective May first.
Can you give those of us that maybe are not super familiar with what the food code actually is pertaining to specifically?
No, but David Kavanaugh, I see.
Oh, he's on there. All right, good. I have a pretty good idea, but I just want to be sure.
Right here.
Yeah.
I put the summary of changes, but really, I mean, that's David's, that's his house to speak to.
Good afternoon, everyone. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so this WAC is just governing the retail side of food safety. It doesn't govern anything wholesale or state-to-state markets. So every, well, technically every five years, the state is supposed to review existing rules and then either make changes and adopt new rules or status quo and go along with it. The last one was adopted in 2013. This new one, like, like Erin said, will be, has already been adopted. There's quite a few changes. I would say the top ten changes right now. The biggest one that will have impact on our retail food licenses is the certified food protection manager requirement. It's basically, in a nutshell, going to require managers of these establishments to get additional schooling or additional certification to operate their establishment. There is a grace period of one year to get this additional training. And then there's a six-month, kind of, I don't know how to say this, kind of like a six-month warning thing. Like after the one year, you can, you know, if you don't have it again, you get another six months to get it. So it's kind of, they're giving them plenty of time to to get those changes and get that certification. The other big one, which I'm sure you may be aware of, is the dogs in outdoor and some indoor areas. So if you haven't already seen that, there'll be some, there are some allowances for pet dogs and food establishments now. There's a refilling, refilling reusable consumer-owned containers. There's a date marking. There's some barehand contact rules. There's some requirements for written plans regarding vomiting and diarrhea events. So prior to this rule, there was no actual requirement for establishments to have a written plan to clean those events up or to ensure proper procedures were done to prevent anything and clean those things up. So there's a lot, quite a few changes in there, but we could probably talk for hours on all the changes. So this rule specifically addresses your retail food establishments in the county.
There's some interesting ones on when you can wear jewelry, you don't have to wash fruit twice. If it's, I mean, it's like, God, I feel sorry for the people that have to know all this and live under all these waxes every single day.
Yeah, and there was one I had noticed, the Asian rice. It's like what the Asian rice noodles are different than non-Asian rice. But, okay. I had looked through it. I just thought, I, I don't like us, I never like to adopt by reference something that we haven't even had a brief or some discussion on. So I was not showing my ignorance necessarily. It was more procedural. Okay, thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh. That was.
For that riveting testimony.
For that riveting testimony.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, David.
Yes.
It was helpful.
Okay, any questions on the food code?
Have you heard much back from establishments on these changes?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
David, have you heard much back from establishments on these changes and how they feel about them?
Only a few things here and there. I think most of our establishments, one or may not be aware of the new food code that's coming out. We did do some outreach with our, what's that called? It's not Survey Monkey, but the other one we use, MailChimp. So there is some communication about the new rules coming out, but we haven't heard a whole lot from operators themselves. There have been a few that expressed their concern with the additional certified food protection manager requirement. What we're doing internally is we've already created a complexity schedule based on what they serve or make in their restaurant. And then we will be applying that to what we call complexity level threes, and it won't be applied to ones or twos. So if your operation doesn't really need it, we're not going to require it. So there is some, but not a whole lot of communication coming from the operator side.
So what's the difference between a one, two, and a three, if I may ask?
Well, ones are basically prepackaged foods or cold-holding prepackaged foods. Twos can be cooked to, cooked from raw for service. And then threes pertain anything that might do cook, cooling, reheat to serve or more advanced practices like what they call roping, reduced oxygen packaging, a couple other services that might require variances. So if you wanted to cook food undercooked, you would be, need to be a level three. If you're doing something like large amounts of food and then cooling that down and then reheating for service, you would be a level three. And that's kind of where we draw the line internally on one, twos, and threes.
Okay. Learned something new.
David, can you hear me? This is Sue.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there any reason that we wouldn't, that you would recommend we not pass this motion? Is there, do you want to share any hesitation on your part with us?
No, I think the grace period, the one, one-year grace period should be enough time for operators to get on board with the new rule. I think the, some of these rules make a lot of sense, like refilling reusable consumer-owned containers. There used to not be any rule about bringing your own container to a coffee stand and allowing them to refill it. I think this is a reasonable rule. And now you can do it without getting in trouble. Not something that we would be hugely concerned of as an inspector, but the old rule didn't allow operators to do that. Also, depending on your opinion of dogs in restaurants, some of these places have outdoor seating where the dog will never enter the establishment. And a lot of people bring their dogs to wineries or to restaurants and like that outdoor atmosphere. So I think now that there's an exact rule on what is allowed and what not is allowed, then it allows some flexibility for some of those awkward situations where people bring their dog and the manager of the restaurant or the manager of the facility has to deal with that in the past. Now it's allowed outdoor, so there's some nice things about that. There's a section on donated foods to clarify sources on where you could get your food from and reduce some limitations on some of that rescue food going places. So I think there's a lot of good that comes with that rule and a lot of things that make sense. So I don't see any reason not to adopt this rule. Because I, this is also one of the rules that actually had a really good, what they call, food safety advisory committee from the industry all across Washington. So there's a lot of input and opinions from not just regulators, but business as well. So I think this is a, this is a pretty good rule.
Great, thank you. And, you know, and I also like that, you know, the messaging that will come from you will be repackaged. You know, reading documents like this are tough for anybody and to try to make that more accessible to our businesses in the county, that sounds great. So thanks for the work you're doing with that.
Yeah, we're working on trying to be more communicative too. We've set up MailChimp so that operators can, if they choose to, sign up to get newsletters. And hopefully we'll be back to those seasonal newsletters that'll give them heads up on things we're hearing around the state. Or they can also sign up for recalls and a couple other stuff too.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Kavanaugh or Ms. Quinn?
No question for Mr. Kavanaugh. I do say that after reading all of this, I will never go into the food business.
Yes.
Talked about overburdened some regulation, at least now I know where you can wash a dog bowl.
In the food establishment, yeah, it tells you.
Because you weren't allowed to wash the dog bowl before and, you know, and it's just, I, there's, thank God this board is not into overburdened some regulations.
Okay, if there's nothing further, I would look for a motion for adoption, I'm assuming.
I still move.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second in the matter of adopting WAC two forty-six dash two fifteen, the Washington State Food Code, and incorporating it into Clickitad County Code, Chapter eight point zero eight. Any discussion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Got one more.
Ms. Pennington, your vote?
Aye, sorry.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, I was confused. I was signing the wrong copy.
Oh, okay, motion passes. Okay, we move on now to immunization fee schedule adjustment. Ms. Quinn?
Yes, so we administer tetanus to three and a cellular pertussis vaccine. The cost has not been adjusted for some time. I think we were still charging thirty dollars for that. It is four hundred and fifty-seven dollars per box of ten. So we're asking to readjust the cost so that it will, it will cover the cost of the vaccine. We additionally, there is an admin fee for any of our vaccines. That's twenty-three dollars. So the final cost is sixty-eight dollars. But needing the resolution to reflect that the cost for that, the vaccine itself is forty-five dollars.
Oh. Okay, I'm seeing in the resolution that we have though, that we're adjusting the fee to be forty-five dollars.
Yes. All immunizations have an administrative fee of twenty-three dollars, which is.
Oh, that's not, so that's a different.
That's a different resolution.
Beyond the, okay.
So the, the point is the price is sixty-eight dollars. I don't want to get that confused. But I need the resolution that says the actual cost of the vial of vaccine is forty-five dollars.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Okay, discussion. If not, I would entertain a motion. Yeah. Yeah, it just cost you fifty extra dollars.
The cattle vials are way cheaper.
It technically only a ten-dollar cost. From yesterday.
Well, I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we accept the recommendation to, for the increase in the TDEP immunization shot.
Okay.
Second to motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second revising the fee schedule. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, get a scroll back up. Okay, next. Adoption of meeting schedule. Ms. Quinn?
Yeah, so this is just this meeting schedule for 2022. It's a quarterly meeting schedule. I like to just have that posted. It's cheaper for us to advertise as a group, but remembering that we can have a Board of Health meeting anytime, anyone, commissioners, Board of Health members, director, health officer requests, so.
Okay. And we've already adopted this schedule, haven't we? We have not? Okay, so we will.
Formally adopted.
Okay, we just discussed it.
Did we used to do it in the morning? Last year?
I don't know, we had them so much, we did them all kinds of times.
Yes.
Is there a preference? I mean, we're here all day. Is there a preference for you guys, whether it's mornings or afternoons?
You know, this, yeah, and this won't affect me personally, but for a while, we were meeting on the other side of the county.
Yeah.
Every other meeting. And that, that is a convenience for, obviously, for people who live.
I was actually surprised to see you both here today and not on Zoom. So I don't mind seeing you on Zoom. I understand it's a long drive in here. So if you want to be on Zoom, I'm okay with it.
Well, and, and it's a good, it's a great option. I think because it's actually my last Board of Health meeting for a while. And, and also Paul has never been to one in the chambers. And so anyway, we thought it would be a good time to come.
And it's spring.
And it's spring.
It's a lovely drive.
Yeah, it is.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt the meeting schedule for the Board of Health for 2022.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the meeting schedule as presented. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay. Board of Health update.
Yes, so just to follow up with the conversation that we had last time, the first of July, we do have to change the makeup of the Board of Health. So I included in your packet, we had talked about the position description last time. I've updated that and I'm looking for feedback. We updated how to fill a Board of Health vacancy, which direct, reflects the direction of the RCW on how to advertise and when and where you will advertise, or I'm sorry, with the WAC. And so I've included all that verbiage in there as well, and so just feedback on that. We did talk about utilizing the same Board of County Commissioners application for applications, so that information is all in there. Sue and Paul and I sat down and went over just a list. One of the prescriptions of the RCW is that we do have to ask standard questions. And so did put some interview questions together for your review. And then lastly, there is a resolution addressing the makeup of the Board of Health that reflects the changes that are prescribed by the RCW.
Okay, thank you. Discussion?
Yeah, so the, the resolution, just to inform you guys, the one that's in our packet doesn't list that veterans piece on number three. The three qualifications, health officer or health person, and then community engagement, whatever. And then that bottom section. So it didn't, and I reached out to Erin and she included the, the active, reserved, and retired in the option three as per the RCW and sent me a fresh copy of that, and I appreciate that. I have no problems with that, but figured we'd be discussing the position descriptions and questions with that. So I guess I'll continue on with discussion on that one. I guess where I have concerns is, is not so much me understanding it. It's if we post this on the website for people who may be interested. Again, when you go down and list who qualifies and why under the RCW, and you get to essentially item three or C in your issue here. It's, individuals should represent community organizations or groups as defined by the RCW. If this is going to be posted on a website, I would prefer it actually lists the, the meat and potatoes. So people can look at it and go, that's me, or that's me, or that's me, or I'm not there. Versus having to go do a Google search on what RCW is what, to see if they qualify.
To, to your point, which I agree on. You all got a PDF version in the doc I have. It's all linked, so you just have to click it, but yes. So if it was, if I posted my version on the website, they're all linked. So it just goes straight to all of those definitions, but absolutely, I can make those specific ones upfront.
I, I just want it as easy and as transparent to the, the average Joe citizen as possible. If that means a few more words, I would prefer it that way.
That's fine. Anything that's underlined is a link. That's fine. Anything that's underlined is a link to the, when you don't have the PDF, it goes straight to that.
Other than that, on your position description, I didn't have any issues. The filling a Board of Health vacancy, I did have a few things that I wanted to bring up for board consideration. It says the Quikattack County Board, that Board of Health is accepting applications for citizen members. Since the position is appointed by the Board of Commissioners and not the Board of Health, my recommendation would be to change that to the Board of Commissioners. The second thing I'll note is all applications shall be interviewed by, in a panel format by the Board of Health. And I would revise that back to the Board of Commissioners, as we are the only ones elected by the public.
I, can I on that one, can we review the RCW before we make that?
Well, these are my only recommendations to you to look into.
Okay, because I, I, I could be wrong and I'll let you know who I am, but I think it actually says that they have to be interviewed by the Board of Health to be recommended for the commissioners for appointments.
Okay.
But I could be wrong, but I got it.
If that's the case, make a note. Tell me that's what it says. I'll believe you.
Okay.
And then where did I have? Oh, and the other one was during your, in your questionnaire. Again, it goes back to the same issue I had before. Please describe your qualifications with the positions in respect to the categories identified in the RCW. If somebody's filling out an app, I'd kind of like them to see what category they fit in just by reading the definitions versus having to click a link. I mean, it's just.
Too, too easy.
Trying to make it easy for them and not strenuous.
That might take up a lot of space.
Well, it's only this big. I mean, I guess it's, it's three paragraphs and maybe somewhere in the neighborhood.
And these are interview questions? So these are the questions we'll be asking them when we're interviewing them, and if we're interviewing them, we better know from their application which one they fit.
Or we have to pull that aside, and so there, you're asking them to answer the question is my concern, I guess.
Right, but you're, they should already know where they fit because they filled out the application. Now we're asking them to describe the qualifications. So tell me more about you and how you fit.
You fit as a
Military serviceman.
I guess I could go with that. If, if there's an issue, we can change it later.
I just like to say thank you for all of your hard work working on this and getting us ready for July.
Do we anticipate, and I, I didn't remember seeing it, that we're going to be the terms, as far as the length of terms in there, to get those on some where we don't have, because I think it's a bad, it's always a bad idea to not have continuity where we should have the members rotate. I mean, because the Board of Commissioners is general, I mean, that's a set number, which, you know, which does change on a rotation or not, depending. But the Board of Health members, the term will be a certain length of time. I don't want the three. I think it's a bad idea to have all three of them come due at the same time all at once. We need to do it so they're always rotating through, and we need to kind of think about that as far as logistically, how we do that.
Is it a one-year appointment or a two-year?
It's a two-year appointment, so Paul's is not up until December, so he's gonna just not fill that seat until his comes due. So then you have one that starts in July, one that starts in December.
Right.
We could potentially look at doing that second position as a one-year term to kind of
Well, that's what I meant, as far as maybe the initial appointment, we make it not the full two-year, just to get them some.
Well, so you have two.
Are we allowed to do that if the RCW says it's a two-year term?
The appointment is local control.
Right, right.
No, and I'm not necessarily, I'm just raising that as an issue. Can we design that? Because we do have the potential for
You'd have two, and then December, December two, and then you'd make those two other positions the same, so it'd only be a two at a time.
And I don't know how the
Yeah, okay.
We're gonna have no control over the tribal ones, so I suggest we just, you know.
That's, and that's what I was
Yeah, so.
But yes.
Yeah, there's only five that we have.
Okay.
Okay, just looking at that as far as once we do.
But the timing in the tribal, we have control.
I would, I would think that even if you had, say, both of our appointed positions due on the same month of the same year, this board is going to be educated and enlightened enough to not replace them both. Hopefully, in the future, I guess, maybe. But that way you do have continuity. So, you know, I don't know if we're trying to accomplish something that we necessarily don't need to accomplish.
Well, I would put, I would put the commissioner that goes different with one of the positions, so they're on the same.
Cycle.
And then this, the other one and the tribal on the same cycle, so that you could ever only have
Right, so there's, there's two, two, and two that way. Potent, I mean, that's the most potential you would have, because the commissioners, two of them, you know, and they're, it's not unusual for commissioners to have more than one term, and so, but you always have that potential that two of them could switch out, so that'd be the worst-case scenario in that cycle. No, as far as, you would have two, I'm meaning, you could have two new members when you got two new commissioners. The next time, you could have two new members when the other commissioner was
That's where I was.
And then, and then, and put the other set in between those.
But put the new commissioner, or the single commissioner with one of them and not the tribal.
Right, right.
Yes, that was my recommendation.
That's what Jake was, the point he was making.
That's fine. I was just looking at it that, because each time you have to do appointments, they gotta write it up. There's more paperwork. If you do one in July and one the next year, then you gotta do it twice.
Because the commissioner appointments, I'm assuming the, the board appointments are two years. The commissioner appointments are four years, the length of their term, so that should work. And again, it's probably much ado about nothing, but I'm always interested in
Yeah, we don't know, we, we don't know what the next pandemic may look like.
Exactly.
But the next Board of Commissioners, if they wanted to change it, could change it.
They could totally change it.
So that's what I said, if this board doesn't see there's going to be a problem with trying to change out the continuity of the board, let the next board worry about it, because I don't think it's an issue. That's my opinion anyway, but I'm, I'm fine with whatever the board decides.
Okay, further discussion?
I think staggering is a great idea.
Okay. Okay, well then, are we ready to, did we get, are we comfortable enough where we know where we're at on stuff to move forward with this? Because I think we need to take action, because we're, at this point, we're not scheduled to meet again to adopt before we actually have to make, make appointments, because we have a vacancy coming.
I, I then would make a motion then. So my motion would be to accept the resolution or the ordinance as presented with the change for the veteran as given to us, and then accept the work instruction and the position description pending review of the RCW on that review by the Board of Health, and if that's in the RCW, my motion is to accept all forms.
Okay.
A little messy, but
Why don't you second it?
I'm trying to get you more involved over there. You're doing better.
Second.
Okay, okay, I have a motion and a second, which the minute taker will capture.
Yeah, sorry.
Got it. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
No, I apologize to the minute person for not trying to make that easier. You should have asked me to make that a little easier. Didn't think about that.
Um, so my plan was to start advertising June first with the intent that we could figure out a time in June to do interviews.
If you're advertising June first, is that gonna give us enough time to post, since we want it in the paper for a couple of weeks? Get the applications, do interviews, and I'm ready to go by July first.
August twenty-fifth.
Oh.
Is our next Board of Health, it is, but our next Board of Health meeting is August twenty-fifth, so I didn't, unless you want it done by July first.
Yeah.
I felt like that was in process, but maybe I interpreted that incorrectly.
That's fine.
No, I think we're good.
Long as we're not in violation of state, I'm fine.
No, we just adopted it. We're not in violation.
Well, we don't have them sitting there on January.
I don't think we're required.
We're not meeting until our next scheduled meeting, so. Okay. Yes, ma'am. Okay, anything? I gotta scroll back up. Okay, now would be the opportunity if, for public access to the board, so this is public comment. Is there anybody, since there's nobody in the room, is there anybody online that would wish to provide public comment regarding a Board of Health issue to the Board of Health? Raise your hand, unmute yourself, star six. I am not seeing anybody. Okay.
You would think of it as completely
Okay, we will, anything else for the good of the order? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would move that we adjourn the Board of Health meeting.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to adjourn the Board of Health meeting. All those in favor? Oh, discussion. Thank you.
Since Ms. Sue said this is her last meeting officially, we don't know that for sure. I would just like to thank her for her service before we vote.
Yeah, thank you very much. And, yeah, I debated to, to add that thanks to all of you and to everyone in this room, because what you're all doing here is very important, and it's been a privilege to serve for these five years. And I've learned a lot and also made me aware of county, more aware of county government and really how important it is. So anyway, it's, you know, it's with fondness that I depart.
Yeah.
You don't have to depart. You can still volunteer all the time.
I will, I will volunteer. You know, once you get public health in your blood, it's, yes, it's not hard to, you know, stay near, so.
And even if you do, there's citizen access to the board, so you can come back and visit.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Sue. I was remiss. I should have, but I don't really think of you as not actually leaving, so. Because I know you're still gonna be engaged, so, yes.
You know that.
Yeah, you just have a different role necessarily.
Funny, we think of you the same way.
Yeah. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We are adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Look at that timing. All right. Does anybody need a minute or anything?
Uh, no, I'm good unless somebody else wants it.
Yeah, I'm gonna go grab my water.
You want a recess?
No, it's fine. No. We are resuming the Board of County Commissioner meeting, and we are going to move into Code Compliance Officer Lim Pratt for an update.
Okay, so this, my understanding is that you want me to come and speak about the Northlake issue overall. And I can go into my comments with that. So in twenty twenty-one, there were five complaints received regarding a wrecking yard being operated in the Northlake area of Quikattack County, solid waste and potential toxic waste. In November of twenty twenty-one, I went to the location, and as I drove the area, I noticed that three adjacent properties that all had Hulk junk vehicles in plain view of the road. After receiving more complaints from previous complainants, I went back to the area and counted six properties total that would qualify as public nuisances. A search showed that the owner, which is the focus of the complaints, did have a business license and a website for selling vehicle parts. The certified letter was mailed to the property owner, explained the zoning violation of Title nineteen point one eight, general rules zoning, and mentioning the WAC, they had the WAC three oh eight dash six, three dash zero seven zero, records, license procedures and requirements to let him know, you know, that, what he needed for a records license. The property owner contacted me and stated that he was being singled out because he was a new property owner in the area and wanted to know why the other property owners who had Hulk vehicles and junk, noting some with garbage piles were not being contacted by the county. I explained to him I was only investigating the wrecking yard operation and not doing selective enforcement. He stated, most of the vehicles were owned by him, and it was only a hobby business and that he had friends, that he and his friends did on weekends. He said that he bought the property specifically for this and asked what he needed to do for compliance. I told him that he would need to comply, or excuse me, apply for a change in use for the property. And if granted, he would need a site obstructing seven-foot fence around the perimeter of the operation. The property owner said that it would cost him about twenty thousand dollars, which he did not have, and would dissolve the business. He later emailed me a copy of the Washington State Department of Revenue notification that the business was dissolved. My response to the complainants pointed out the issues with the several, several other properties in the area, which some appeared to be in their condition for years, if not decades, and I was willing to investigate all of those in violation of the county code, but I had been directed not to do selective enforcement. Also, the Department of Ecology was the agency to contact concerning toxic slash hazardous waste. Note, after two conversations and review of photos by DOA Department of Ecology, they've notified me that there is no evidence to show the, that there is a level of activity on this property that constitutes a toxic waste hazard. Selective enforcement would clearly be the case when several of the complainants have acknowledged to me that there are several other properties which they know about for years, and they pass by on their way to their properties that are public nuisances. As of this date, no other complaints have been received on other properties near the property in question. I agree that the primary property in focus is a larger eyesore and the number of vehicles that are visible, excuse me. The question for the, that I have for the County Board of Commissioners, does code compliance proceed with a nuisance abatement investigation on the one property owner which has received the required complaints from separate independent parcel owners within a five-mile radius? And then I asked you just to view the abatement process form that I have in the back there. It is my opinion that if the owner does place a proper fencing in the nuisance, the nuisance issue will be resolved, but the selective enforcement issue will not.
Do you feel that being as it, the other one is, the ones around it, I haven't driven up there yet. I was planning to do it, but I ran out of it. Do you feel that the, we know that this is the most worst, the worst one, and it's the one that's growing the fastest, and it has five complaints from the neighbors?
Yes.
And it was also operated as a commercial business?
Correct.
Does that, does, do you feel that the commercial business aspect changes it from being selective enforcement?
Oh, I, I don't believe that whether it's a commercial business or not, if it's, if we're looking at enforcement on a nuisance, nuisance abatement, because they can't have a wrecking yard legally there anywhere underneath the county code. The Washington State Patrol has told me that they do not issue wrecking licenses if the business is not in a proper zone. So, you know, with that said, to code compliance, it doesn't matter, you know, whether it's a commercial business or not. If they, if it's in a, a commercial zoning where it's allowed, they still have to have a seven-foot fence anyway, you know. So if, if the property owner does put up a seven-foot fence that people cannot view the vehicles behind the fence, it resolves the nuisance. Now, now they may say that the fence now is a nuisance. I don't know, because you don't have, and I don't know if there's any HOAs preventing fencing there. That's not, you know, that's not for me to delve into, because that's civil. That's strictly a private deal, so. And, and in some of these properties, you're looking at garbage buildup on some of these properties. properties, not, not just, you know, Hulk vehicles, vehicles that somebody's stripping, that they're working on. You're actually looking at household garbage. Some of it is caved-in buildings. Some of them are, are buildings, hazardous buildings. Some are dwellings that there's no way they could have a permit for.
Are any of these issues that you're noticing owned by the people complaining about the, the bottom old guy?
No. Yeah, none of the complaints that I, that I've seen are ones that have nuisance properties.
But they're only complaining about the new guy that moved into the neighborhood and not all the old tenants?
Yeah, that's, that's the focus of the complaints, yeah, is the new person. And, and it does, you know, in the comments that were made to me by these adjacent property owners, that it devalues their property. Obviously, I'm not here to say whether or not that's true or not. I have no doubt that that may be, but, but the value of the property, you know, is also a concern for the adjacent property owners.
Has any of the five complainants mentioned to you why they haven't filled out a complaint for the other neighbors?
There was an email in the complaints, no, but there was an email by a complaint that was, was sent. And in that email, I think the gentleman had said that those properties are farther away from him, and this property, I think, was right adjacent to him. So the other properties, and I believe in the email, if I remember correctly, that he acknowledged the, these other properties that he does go by, but, but this one was right there.
This one's closer to that person. What's that?
But it is also the larger eyesore.
Where, where are the other four complainants in relation? Are the other ones farther from them too? Is this guy closer to the other four complainants too?
Well, I think all of those, I believe that all the complaints have to drive past this property, all, all of these properties, you know, when they're coming and going. Now, some of the properties that I've noticed as I've go further in, maybe after some of the complainant's properties, several of the complainants are absentee property owners. So they, they either use it as recreational weekend-type property, or they're looking to build. A couple of people have said, hey, we're looking to build here. Other folks, from what I gather, were investment properties in that they're trying to sell the property.
Which, for information for my seatmates, when I was moving here six years ago, two areas I looked at were Woodland Road and quickly decided, yeah, no. In the second one was Norlick, Northlake Drive, and I said, yeah, no, for the same reason six years ago.
And this gentleman just, yeah, this gentleman moved in, I believe it was 2021, I think, is when we started getting complaints on that. Yeah, he started moving the property in there. I don't know when he bought the property, but when he started moving the vehicles in there.
It's always a mess.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the, the hardliner in me is, you know, we have, you know, we, we apply the standard. We, we have complaints. We have a, you know, we did the investigation, and it appears that it, you know, qualifies.
There was no question there.
Yeah, there's no question there. I haven't been out to look. I wanted, that's why I was, I wanted to, yeah, I wanted, I want to see it myself, just to kind of see.
How many cars are there?
I'd have to go back and look, but the, I believe there's, there's between 20 and 30 vehicles. It even has a motor hoist out there as well. And then there's some RVs and a job shack.
So I guess, my perspective. We have the complaints. Complaints are valid. We have a person who's conducting a business, a wrecking yard, without going through the proper procedures. They moved here to do this. Granted, they don't live here. They're just here on the weekends accordingly, and didn't check with the county, didn't ask anything, and it is impacting the neighbors. I'm sure they're, you know, potentially fire hazards, everything else as you're chopping these things up. It'd be hard not to move forward, you know, with an abatement or, you know, the threat of the abatement, and hopefully he will pack up and move his operations somewhere where he can legally do that. That would be, of course, the best thing.
Yeah. Is there, you say 20 to 30 cars. Is there, I'm not familiar with the specifics of our code as far as the, you know, the seven-foot fence. We know that, I mean, if that's a requirement for the commercial activity, it's irrelevant, because you can't, I mean, you cannot have a commercial, there's no way to make it legal in the zoning that it's in. So it would be more of a question of if it's out of sight, then it's not a nuisance anymore. Nobody, you know, he, it seems like in the, in your comments, it was, oh, it's gonna be $20,000 to build. I, I'm not aware that there's a requirement that the fence has to be the perimeter of your entire property. It is to, so that you don't see whatever the, the, the eyesore is.
The perimeter, it, so it's for the operation, not, not the perimeter.
Right.
Yeah. And I made that clear to him when, when I talked.
I mean, 20,000, I mean, I know we've had inflation, but that's all, that's.
No, no, for a seven-foot tall fence going around that's visual around the property that size, you're not doing that for 20,000.
Yeah, well, these lots don't look that big, but, anyway, it just seems like a lot of money. That sounds like, I mean, that's always an easy, oh, it's just a fortune, I can't do it. And, I mean, for me, the, the issue with, there's other properties that are, that's not really relevant in that we have a, we have a complaint that is, you know, it's a proper complaint. It was filed with the correct number of people. We deal with that, and if they choose to not complain about each other, then that's really not, we're not gonna go into. I, I mean, I don't like the idea of us going out and finding things to, because we can, we can find nuisances.
Easy.
Easy, anywhere we want to look. So unless we're, yeah, unless we're, exactly. And so, yeah, I mean, I don't see that we really have an option without not moving forward. I mean, we have, or.
And I'm not here to defend not to enforce it against the one property owner. I'm just here to get, make sure that I have clarification that when I was told, when I first got on board, is not to do selective enforcement. If I misunderstood what the board had said on that, I apologize, but my understanding selective enforcement was, was just what you're saying, where property owner is, you know, gaining up when that property owner has the same issue going on.
Right.
Now, these property owners don't.
Right.
They don't. And this is the biggest eyesore, and it qualifies as, as a public nuisance. There's no question.
And my, my take on it, I guess, is selective enforcement goes two ways. I, I feel sorry for this guy who's may or may not be being ganged up on his neighbors in something that qualifies for selective enforcement. But in the same regard, if we made some kind of variance that, okay, well, because of that, you're, you know, here's a waiver, you don't have to abide by the rules we're forcing everybody else to, that's selective enforcement even more so. That then you get into what's somebody's last name and, you know, for selective enforcement. So I hate the idea of, of them potentially going after somebody who's new, but I don't, I don't see a way to not, and still live under our code in a fair and just way.
And I would also say that the fear here is, is that if you're saying you're not going to enforce something because of the surrounding areas have the same problem, what happens is, is you will just continually make it worse and worse and worse. It will be a toilet bowl to the bottom, because if there is no enforcement at all, and you can't enforce it because the neighbor, unless you look at it all as one, but you don't get any, any nuisance complaints against the others, then now you've got a problem. I mean, I think this one's pretty obvious, that it, the guy was running an operation, and the neighbors had to hear it, look at it, and see it, and that triggered it. And, and probably the speed at which, you know, being a farmer, you're always accumulating something, and it might take you 40 years to accumulate everything you accumulate. But when you, in a year, all of a sudden have 25 vehicles, it looks more like a dumping ground than it does anything else.
Yeah. Well, it, it looks like a toilet bowl there.
Yeah.
In that whole area.
Yeah, the whole, yeah.
Right.
So.
But it's the difference if it's your toilet bowl.
Do we, do we have something in our code that says you can only have X number of cars on your property?
Three, unless it's in residential, and I believe it's worn.
That's it.
So pretty much half the counties is in violation of that one.
Yeah, so three non.
Those are unlicensed, not operating.
Oh, unlicensed and not operating.
And these are licensed, they're just not operating. These, these are all, and he's, he's telling me these, these vehicles are in his name. You know, it's his hobby deal.
I said, I have the same worry that I think his neighbors do, is if it got up to 25 that quickly, is it at 100 in a year from now, and he just walks away because he stripped them bright?
And I have an appointment, is it tomorrow? I think it's tomorrow, it was Wednesday, right? I have an appointment with that very thing, where we started with over 100 vehicles, and I'm going out there because he's telling me he's got everything moved off to there. So on another case.
Yeah, so hopefully, if, if you start in on this case, this guy will do the same thing. He'll either move on, or he'll take them because you can make good money out of them down in Portland.
And I think, I think we have to move forward with it. I just don't see another way.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Okay.
Consensus.
All right.
Thank you.
On this issue, I do have a legal question. The clerk sent me an email that one of these complainants who has an attorney would like to talk to a county commissioner, which it is in District Two, by the way. I did not respond because they do have an attorney, and I'm always leery of somebody that has an attorney and threatens to sue, and then having a conversation with them. Is it good practice to not have said conversation with Joe Citizen if they have an attorney without counsel present? Or what, how should I proceed with that in the future? What would be your legal advice for protect the county?
If the constituent has retained a counsel, counsel sent a lawyer to bring the patient. It's usually not beneficial if anyone sits down with that person.
That's what I thought.
They already made the choice of how they wish to, or how they wish to.
Yeah.
So would it be okay, because I hate ignoring people, to just send them an email that says, I'm sorry, since you have counsel, kind of what you said, or should they just be ignored?
It's really up to you. I mean, I would strongly caution you not to meet with them in their council for, that's probably the best practice, but, you know, if you wanted to meet with them one-on-one, just keep in mind that, you know, they're obviously looking for some sort of advantage or something they would use as leverage, so.
Or to put me on the stand later. So, yeah, yeah, okay. Okay.
Can I just, that is in a different case. That's not, that's not what we're talking about here.
It's kind of relevant.
But it is in a case where I'm moving forward, and I actually, the, the landowner that, that the violator has agreed, and in two weeks, he says, I can come out, and I, he can show me that he's got the garbage pile gone, and he can show me that all of the vehicles except for two are running vehicles, and they're all registered to him.
Oh, okay.
So.
That's good news. I still needed the legal advice for the next time this happened.
Well, I, no, I understand. I just wanted to clarify that, that was.
You know, that was a Woodland Road thing, if I'm remembering right, and this isn't.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you for everything you do, sir.
And I have an email for you.
Perfect. I'll look forward to it. All right, well, we are going to move on to our fiscal manager, Jen Bartley, for her quarterly update.
Really quick update. There is not a lot with first quarter. But I really didn't dive into revenues at this point, because so far in the first quarter, it's, it's not really pertinent what we're gonna be looking at for revenues. Everything that we'll be looking into with revenues is gonna start happening in the second quarter, so I didn't spend a whole lot of time there. But I did pull together expenditures. This would be the general fund, currently sitting at 23% of budget total. Everybody, no, nothing stands out at all. Everybody's well under budget at this point in time, where they should be well under a quarter percent. You guys see anything on there that you want me to drill into? Let me know.
No. So you see no issues so far?
You, Miss Lee, do you remember what we budgeted for left board?
That's good news, too. It hasn't already.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, we're gonna be over because we changed that retirement thing. I'm just trying to give them, everybody a ballpark on what we think we might be over, since, will we change the housing or the assistance care? Oh, that's right, that's.
The fact we're 25%, we spent 23.
Yeah, that's a really good data point to have. If it was 28 or 30, that would be a problem.
And this is, this is with the updated expenses with the expectation for the supplemental.
Supplements are not in there.
So, so technically, when you think about it, we're actually probably gonna, we're look, we're under 23% if you don't, considering the 4% wage increase.
This would be all funds together. So 15%. That includes the general fund plus all the special revenue funds.
But also remember, we budgeted 1.4 million to make our insurance payment in October, and it won't be, it'll be at that, so there's a little, there's a little slush there.
Hopefully, right? Hopefully.
Right, as I said, there's, I tried to say, I said a little slush.
Yeah, I mean, but like, the, the 15%, when, when road is included in that, when we're doing a large road project, that just can skew everything.
Yeah, that, that's meaningless.
Yeah, it really is. Yeah. And like I said, it's, it's tough with first quarter. It's three months' worth of data. But as long as we're under that 25% mark, it's kind of good.
But it was expenditures. We're only looking at expenditures, not revenue. So, so I don't care when they get it. They're, they've only spent about a quarter of what they're supposed to.
I did, and this doesn't look pretty by any means, but I, I did grab some information on what we've received first quarter-wise on the top revenues that we're, we'll be tracking over the year. So that's where we're sitting right now.
First quarter sales tax looks big.
500.
Well, if we're normally at 1.3 or 1.2, and we're thinking the change is gonna put it at 1.6, double, yeah, I guess.
No, because you're looking at 3 million for your budget.
Right.
Right, because there's other.
But you don't in the first quarter. The first quarter is only the original old number, because it didn't qualify in the first quarter, our second bump. So that number looks actually big for the first quarter of. So that number looks actually big for the first quarter of the half that we always had.
Right.
Is my point.
Yeah.
We alw- if we only ever got one point two, that number should be a quarter of one point two. Or three million and it's, or three hundred thousand and it's well higher than that.
So if we would have got it done a little bit earlier, it would actually been over a million.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. So the number is, is, I, that tells me the sales tax is trending higher than even we forecasted. Because that number is just based off the, the regular one point two we've always got.
And then the.
And it's a quarter of the one point two. So theoretically, a quarter of one point two is um three hundred thousand. So it should only be three hundred thousand.
For the general.
Right.
Oh, that's. Okay.
So.
Which is.
That, that's a big number when I'm, I was expecting to see somewhere around three hundred thousand.
Right. Six hundred thousand over, though. Yeah, six hundred thousand.
The, the REIT was a nice Christmas present.
But that means that if we are going to be paying less with the other one, then only is two months of less payments.
We just don't want to have a gap of two months and roll the dice.
No, are you gonna move on? Are you gonna do the, the, when I went in and talked, the county, county one?
No, no, I'm only here for.
You're only here for that? I had a question for him on that one.
Got more?
I was trying to get some.
That's it.
All right.
Guidance, then.
Guides.
No guidance for me.
For what?
Well, she, she also did the summary for costs for courts and whatnot. Um, in what percentage is Goldendale and White Salmon and Binge and whatnot?
Yeah.
It's in that email forwarded. So I guess my question to her, which she didn't know, is, is where we were if the, if the total county court costs are, say, one point three million. And let's just say Goldendale's eight percent was our initial offer type of thing to Goldendale would be, hey, you need to pay eight percent of one point three million? I mean, what are, what are we going to approach them?
So where the plan was right now is just today, we sent what the smart sheet that Jen created that was fin forwarded to us, to all of the cities. And I, my plan was to give them a week to digest it and come up with it, and then I'd start setting up meetings about, okay, guys, now we need to start this negotiation.
Right, but I'm, I'm trying to say where, where this negotiation, so are we as a county looking for anything up to, let's just continue with that eight percent, that city to pay eight percent of one point three million and we're negotiating up to them paying their full share? And that's in your negotiation hand, or is that a, I mean, where are we going with that?
I would think that um the way she designed it was splitting up East and West District Court because they have different expectations. East District Court uses the posse, West District Court uses nothing. And so the way that she split it out, that I think that it would be, the negotiation would be off of this, each district court rather than off of the total.
And I assume we're, you know, our goal is, I mean, we're negotiating up to, you know.
Well, we're not gonna get more than.
No, we're never gonna get more than, but it's, yeah, it's like we want to get as close, I mean, whatever we can up to, they're fully covering their costs.
So I guess I'd say if you're saying East District Court is seven hundred and seventy-one thousand and we're talking about Goldendale, since it's East District Court, you're looking at up to eight percent of the seven hundred and seventy-one thousand.
No, no, because if you look at what she created.
Just if I can, Jen, before you leave, if I gave you a, I've got some spreadsheets that the P U D produced for me on the wastewater plant. If I can just give you a copy and just, I need someone to.
Run the numbers?
Kind of ground truth, the numbers there, I'm, I'm sure they're fine, but it's always good to have somebody else look at them. Okay, I hold up. Okay, thank you.
So I guess I don't know what you're trying to accomplish here, and that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Um, let me pull it up. Okay, so it's, it's pretty, no, not this. So you see how this thing comes and then you look at East District Court, right? And of the criminal filings of East County, thirty-seven percent of that is East District. Okay, so here's your East District criminal filings. The total thirty-seven percent are with the city of Goldendale. So you come down here and you look at the East District, East District Court expense of seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars plus twelve thousand dollars, that's your total cost to East District Court. If you figure thirty-seven percent of that is out of the city of Goldendale, that would be, that would be what, what?
Be trying to get to me.
Got it.
Which, whether it's tomorrow or.
Well, that's why I was sitting here at this eight percent.
Eight percent, no.
No, I'm looking at what Jen created here. That's what got sent on the smart sheet. And then that's where we can start from there for having meeting.
Got it.
That sound good to you guys?
Yep.
Okay. Moving on.
You're gonna have them make first offers? And then, you know, kind of thing?
And then laugh, no.
Yeah, well, that's probably what we're gonna do.
No, what I told them to do a while ago is look and say, you know, we're not required to cover this. This is how much this is costing us. Granted, there's, you know, fixed costs that wouldn't change, but this is, this is the cost. Why don't you look to see how much it would actually cost you if you want to do it yourself? And then we have two numbers that you can now say, well, now we can.
Let's say my, my only concern is, is yes, I want to be fair, but we're looking at two different uh fiscal entities and two different. One, one city is heck of a lot poorer than the other one who can, you know, run off and buy houses to sell snowcups. But you still have to be fair in, in your application, so I, I get it.
Well, and you also have to, the prosecutor, there's a different prosecutor for each side. There, the prosecutor appears prosecuting more cases than down there, and that could be a lot of different factors. And, you know, those expenses go throughout the entire system, right? So I think it'll be a good discussion. Shall we move on to consent?
Okay. Yeah, I was, I was good, if we're good.
Yeah, you're good.
Okay.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda, all seven items.
I would second the motion.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda with all seven items. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion, we pay the accounts payable warrants in the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred thirty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents. And the payroll benefit warrants the amount of zero dollars for the date ending May second, twenty twenty-two.
Second. There's been a motion in a second to pay the bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We're getting lower on, you'll zoom.
Been a riveting discussion there.
I'm assuming we were at, when Lauren came in, we didn't have any issues with signing the letter.
No.
No.
Kristen.
You don't need a motion on that.
That was one of the questions I had in the emails. I, I wanted to know the price range. That was shocking.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I asked him that.
The, the number.
Yeah, a lot of, well, no, it's about the same amount they did on the last one. They just moved it up and bought the property rather than the, the same thing they got.
Well, a lot of this property isn't even what I would consider farmland. It's, it's grazing land on the side of hills and it's the fact that the government has a program for that is remarkable to me. Must be nice.
All right, um, board pending, um, because it wasn't clear earlier with the, the dollars, our portion of the aspect dollars, um, would it be a good idea to make a motion that we approve those dollars to go to?
If that's what we want to do, but I gotta know history. Why are we trying to do that? What, was there, was there a contract written originally? What is that contract? I don't know anything about it.
Uh, there's a lot of information you can read if you would like, but it's all quite a history lesson. Years in the making, correct?
Yeah, I would say as far as relevant to this question. This question, there was a contract, there was an agreement uh entered into between the city, county and the water district uh to transfer the water rights with reservations and restrictions. You know, and again, we can get you a copy of that. Uh, that was amended in two thousand and twelve of that.
But we reserve whatever.
Right.
Fifty-six percent.
Right.
For airport.
Very good, okay, so you've, you've seen all that. You're not oblivious. There was, um.
One point two million or something and was the value at the time. Are we trying to say the value isn't one point two million now?
No, I think what the tr- the, the issue we're trying to establish is was there, what is the value, what was the value or is the value?
Was the value in two thousand and eleven when the contract was signed, or what is the value now?
Probably, I'd likely, he's gonna do both.
Yeah. And so, and was that, we have to be able to prove to the FAA that we got in exchange.
Give something.
We didn't give something away.
In eleven.
Right, in two thousand and eleven, when.
More than we got.
More than we got. So was it, was it a fair exchange? Oh, Dave McClure, I was like, Dave's right there.
Enough for me, so I'm good.
So.
I mean, I was just asking if, if we weren't clear that, you know, it was consensus that we could, Dave had the money, McClure.
Well, I know we asked, did he have the money in his thing, or I thought we did, but I don't know that we ever.
And they estimated the cost for Aspect to do it.
Seventy-five.
That's what I said, it was like, that's what I thought.
So hopefully under five thousand.
Under five thousand. It wasn't a huge.
We just wanted to make sure that you, the money that you said is there is there for at Dan Howarth Aspect to do.
Yes.
Our half.
Our half.
Yes.
Okay, and we need to make a motion to allow you to pay that.
Or at least, I don't know that he needs a physical motion, but as long as we all give consent on it, I'm fine. I just don't think we gave consent because I wouldn't have done it without having this conversation. So stick to the legalities, I'm, unless you want a motion for it, I don't.
I have, I have a contract with Aspect, but it's not, this is not within the scope of work for the contract.
So you have to expand the scope or add this as another task?
Or if, if you have a contract with the airport or the city that I could provide, say, Leah, a charge number for it, that would work. I just don't have a way to get the money to them without some kind of a contract.
Right.
Between either us and Aspect or us and the city.
City, right.
Or the airport or whoever has, actually has the contract with Aspect.
I would assume the airport is doing the contract. Or is it?
So the, the contract is through the city.
Okay.
And we do send money to the city every year, so we have something there that we send the dollars to the city for, for the managers.
But we would need an amendment, it's a set amount on it, so we would have to amend that to, that we're paying up to.
Does the airport not have a budget where they have a fund balance that they can come up with five grand so you don't have to jump through all these hoops every time you try to do something?
The airport's fiscal manager is the city.
But they don't have a budget with a fund balance that they can take it out of their own budget because of money we put in and the city puts in gives them a fund balance, kind of a scenario. That's not how they operate.
Potentially, I mean, they could, like, they do, they have like, uh, you know, professional services line item, they have. And it's, it's not, but typically, it's, that's all allocated and this is like a special project and generally you go back to, because if we did not want, because the airport doesn't really have any authority to spend outside of that without coming back to the us, and we have to both agree, and so we typically, when it's, this is like a project, then we discuss it and say, is this something we want to do? And if we, we have to both say it's okay. I mean, the city can do whatever they want as long as they paid a hundred percent of it, we, they could do it, but.
They're gonna do anyway, but it would be nice if we pay our half.
Well, but we don't have to pay our half if we don't want to.
That sounds fun, I want to be.
Yeah.
No, and I'm, there's some question, I mean, it's, yeah.
No, I'm, I'm fine with the, with the answers I was given, I'm, I'm fine.
Yes, I, you know.
So do you need a?
And Aspect, those are folks that I would ask, at top of mind to ask for price estimate on something like this. However, you're going to use the work, if you're going to use the work product to show the FAA the value of the water, there may be some requirements in terms of how that appraisal is done. It might require special qualifications that I don't know if Aspect or Dan has. So you might follow up and see what is, what's the work product gotta look like in order to
Right.
Serve your purpose.
Absolutely. And then the other side of this is the city also authorized the expenditure of up to thirty thousand dollars on special legal counsel to, once this valuation comes back, to then work with the FAA that this legal counsel to work with the FAA to ensure that we can get to the other side of this so that we can transfer the, the water.
So if I understand, I'm not part.
You're not part of that, I'm looking past you at, because we can't authorize that without Prosecutor Cannell's authorization for us to pay our share of what the city, I mean, it gets convoluted because we can't hire anyone. The city just decided to, you know, unilaterally authorize up to thirty thousand dollars for this. If they come back asking for our, for our portion of that, we can't give it without Prosecutor Cannell's blessing.
I'd say cross that bridge when we get there. Let him ask. And then we're gonna have to ask and he'll have some time to think about it, can easily tell us no.
All right, I don't mind being between the rock and the hard place.
Your choice, I'm only one of them. If you want to go the other way, we can.
Well, no.
There is no other way.
It's.
It's the time, as far as just a timing issue, as far as the, you know, do we ask now or do we? Yeah, I, I think I would support, I would wait.
Were gonna be for when we had the workshop-y thing. If all this gets hammered out, there's really no reason to have the workshop-y thing. Which is less information I get later, so.
We'll still have the workshop-y thing, no matter what, I think. There's a lot, as you heard earlier, there's a lot of growth in, in Dallasport, and we all need to be on the same page, the potential. I mean, I heard one today that, you know, I thought was twenty years off and it sounds like it's a lot sooner in one development, so.
Well, I'll believe it when I see Dirt Movie.
I've, I've heard some things.
I've, I've booked time on a, a golf course for a lot, Rob and I have got it, we got a date. I have a, I have a date for a beer in the clubhouse with somebody that's dead now, so.
So are you saying you want to get a prosecutor's opinion on whether we would pay for half of that now, or are you saying you'd rather wait?
I, I would rather wait, I would rather not put the prosecutor on the spot right now. We'd let him have a chance to think about this, as far as the details of it, and I'm kind of curi- I mean, the city unilaterally did it. The work's gonna get done and the, the finance piece of it, I guess, you know, we can, we can work out in the future. Well, yeah, really, they got all that Google money.
Yeah, Google money.
They got five million in our money, too. We got significant amount.
That's what people say about us, but, you know.
It's, yeah.
If they're interested, they could draft a request for a prosecutor.
Well, I, I don't, I mean, honestly, I don't think that, you know, they're in a different state with completely different rules. They don't understand the fact that we can't authorize it without going through the prosecutor, so.
And I don't want to get messy, so I'd rather wait on it.
Well, I can tell you, if, if we ask later and he says no, it could get messy that way, too, so. I'll deal with the repercussions, whatever it is.
Has the city of the DOWs formally requested us to pay half? Or they just asked if we would?
Well, I let the. City know that we can't authorize the payment for professional services for the attorney without the prosecutors.
Well, a question I would have is my, and I would, I would look to the prosecutor. Attorneys generally, they can't, they can't represent more than one party. And the airport isn't an entity, it's the city and the county, and so is the, is there special counsel, outside counsel, whatever. Outside counsel, whatever, is actually working for the city of the DOWs? So, I mean, they can't really look after, I mean, they, you know, theoretically, there shouldn't be, we should all be on the same page. But, and it's like, we're all on the same team, but.
That's messy.
I mean, I don't know, you, you can't, is there, is there anything they can do where the, the city is the client, says, yeah, I'm okay with. My partner, the county, being, you know, co-represented? I mean, typically, you, your attorney is your attorney, nobody else's.
That's what I'm saying. That's where this gets real messy for me.
This is very messy in many ways. Uh, it is possible to represent multiple parties that don't have, you know, the obvious. And tantanistic interests as long as there's annoying intelligent waiver by both parties, which is. You know, to, to retain, the council would require to me to deputize them. It would require them to serve under my direction. It would require the knowing waiver of any potential conflict issues. And that's, that's one set of problems. The other problematic issue is. I believe the city intends on seeking to recoup half their expenditures based on our joint management agreement that might obligate us to. And the county, you cannot expend funds on council without approval. So there is, there's multiple levels of problems here. Especially when I, you know, have yet to understand or, or in any way be convinced that the need for retention. Unless I cancel when we have made an attempt to transfer at this point. It seems that you hire. Litigators, you hire consultants when you're trying to reverse an adverse decision or there, there's some, something like that. If we're, if we apply and we're denied, we can apply again, correct? Or am I missing something there?
I don't know. I, I mean, my best, my, my best situation would be is, is if you and. The, the attorney for the city of the DOWs speak and figure out, you know, is this counsel the right direction to go? And if you disagree and you say, well, we're not gonna pay and I'm not gonna deputize them, that lets the DOWs know where, where we're at. I think that just the communication with their counsel and our counsel, the county's counsel. Probably would be a good place to start because we don't have the answers.
Well, the hard part to me is I'm not sitting in the room with the airport board telling me why exactly we need this counsel. And how that fits into the FFA or FFA thing. I, I tried it twice, missed it double price. Thing, so it's, it's kind of one of those, I don't even really want to vote on it because I don't feel like I've, I've been clued in fully on why. Now, I understand all parties are happy with doing counsel because it'll finally get some closure. I don't know of anybody that isn't happy with getting counsel to finally get closure. I just, I just feel like I don't know enough about it to make a decision.
Well, fundamentally, is the retention of the consultants a possible counsel to, you know, to bring us in a, you know, the posture of litigation? Potentially with the FAA is this, is the attempt to document and, and provide an excuse to renege on our agreement? With the water district or not? What, why is it, why are we taking so long to try to proceed to live up to our obligation presented to the two thousand and eleven contract? That's what I'm not really understanding.
That's where I'm at, too.
I don't think there is any, at least to my knowledge, any desire to, I mean, we signed an agreement, we. I have every expectation to, to perform under that agreement. It has been communicated to us that we have tried. I haven't personally tried, we have not, I haven't seen documents that we've tried to actually do the transfer as far as the water rights transfer. I'm a little fuzzy on what we've actually done, you know, go, this goes back ten years. Where we, you know, maybe we fi-, I don't know that we filed with the Department of Ecology to initiate the transfer. And, you know, but we do know that we can't do anything without the FAA. We have to have something in writing saying that it's okay for us to do this.
Do you want to apply for the transfer?
See, as I said, well. Yeah, I think, I believe so. I don't think we, I don't think we can do anything because that's an, we're, we're transferring an, we cannot transfer. Any assets of the airport without the FAA's expressed permission because they, it's an FAA-supported. Facility, even though we all acknowledge that the water system, the water right, the, all that stuff. The FAA has not spent one dime in it, but it's on, it's an asset of the airport. And so they, when we accept their money for improvements at the FAA, that's the deal. And they have to say it's okay in writing and they, they've said it's okay, they've said it's okay. Multiple times, but not in writing. And so I think there's been reluctance to, to actually pull the trigger. I don't know as far, and I would actually look to Mr. McClure as far as like a water rights transfer, what is the formal process of transferring the water right?
They have the option. You're, you're changing the place of use? I'm not sure that are they, are you just transferring the water right or are you providing them access as well?
My, my understanding is the agreement, in, in the agreement, it states, I mean, it is well, in fact, that is in the agreement. Where some instruments need to be created to allow, you know, easements and whatnot for them to be able to access the physical well. Their plan over, and so originally that was the plan. They, they, meaning the water district, in the intervening years, looked at, that it. At that point, I think they've changed again, but it was that they didn't feel they had to physically go to the well. They could, they could just pump out of their well, you know, it's a change of withdrawal.
Drill a new well and use the water right off the airport well to draw off a new one.
That's a new one. I haven't heard that one.
Yeah, so, but I think they, they've gone back and forth, but I think in all of it, in the agreement, it says that it's the physical, like, we have to grant them. Whatever they need to be able to have access and, you know, easement for the transmission lines because there isn't. Because that's something that had to get cleaned up. There's not easements. There's easements across all this, like the business park development. We put all those in when we did the design, but the, the, there wasn't something, that connection out to the. The well's kind of isolated out by itself, so we needed to clean that up. And so those are the kinds of things. It's the same thing is like, we couldn't, like, we even ran into the trouble with the business park development. That. We tip it, we tried to give those roads to the county for, as county roads. The FAA, we couldn't do it because we would be transferring an asset even though it was actually a liability. Because now the airport has to hire someone to go plow the snow on the road. Because it's not a, it's an, it's, we couldn't give it to the county, so we just.
If this board is looking at the consultant to, to value the water right. And the litigation to get with the FFA or FAA, I did it again. To close the deal under the two thousand and eleven contract agreement. I'm fine with it. If we're trying to somehow renegotiate the value of the water right. And somehow throw out the two thousand and eleven agreement, then I'm adamantly opposed. It just, being outside, I don't know what the purpose of this whole thing is. So I just wanted that on.
So, I say to get into the weeds a little bit more, having read the water system plan in two thousand and nineteen for the water district. They had alternative one, which is we hook the well up on the well port, on the Dallasport area, on the airport. We run the line, we cut the, cut the taxiway, we hook everything up, we put the pump in. And then Dallasports has water for a long, long time. Alternative B is. We do an. A change of place of use and change of an additional point of withdrawal and add wells two and three. That they currently have so that they can have the paper water right to pump out of both wells so that they can continue expanding. Until which time that they get enough SDCs to put the pump in the new well and bring that one online as well. And then option three is no alternative. We don't do anything. We, we stay a small little district and we don't expand at all. And so that's in the water system plan. Where the purpose of this is, is that, like what you're stuck with. You know, that the FAA won't even let us, let the county take on the roads. The FAA says. If you can sell something, but you have to keep, get equal value for it. Where we run into the rub is, is that, where potential rub, which is what I'm saying, potential rub. Is as if the valuation for the water comes in up here. And what we got in two thousand and eleven with the, you know, with what they put into the system that we considered was down here. We've got a big delta that the FAA is going to, of course, freak out about.
But that agreement was for them to put that amount of money in in two thousand and eleven. You can't, I, I don't see how you can value, value the water right today at whatever, two million. And when you did the contract, you valued it at one point two million. They did their one point two million and now you want them to pay the difference. To get up to the full two million of the value today. That, that's where I'm having a problem with that. If that's the direction that the airport board is trying to go after.
No, the goal, the goal is, is to get this thing done. It's been sitting around since two thousand and twelve and get it done and get it transferred. The problem is, is the FAA, I mean, what my, from my understanding, from what I've heard from. Is, is that a lot of airports, that they just went and did it. They just transferred the water, never asked the FAA for anything. But the FAA is well aware of this issue with us because we went and asked. You know, we, this is what our plan is, this is what our goal is, because honestly, airports shouldn't be in the water business unless you're, you know, maybe the city of Portland. So that's kind of the idea. And we could keep beating this one up, but. My personal thing is, is if prosecutor Cannell and the city's attorney have a good conversation about where we're at, where we're going. And then prosecutor Cannell can come back to us with what he feels if we should. Be a part of this thirty thousand dollars that they're, they've already authorized. And that's completely up to you, if you want to have those conversations. I know you're very busy and we're taking up your time right now.
So I, I don't know, I'm kind of a, I don't want to get into the mud on it. I would rather have Dallasport. If they're gonna hire the lawyer anyway, hire the lawyer and, and, you know, we'll pay for the next one.
The DOWs.
Or yeah, the city of the DOWs. Fine, and we'll pay for the next thing and make it right two years from now.
Well, I, I do know they've sent emails in the past. They've been asking, you know, they've been providing the legal counsel for the airport for years and years and years. And we've never paid.
It's true.
So, I don't know what that would add up to by now.
Well, I think we, well, we run into that same problem is there, the counsel is actually their counsel. It's not, it's really not technically the airport's counsel. It's the city of the DOWs' counsel.
Correct that, right. I mean, all the counsel the board has received is, you know, the counsel with the city of the DOWs, one half of the ownership.
So, that's always that, I mean, that's the, always the issue, that, that airport doesn't really exist as a, its own. Entity.
Well, it's caused several problems over the years.
Yeah, I mean, that's why we always have to have our own coun-, they have their counsel. We, when we get sued, we have our own, when the airport gets sued, we each are being sued. And we retain each of our own individual counsel. And we, some of us are much more financially frugal than others.
Any other?
So, uh, no, I think we have, I think we have closure as far as on the aspect. I think we're, I think we're comfortable with that because we need that. And, and maybe I would just suggest. Uh, whatever amendment or whatever we need to do as far as to our agreement with the city. As far as to fund, you know, to add that to our, because we're, you know, we're agreed to, it's a dollar figure that we. Because we just send the city a check twice a year that we would just change that. Yeah, to add the consultant part to that contract and that we'll, we'll pay our half. Well, can't we, or can we just do it? I mean, we've done it before where we just have an individual contract. Because we've done, we've shifted money back and forth like, like when we were doing the. Fuel tanks, good lord, that was, we actually built it and then we were public work, it, it was a nightmare. Lee about pulled her hair out.
How many times are we supposed to?
We were like, it was back and forth, yeah, and it was back and forth. And I think it all eventually worked. I think we, we got our money.
Other board pending?
No, my brain hurts already.
Yeah, no, I'll defer other, I, I briefed on the, the. Lyle Sandbar during public comment and then, so I said, I am having the ongoing stuff with the Dallasport wastewater. But I'm, I'm not really ready yet because I, I want to, I want Jen to run those numbers. I'm gonna talk to Jeff too.
Oh, other board pending, real quickly for me. I do plan on being here at least part of the day to hear some of the BOE. Don't know if you care about that. And then the corrections appreciation is Thursday from five to six. I will probably make sure I'm here for that as well.
That you're, you are here for that? Your odd record is I will not be here for that.
Are you planning on going?
No.
I'm gonna try to make it up, but I guess I'll just contact with you so that him and I are at different times.
Or if, if.
You can.
I'll probably go right at five when she gets off.
Oh, okay.
And then when you show up.
I was thinking more like three.
Well, there you go.
Yeah, there you go, no problem.
Okay, if I can make it.
I was there when Bill.
No, I'm hoping to have.
Rita's six, I think. Gotta go for the cake, even though I don't eat cake. All right, anything else? All right, I will move into prosecuting attorney, David Cannell, pending issues update.
So, Rob is here. He and I have been having a couple of talks the last few weeks. I, I don't have any firm numbers or proposals right now. I'm coming, coming back either next week or the week after. With the proposal for separating the attorneys out and creating a separate pay scale and pay schedule. That would be applicable only to the attorney. So the current pace, scales and qualifications. Don't take into account any credit for the advanced degrees that the attorneys have. We're clearly having significant problems staffing. The current status quo is just simply, it's not sustainable. You know, the, I attended the WAPA conference last week in Spokane, had a lot of interesting conversations with some of my colleagues. It, it, it is almost across the board that the rural counties are having significant recruiting and retention problems. It seems to have stabilized for most of the urban counties, but it's. You know, I think culturally nationally, we're seeing a significant divergence on, it's pretty consistent with the urban rural divides. And then that includes. Self-separation and segregation on educational status. And that, that's, I think, a pretty big factor in, in the rural areas. That, that, that's been observed for many years now. It's definitely concentrating that individuals with advanced education. And skills and credentials generally go to urban areas. So that it, it creates incredible difficulties on, on the recruiting. The, like a few counties have utilized bonuses to no effect at all. They uniformly report that they have not been helpful. I think Yakima County right now is, they're offering either five or ten thousand dollar bonuses and have for a while. They, they're currently up to six open positions and they're understaffed to begin with, but they're up to six open positions. And they've gotten two applications since August. Ponderay County is only thirty minutes from Spokane. Traditionally, they have very easy time recruiting and retaining counsel. Because they could, you know, they have a law school half an hour away. People could stay living in Spokane and just commute. They've had two positions open for a year. They have ten thousand dollar bonus and that has seemingly had no effect whatsoever. So the, you know, the, I understand that we, we've been going through some salary surveys and so forth and we have comp counties. I, I think Mr. Soder was it last week or the week before, remember, probably, probably two weeks ago, wasn't here last week. Pointing out, you know, it's great and dandy to have these schedules and these comps, but if our comps can't fill the positions either.
We're comparing ourselves to unsuccessful counties.
I think, you know, the, I, I, you know, it's been, at this for almost eight years and I've only really come to the board. With an ask, really a significant ask once before, that was about seven years ago on, on the creation of a civil. with an ask, really a significant ask once before, that was about seven years ago on, on the creation of a civil position. But there, there's gonna be an ask coming, there, there's really nothing left but to um, you know, to, to try to increase the attractiveness through the, the, the compensation to, to bring people to the area and hopefully retain them. The, you know, this, this isn't unheard of in the county when, you know, the, it's been several years now when the problem is in the commissioner's lap for recruiting attorneys, uh, that's where we get a hundred and eight thousand dollars a year for um, you know, part-time work, about one-fourth of their time. Uh, not asking for the equivalent four hundred thousand dollars for a full-time deputy, but uh, that, uh, or anywhere near.
That's a good thing.
Since that'd be significantly more than I make, but uh, but uh, the, you know, I think what we're looking at and different options that we're vetting around is a pay scale that's tied um, to my pay. Uh, and so, uh, which is increasingly common um, in, in, in many counties for not only for the attorney um, pay schedules, but also all the electives. In fact, most electives at this point in the, in the state have their salaries tied to a percentage of the PA and, and, and the county. Who, who, many of them are tied to a percentage of the Superior Court Judge, uh, which was the intent of the legislature in two thousand and seven. Uh, it's actually very, we're increasingly uncommon that we're one of the few people that have not done that. There's lots of reasons it, it takes out all the, all the politics and, and, and all that. Uh, because the Superior Court salaries are set by a salary, statewide salary commission that, uh, you know, looks at all the, the you know, the data that they have, and they, they set the salaries for the judicial and executive branches. So the governor of the legis, and, and the legislature, so, so they, every year they convene and do studies. For several years, they didn't make changes, and the last few years, they have made significant changes, especially on the judicial salaries to make them more competitive with uh, the federal bench and some of the um, the, the equivalent, the compare, I, I, you know, I think what you would consider comparable states. And so that's where the, you know, there, there's been quite a bit of increase in the PA salary in this county. Even though the county portion hasn't changed too significantly, um, because of the increase in uh, the fifty percent of the Superior Court salaries paid by the state and given to each county to compensate uh, for the PA. So because of the salary commissions, that portion has been um, increasing disproportionately uh, to the county. Uh, but what I'm looking at um, is, you know, we're, we're talking about numbers and so forth, there, there's no way of being around the bush. The, the, it's gonna be a request for an increase um, for, for budgeting purposes and so forth. Um, you know, it's, I don't think it'd be anywhere near the number that was approved for another department recently to try to address uh, some of their staffing issues. Uh, but the, the situation's dire, uh, it's not sustainable. Uh, and so the intent is to come, you know, before the board, you know, here to see, test the waters to see how hostile or shark-filled those waters are right now. Uh, and then the, you know, next week might be optimistic, but to come back on the eleventh or the following week. It's my goal to have some firm idea, if not completion of some sort of um, change by um, the week of May sixteen.
So instead of a thumbs up or down, do we look like shark fins? Do you all shark infested it is?
Um, no, you, you, I understand we have four or five positions that, that really need looked at, so I'm open to conversation. I did have a question with, with, I mean, when I graduated high school, everybody wasn't going to college. I mean, a lot of people did, but a lot of people didn't, now it seems like everybody's going to college. Are they just not going to law school or are they taking underwater basket weaving or is there less people going into law trade than normal or is college? No, the, the law schools are generally, uh, I'm not aware of any major law schools closing. Uh, I'm not aware of any, uh, you know, the, I, I think there's been a few law schools, especially on the lower end of the prestige scale that have redo some of their class size and so forth and laid off professors, but generally there's uh, there's a, that was, it characterizes the overabundance of law school graduates. Uh, and they're still pumping them out, um, it's easier and easier to get a license. They just reinstituted the bar exam this year, the last two years they even had that.
They're just going into private practice and not.
They're, they're not going to rural areas fundamentally. And second, um, they generally are not going into difficult areas. Uh, both prosecution and, and especially public defense, not all defense, but public defense appointed work are um, widely considered, and I think rightfully so, the most difficult jobs in, in, in the legal area. Uh, the, you know, for the, the, the appointed counsel, they're, you know, generally dealing with individuals very little self-control or very little ethics, uh, and who treat people poorly, including their appointed lawyers. Uh, and then on the prosecution side, that it's, it's a very difficult job. Uh, the, the standards is beyond reasonable now, this is the highest standard um, in the legal field. Uh, that they are, you don't represent any individual, you represent the society as a whole and all the weight that that has. We have whole sets of special uh, rules of professional conduct that only apply to us. We have all sorts of special rules that only apply to us. Uh, the bar associations are quite eager uh, to try to go after prosecutors occasionally. Um, and there is a widespread culture that has been affirmed through numerous anecdotes at this point that there is a incredible hostility towards uh, law enforcement prosecution um, in the law schools. So that they, I was kind of taken aback a little bit of conversation with the elected in Yakima County whose daughter is a um, either recent graduate or going to be uh, graduating soon from the law school at University of Idaho. And he was invited to speak at one point with, and there was a, a defense attorney and a prosecution and the, you know, the, the, the economy and treatment of the two was just shocking, that the, the instructor and the class were, you know, with kid gloves with the defense attorney, but they immediately launched into very pointed questioning regarding, you know, the, the, how could you participate in the oppression of, of people of color? How could you be a cog in a system depriving individuals of their rights? That is the consensus view in, in law schools, it's consensus view in our Supreme Court, it's majority view in our legislature. Uh, and, you know, we live in the, the blue state in the Pacific Northwest, that's just how it is. Uh, so um, it is, I think, you know, that, I don't think any one of those is, is outcome determinative because the rural areas are having problems with public defenders. So I mean, the prosecutors down in the southeast corner of the state, um, you know, we're affirming, we're relaying stories of the difficulty and how much com, m- money is being paid. For example, in a Soan County where they have contracts approved for public defenders are, are, are jokes, like four thousand, I think forty-five hundred a month or something like that, and they're expecting full-time work. Obviously, they can't find anyone to take the job. Uh, so they've been uh, appointing case by case, the judge there has been Shanghai basically attorneys that show up on other matters and forcefully require them to take appointments at a cost a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. So last year, the Soan County Commissioner said to sign off on over five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in uh, public defender fees, which is uh, I believe about equal to the PA's budget and three times what they've ever had to pay before. Uh, because they just not finding people. Uh, and at Garfield and Columbia County, extremely rural areas with very few people, uh, very few college graduates and, and attorneys. Uh, they, they have no one qualified. Uh, and the, about eight years ago, bar association with the urging of the Supreme Court imposed all these caseload and qualification limits, um, I think we've talked about in a brief before. So someone straight out of law school can't take tho, those jobs, they have to have trial experience. Uh, and so, and they have caseload limits that don't apply to the prosecutor. So, and, you know, the Pierce County prosecutor, you know, the, their public defender department there, that's a separate department. I'm not sure if that's appointed or elected position that oversees that. Uh, they, they refuse to take new appointments because they don't, their attorneys are capped out at a hundred and fifty felonies. Uh, so they, when they're, when they run out attorneys, they refuse to take appointments. Uh, whereas the, you know, the, the PA's office, their deputies are up to, you know, three, four hundred cases a base.
Whatever comes in the door.
Right, uh, so, yeah, it's a.
What happened if they just say, we're not taking?
Uh, the courts have to start paying um, private counsel tons of money, yeah. Yeah, uh, you know, the, uh, there was a shocking leak yesterday of a draft uh, decision from the Supreme Court um, that, you know, that did peruse it, that lays the groundwork that, you know, they, like, it's conceivable within five years that the Gideon decision could be also reversed, uh, which is.
What is the Gideon?
That's the right to appoint a counsel, uh, that, the, there is really very little to distinguish the reasoning uh, that looks like is gonna be used to overturn a fifty-year-old precedent uh, to apply it to other precedents. Uh, and so maybe in a few years, it won't be as much of a problem uh, in that sense, but it'll be introduced uh, a host of other problems, uh, potentially. Uh, so, you know, that, that's, that's a lot of talk, it's, 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 it's a lawyer and a politician talking a lot, but the, uh, so the, you know, the, the, looking for a little bit of guidance to make sure that there's some receptivity before I take up the HR's time and my time trying to flesh out and, and, and put some details into this. Uh, but it is something I'm hoping to really get flushed out here in the next couple of weeks, uh, because it's a factor in other um, issues.
God, I'm very receptive to it. When I look at our pay schedule and what we're paying people within eight years and what they can make, you know, going anywhere else, I don't know anybody who would want, unless they really care, they're from this area, they care, this is what they want to do. But how many people are from this area who care that are doing degrees in law? And for the pay, who would want to come?
And for the pay, who would want to come?
Well, it'd be great if we could find someone with experience that wants to relocate the, and, you know, they're not gonna do that if they take a forty thousand dollar pay cut.
No, or sixty thousand dollar pay cut.
Correct, well, yeah, it gets worse than that, but the, you know, because the, I think, the, it's the mid-level, the more, the more the experienced folks that the discrepancies in the, in the pay really stick out. Our entry level is pretty competitive, uh, I, I thought.
But again, it's competitive, but nobody else is getting entry level anybody either.
Competing to take it, uh, so how competitive is it?
Right, that's the question.
It's a valid point, I was kind of stewing over that the last couple of weeks that, uh, you know, it's frustrating, and I know it can lead to dynamics that are frustrating with everyone uh, coming out with, I mean, you, you've already had one, um, you know, the director that successfully accomplished this, now you got an elected that's moving forward. And I don't doubt that's gonna incentivize other people to do it, so the, I apologize, but I just, I'm stuck between a rock and a hard place. I gotta figure out how to get more people.
That there's those four or five that can feel free to stand there.
I think one advantage to that, I think what, if you can help discussing with me has merit, I think it's work. These four or five are gonna take different, different solutions. Again, the majority of the positions are filled and you don't have too much trouble filling them. There are a small group that are very difficult. I think another advantage, I always try and look for something that'll assist the problem we're trying to solve. You always say, well, probably trying to solve this one's clear without blowing up everything else.
Right, right.
And I think they're the only employees that have a doctorate, a master's degree, they're doctors of jurisprudence. So if they're the only group at, in the county, then they're at that level of education. And so by coming up with a solution for them, it should, should hold back anyway some of the other people coming forward, because there's a unique solution for a unique group of employees.
Well, I appreciate that, that, you know, it's sometimes been discussed, I know Randy Post and I had some real serious discussions about moving forward with about four or five years ago, I, I held out because we weren't just, we weren't having the same level of difficulties. So, but, uh, you know, in, in hindsight, you know, hindsight's always twenty twenty, I wish I had. See that at that time, maybe I wouldn't be in the pickle.
Or if you're in the pickle today, you wouldn't have the, the leeway to do it today if you'd already fixed it then and we're still in the same problem as everybody else, yeah.
Uh, because there's, there's nothing queued up, that's one of the issues is that, uh, you know, I'm not gonna be around forever. My um, chief is, uh, you know, I'm looking forward to retirement here in a few years, I think. Uh, so, you know, it's, it's concerning, there's nothing coming up. Uh.
Yeah.
You know, the, the, the retention's been an issue, the last deputy was here four and a half years, that was, that was a record. Uh, and no one can think of a district court deputy that's been here that long. Uh, so, you know, that's um, so, so trying to figure out, you know, the conversation's gotta be a part of the package of uh, we're trying to build longer-term commitments to the county and to the, um, so forth.
Yeah, and I'm supportive, I mean, I'm not, I'm not thrilled, but I don't see an alternative, and I do see, I mean, we've long had, um, you know, the standard of, you know, market-based, whi, which I see this as a market issue, is it's not, it's not a, it's not, we're not out of whack with our comparables, we just did it, we found that, you know, our, our things. But again, it's the market, it's like our comparables are out of whack with the market.
Reality.
With reality, and so they're, they don't, they're not filling their stuff either. And so I think we, you know, and if we're the first ones, if you're the first ones that are able to fix it, then that, whatever that limited stock of folks that you can actually entice over from the urban area, because I think that is a, I think that's a real thing, that, you know, people.
Easier to be the first than the last.
Than the last, as far as, because there's a limited, there's a, there's a limited supply, and if we solve the problem first, and it's like, you know, of course, that doesn't mean people won't jump ship, but.
But it doesn't fix the housing shortages.
Well, it doesn't, and that's, but there are housing shortages everywhere too. So again, that playing field is relatively level, it's terrible everywhere.
Up in the market, we're shooting for the midpoint, so we're, we're driving, we're looking at the fifty percentile where some counties in that group top out much higher than we do, so, so they got groomed off or above.
Yeah.
Midpoint, so, you know, we're all looking at the midpoint for comparables, and the midpoint doesn't work for five or six.
So that's kind of my argument, is the comparable theory just doesn't work anymore, at least it doesn't work for some positions.
It doesn't, it doesn't work in areas of limited supply, because in any ins, any instance, if there's a very limited supply and you're at midpoint, that means that the supply is gonna go to everybody above the midpoint. Expect, and if the people above the midpoint are still having openings, that tells you even more about how dire the situation is. But yes, I'm a yes too.
So.
Okay.
Put the work into it and we'll figure it out.
And then, um, I'm sure the, the, uh, uh, for the materials, I'm sure you have the chance to review the, the judge that upheld the process um, with some mild criticisms on the uh, districting, so that, that's done, I mean, it's.
It's remarkably mild, I might add, from what I expected.
I'm not gonna. I found it shocking. It is what it is, but uh, and then the on-a-camus um, issuance of the CUP, the Cepa Determination CUP was upheld uh, by the judge, uh, which, you know, given the uh, level, the standard review here was, I'll be honest, it wasn't that surprising. Uh, but, uh, you know, there, there's just, I think there's a lot of confusion, a lot of consternation that, um, you know, the, the, of course, I'm an advocate of local control that takes into account local conditions, but if advocate, the advocacy for local control is really for uh, a guise for nemiism and depriving people of their property rights, that's another issue altogether that, you know, the, simply because you want a decision to go a particular way and you will use, you know, whatever political leverage or intimidation or bullying tactics to achieve that, uh, go ahead and make that decision, but that'll get reversed very promptly uh, by judicial review. Uh, that, the, the Cepa and the, the CUP processes, these are laid out uh, by law, people have property rights, they have due process rights. And you can't override that because you got twenty people screaming at you, uh, that's just, that's not how the rule of law works. Uh, LA, some of us old-fashioned, true conservatives that, that adhere to beliefs in the rule of law, uh, uh, would posit that, but uh, there's not very many of us left at this point. Uh, and so, um, you know, they can be ruled by the dictates of an individual or a mob or the rule of law. Uh, and we're still in a system where we operate under the rule of law.
Thank God.
You're squeezing your ball.
I don't, no, that's, I'm agreeing with everything I've, I'm agreeing, but yeah, it's my stress ball.
Yeah, I still throw it up at the minion thing.
I know.
Is that a, a subliminal message or?
I see you. It was a gift.
Because you're so despicable.
Yeah.
That's perfect.
It's hard not to see the connection.
I didn't even.
It was a gift, it was a gift, I am respecting.
A well-earned one, I'm sure.
A, a well-wisher that.
Sorry, I just.
It wasn't the despicable one that gave it to you, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Is it?
No, no.
Moving on.
No, moving on.
It devolves.
Uh, that's, that's, uh, we do have a criminal trial scheduled uh, tomorrow, Superior Court. Chief will be handling that, like, I've covered the district court down in YCM and the, you know, the, it's, it's interesting, but, you know, neither one of us have really dealt with all this district court stuff in a while, so it's uh, it's interesting. Uh, you know, the, it will get all worked up or, uh, I don't know, I mean, you get. I don't know, I mean, you get to a point where you've spent years dealing with, you know, rapes and homicides and serious burglaries and then, you know, someone wants to argue for hours about, uh. You know, the, uh, fishing game ticket or something, it's a little frustrating, uh, but. You know, the, it, it's good, it's humbling, it's a good experience, uh, so. I think the, uh, the courts are taking some accommodations to account for some of our limiting schedules, so that's, that's sincerely appreciated, uh. And then, uh, Monday, we have our monthly, uh, multi-disciplinary team, uh, moving forward with. Red, I think, finalization of some of the protocols for the child abuse investigations, I think the C C. Wasn't able to really, um, because I was on the road, wasn't able to, to track that, but it's, uh, hopefully, um, they did a good job, um. Presenting the information, uh, from Safe Space, the, their viable, um, partner in that, and so at this point. Um, is getting, uh, D C Y Y F, um, more actively engaged, the, we think the majority of cases could be coming from them. But they're just, the, the, the referrals aren't, aren't happening and then, um, you know, getting the law enforcement. Partners to engage, it's, um, struggle with some agent, with one agency in particular, um, and then. The mental health aspect, uh, you know, at one point, it took multiple phone calls and conversations to get. Comprehensive, to be willing to engage, at first they refused, uh, saying they didn't want to be seen as a, uh. In cahoots with law enforcement and the prosecution, uh, even though, you know, the whole idea of the N D T is having the, all the different perspectives on, involved. At that point, they, uh, somewhat, I, I, they had to run it out there. You know, the initial supervisor declined, I went kind of over his head, brought in some of the state folks to talk about on the higher level and they. That just doesn't, um, got reversed, that individual that was jamming that up is, um. Either quit suddenly or was terminated, the, I've never heard a very good explanation of what exactly happened here, uh. And then it's just been cricket sense, uh, there's been no response, no, uh, nothing is going on, I honestly don't know. If we have anyone working at Comprehensive here in the county anymore, uh, and I, I, I believe, uh. You know, I want to speak out of turn, but I think the Jim and Al Parkers having the same experience, we're having the same experience, I think the jails having the same experience, we're just. Uh, the, you know, I, I think, you know, I think there needs to be a serious conversation about how to, how to proceed, because they're just not.
They're not here, but they're cashing the checks still, that's the problem.
They're just not getting the job done.
We hear it from everyone and we, we know.
Well, that's part of the joys of click that county sometimes, that we're just the, the misbegotten, uh, stepchild for a lot of people that, you mean. Oh, that county that, I thought you were North Oregon, uh, but, you know, based on the number of ducks decals I see, sometimes I feel that way, but, uh. But, uh, you know, that, because when you look at all these state maps and everything, you know, get me started, that's.
Don't pick on the ducks now. Don't pick on the ducks.
Well, I'm sorry to hear, uh, but, uh, uh, the, you know, you look at all these state maps and everything, it, it's just amazing how often that we're just a. A gray, like, no one knows where to put us and, and I think this is yet another example, I mean, with the. You know, some, some of this mental health stuff, we're supposed to be, uh, with these folks in Clark County and Skamania, they're supposed to have these. Crisis teams that show up, you know, they're all Vancouver.
They don't come over.
You know, they, I mean, what is that going to do us? Uh. Yeah, because the guy, you know, in crisis in the street that's clearly the influence is, and scaring the crap out of all his neighbors. You know, he's going to wait patiently for two to three hours for the team to show up from, uh, Clark County, so they, it's.
Well, if they show up.
If they answer the phone.
We're having phone issues.
No.
That's how we saw it, no, nevermind, no, no.
But, but I think, I think we're seeing this, and this is, you know, mental health is another primary, we're throwing. A lot of money, the state is planning to throw a lot of money at mental health, but there are not the professionals out there to do the job. And the professionals that were doing the job, just like nurses and everything else, got burnt out and went somewhere else and did something else.
Or moved to Vancouver to do their job.
Or move somewhere else that's going to pay them more, and we're in the same boat, just as we are with prosecuting attorneys, just as we are with our other. Upper-level skilled professionals, and, I mean, I want to throw all the rocks at Comprehensive, but I also, you know. Probably want to cry for them just the same, because we're all in the same boat, and where did all the people go?
Right, I mean, they would love to be at full staff, it's not like, I mean, they're, I think they bought their own newspaper, I mean, they're, they were advertising. I mean, there was an ad, there's been an ad in the paper. Always, there's always, they always have openings and they did, and they were supposed to be expanding service, so they were going to bring on a bunch of new. There was nobody to bring on.
Or when they bring on somebody, they lose somebody just as fast, so.
Right, I mean. It's a revolving door.
This hospital or whatever and had to shut it down.
Had to shut it down.
They were going to build this over here, can't build it because there's nobody in it, I don't, I don't know where you're going to find the employees.
You're going to find them.
Well, and it was one of the last draws with the termination of the drug program too, because they, um. They weren't very forthright in disclosing when people were non-compliant and so forth, uh, and the numbers got down where we had, you know, one or two people left and. Drugs are, um, tolerated now in our, in the state of Washington, so, uh, it's, what's the point of a drug program?
Yep.
Why hospitals have traveling nurses, local attendants, doctors, traveling doctors?
They do very well.
Yeah, but you're paying, yeah, but you know what you're paying them, it is like a horrific amount, it's like, yeah. Hell, you have to work, you know, four days a month, because. That's right, six months, no, three, three weeks, a real season's three weeks.
What, what else do we got, let's get back on track, it's four thirty.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm not making a joke on that.
Sounds so good, uh, all right, but yeah, that's it for me, unless there's any questions.
Do you have anything for executive session? All right, um, thank you for everything, and, yeah, get back to us, if it's a couple of weeks, we understand. All right?
Yeah, I just.
I got a couple things, I just want to, I just need some clarification or input. We had, and I don't, and maybe somebody answered, I meant to ask, um, I know Gordy's, he's gone, I meant to ask Jeff. But we got an email probably about a week ago from a gal, it was on the under canvas and the road improvements and, and I didn't answer it, just. Did you answer it? Okay, that's all, I just wanted to make sure.
She sent it five months ago.
I know, and it was.
I answered her this time and I told her, sorry, we won't answer emails when there's pending litigation, and she's like, oh, well, that makes sense, thank you. But, yeah, no, I answered it with, it's my understanding that under canvas will pay all costs related to road.
And we're not going to sign off on the permit stuff, they do.
Right.
Right, I mean, yeah, typically, and that's what was going to say.
Something where that ain't happening, I'll let you know about it.
Right, because there's a bunch of misinformation that it's like, no, it's, and it's not, it's not specific to under canvas, it's all projects. If you are a developer and your project as a permit requirement, there has to be improvements to public infrastructure. You pay for them before you get, we're done, and there, that's always that way, the taxpayers don't fund your speculation, at least if we can. If we can, uh, help it, and so, okay, uh, the other one, I think there, and this was just a general. Um, because I know, I think we all did, anybody, we got a email from Mr. Barta on the, you know, that, because we're contemplating. The Cepa thing, again, I didn't have any issues with his comments, but I did have an issue with. His comments were not relevant to what we're considering, because it was talking about. Um, denying administrative appeal of projects, and I think there's some confusion that it's, it's for non-project. That the actions not for, this idea that if there's a project, we're getting rid of. The, or we would potentially, I mean, that's the draft, that you would not have an administrative appeal. Available to you, that's, that's not in our draft, it's only non-projects, so.
Read it that way, but I, maybe, I didn't respond, but.
No, I, well, that was, I was go- I was going to respond, I had not responded either, but I didn't, I wanted to see. You, you folks are much quicker at responding, I, I take more time to.
I took it.
Be zen about it.
Thinking back at it, that didn't like the idea of hearings examiner wanted everything to be heard in the county, that's kind of the way I remember reading the email. But it could be wrong.
Okay.
I'm, I'm looking forward to prosecutors' take on, on it.
Uh, I mean, I'm, I'm very supportive of eliminating administrative appeals for non-project, well, administrative appeals period, but especially for the non-project. These are, the, these are not the, I think there is a lot of misunderstands, miss, misunderstanding.
Misunderstanding.
Intentional, I think, sometimes it feels, but, uh, the vast majority of interest that is attracted on these are project-specific.
Right.
Because there's a neighbor that's irritated or pissed off.
Right.
What we're talking about is streamlining the process, or usually the county proposals on some of the zoning issues, the. The plan updates, things like that, that we know there's going to be likely an appeal, we know there's going to be litigation. So why add an additional step, um.
Make two litigations.
Correct, uh, and that way, you know, with, if we eliminate the administrative review, we can, uh, proceed. With the processing and approvals and then the whole issue is like.
Right.
Instead of piecemeal step by step on, oh, I'm going to file an appeal on your initial Cepa determination, all right. Okay, because you want to drag it out for another year or two, while there's some attendances screaming that we need to get the plan done right away.
Right.
Uh, so I, you know, I think it, it will, uh, and those situations where, you know, any, any update to. Any of the plans, any significant zoning changes, anything like that, we, we know as a fact will be appealed and litigated, uh. There are too many vested interests, uh, either through. The friends of whatever ru- uh, river or lake, uh, that you find attractive, the Yakima Nation, other, uh, well, uh, the deep-pocketed resources that are intent. On, uh, you know.
Very social clubs.
Imposing their vision of what the, the regulation should be, uh, so, there's just, there's, there's, that's just a fact, uh, so. Why, why, why add additional hurdles, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense, because there's still going to be the opportunity for appeal and review. Uh, but it'll be done in a court of law with rules of evidence and, uh, a judge, uh, that's far preferable, uh, in my view. Yeah, and then, you know, the whole issue with the hearing examiner, again, I, I don't think the board's ever indicated the, the intent to always utilize a hearing examiner. A, it's expensive, B, it's unnecessary in a lot of these, that.
Right.
If it's a simple a- appeal by a neighbor about another neighbor, they'll let them come forward and make their case, but. You know, the under canvas is, is a prime example of, um, the, uh, does this board believe they could actually have conducted those hearings? Uh, and, and if you do, all right, um, but.
If we did, it would have been thrown out by the judge, because we don't know the legal.
I think that's highly likely, uh, right, uh, and so it was a very difficult task even for a trained land use attorney that specializes in. Conducting hearings, it was still a very difficult for him to do it, uh, because of how, uh, legitimate it was, how many. Uh, people were trying to use it as a vehicle for, uh, political purposes and so forth, uh, so, yeah.
Right. Okay, I was, again, I was just, I was just checking in with, with folks because of that.
I didn't like the hearings examiner part, because I felt like he added a bunch of stuff that I don't know that. That was really in his purview, and I would.
Well, I would say the courts felt that agreed on a couple of points, but upheld the other stuff.
I just don't know if a local board would have had other points or different points.
Likely would, and that is, but then I would say regardless of whatever we do, the board will always retain the opportunity it ha- will have. It could hear it if it wanted to.
But getting back to it though, if there was no appeal of the Cepa, it didn't come in front of us, it went straight to the Board of Adjustment.
It would go to Superior Court.
And it would go to Superior Court, but the Board of Adjustment is also not a hearings examiner. Um, and if they put a bunch of these extra conditions on, because that's what the community wanted.
Right.
The other side would have appealed it, and then it would have got thrown out by the judge at that, you know, with regards to that, right? I mean.
Potentially on what the conditions were, but yeah, I mean, we've seen that where, I, I can think of one case where. You know, the Board of Adjustment, again, these are volunteers, these are citizens, and they have the angry mob shows up. And they imposed a bunch of conditions, really against advice of, of, um, staff and counsel. And then they ended up having to, you know, it's like you can't, it doesn't matter if that's what the neighbors were all shouting, it's not legal, that's. And they, they had to get stripped out of.
Let's just throw out those conditions.
I think it was actually returned to.
You screwed it up.
Remand, it was remanded back with some instructions to reconsider conditions. You know, four, six, twelve, and eighty-seven. So, so there is, I mean, there's always that, like, I'm all about local process, I, I really do believe that, but.
You have to know when you're over your head.
But you, you do have to know when you're over your head, so.
I would entertain a motion.
Yes, let's get out of here while we still can.
I've got, I need to run over to the courthouse before.
I move that we adjourn the meeting with no workshops scheduled.
Uh, I will second that motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
All right.
Thank you.
Everybody sign, everybody sign.